Welcome to the April 1st, 2025 meeting. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers for anybody that wants to speak. So, the commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete the reform, bring it forward, and we'll put you on the docket, too. So, we'll have a call to order, and we'll bring the session to order. We don't need a roll call because we're here. So, we will have a moment of silence, and then followed by the pledge. So, thank you. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheer went down. I think Commissioner Hattcock played an April Fool's joke on me today. Well, we have a review and approve of the agenda, so has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, have a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion? A motion by Ross Connect and a second by Hattcock to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we will have the 2025 Board of Equalization Oaths of Office from Jube Robert Gazinski, Circuit Judge, Seventh Judicial Court. Thank you, if you want to come forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Would you please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Jerry.
A member of the Board of Equalization for Pennington County.
A member of the Board of Equalization.
In the state of South Dakota.
In the state of South Dakota.
For the year 2025.
For the year 2025.
Being first duly sworn, depose and say.
Being first duly sworn, depose and say.
That I will fairly and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Board of Equalization for the county and state.
That I will fairly and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Board of Equalization for the county and state.
That I will endeavor to equalize the assessment of all real property within the county.
That I will endeavor to equalize assessment of all real property within the county.
That I will seek to place upon the books of the tax jurisdiction within the county.
That I will seek to place upon the books of tax jurisdiction within the county.
Any property that may have been omitted by error or neglect of the assessor or Board of Equalization.
Any property that may have been omitted by error or neglect of the assessor or Board of Equalization.
I will faithfully and impartially perform all other acts enjoined on me by law.
I will faithfully and impartially perform all other acts enjoined on me by law.
To the end that all assessments within the above county may be complete and just and equal as between the property holders.
To the end that all assessments within the above county may be complete and just and equal as between the property holders.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me. Thank you very much for your time.
There was less words when I got married.
All right. Thank you again, Judge.
Is that from your wife?
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go to an executive proclamation for National Work Zone Awareness Week, April 21, 25. And Joe, if you want to come forward.
Good morning, Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Thank you for having me here for allowing us to do this executive proclamation. I think this is our third year doing this for highway department national work zone safety awareness. Each year, there's hundreds of people injured and possibly killed in work zones throughout the United States. In 2024, there were 894 in, get to my numbers here, 891 deaths in 2022 and 821 fatal crashes in work zones. So, this work zone safety is to bring awareness to those drivers out there and the public to slow down, pay attention in the work zones. This program was actually established in 1999. We just caught wind of it about three or four years ago, so that's the reason that we just started doing it three years ago. This year's theme is, boy, Go Orange Day. Hang on. Where'd it go?
They're wearing yellow, though.
They're wearing green, I think, aren't they?
Green, yeah.
Nope, I can't find the theme for this year's. But there's a Go Orange Day, which everybody is encouraged to wear orange on April 23rd. This National Work Zone Safety Awareness runs the April 21st through the 25th of April. With that, are there any questions?
Joe, can, is there a way we could have them all come up here and get a picture? Somebody have a picture, and I'll read the proclamation down.
Yep, I'd actually like, if you would allow me to bring each one of them up and introduce themselves, what they do for the county and their years of service.
That'd be perfect. Let's do that.
Read the proclamation first, Joe, and then have them come up. Yes, sir.
I'll come down here.
Thank you, Joe.
Sean, you've got my back here. Respect the zone so we all get home is this year's theme.
That's this year's, awesome, okay. This is the proclamation, National Work Zone Awareness Week, April 21 to 25 of 2025. Whereas National Work Zone Awareness Week is an annual spring safety campaign held at the start of construction season to raise public awareness for work zones and those who work in them. And whereas National Work Zone Awareness Week 2025 is taking place April 21 through April 25 to encourage safe driving through the work zones. Whereas the 2025 National Work Zone Awareness Week theme is respect the zone so we all get home. And whereas motorists are encouraged to slow down, depose the speed limits, eliminate distractions while driving, and be watchful for roadway workers, their equipment vehicles on the side of the road in work zones. And whereas according to the National Work Zone Safety Information Clearinghouse 2022, there were 821 fatal crashes and 891 fatalities in the U.S. work zones. Whereas Pennington County is dedicated to advocating for safe driving and maintaining work zone safety for both the road worker and the traveling public. Therefore, be it resolved that Pennington County Board of Commissioners declares that week of April 21 through April 2025, 25, 2025, to be the National Work Zone Awareness Week in Pennington County, encouraging them caution in the work zones for the safety at all. So, Joe, if you want to come forward, have everybody come forward.
Good morning, Commission. Dustin Hall, I'm the Rapid City Crew Foreman. I've been with the county for 11 years.
Good morning. I'm Chris Hermanson. I'm a journeyman highway worker. I've been with the county for five years.
Jacob Wolf, GIS and Traffic Sign Manager, have been with the county for three years.
I'm Zach Sage. I work in the Engineering Department as Traffic Operations Technician, and I will be one year next month. Thank you, Commission.
Amy Arledge, apprentice highway maintenance worker, two years.
John Fortune, apprentice highway worker, six months.
Dale Kinney, journeyman highwayman, I've been here four years.
I'm Eric Crusell. I'm a lead highway worker in Rapid, and I'm going on eight years.
Thank you, Commission, for allowing us to do that. Picture? You want a picture with all of them? Thanks, guys. Actually got a name on these guys working behind the cones, huh?
Thanks, guys. Guys got to come in here. I'm fine, guys. Got to go in front. Go in front. Come on, guys, go in front. Keep going, keep going. Yeah, there we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Safe out there, guys. Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen. There's actually names behind those guys behind the cones, so we can all remember that when we're driving. Make sure we watch our speeds. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve my signature on this proclamation.
So moved.
Moved by Hattcock.
Second.
Second by Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent item, number seven. Is there anyone from the public that wants to remove anything from the consent item that would need to be talked about? We have item 7C that we will be removing from the consent items. Anything from the chairs, from the dais here that would like to be removed? Anything from you guys? So, we'll look for a motion other than 7C, which we'll handle separately.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Drew, second by Ross Connect. Moved by Dur, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we'll move on to item 7C. Declare a surplus for the purpose of donation to Quinn Volunteer Fire Department. I drove through Quinn yesterday. That was interesting. One 2003 Ford F-350 Super Duty Pickup, asset number 95991. So.
What's the speaker's name?
Oh, yeah. Here it is.
There you go.
There it is. Speaker is Jim and Jean Johnson from the Quinn Volunteer Fire Department, and he is, or they are, Assistant Chief.
And Val's Quinn, too.
Thank you. Come up and.
Introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Commission. Val Newman, Fire Administration.
Jim Johnson, Assistant Chief at Quinn.
Morning, Val. Good morning, Jim. We won't play any April Fools on you today, so you'd be.
I was going to ask you about the date, if this was a joke, but I'll just let that go. I believe you. I just want to thank you for, the truck has been at our station since 2012, I believe, from July. Been there the whole time, and currently, in the summertime, it is stationed 20 miles northeast of Wall and about the same amount northwest of Quinn, because our area runs, our northeast corner is about 45 miles from Quinn, and these are like 20 miles closer, and that makes a big difference in fire suppression. And I can give you an update on the fire hall. You said you were through Quinn yesterday.
Did you see it? Yeah, yeah, I drove by.
It's moving along, but it is slow. There's two guys working on it, and they work about one day a week.
Yeah, we just appreciate what you guys do as volunteers, and I think that the constituents in your area there appreciate all the work you guys do to make this happen.
Well, Wall and Quinn work really well together. My, we're all kind of a big family. As a matter of fact, my brother-in-law is the chief of Wall, so perfect. Are there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, the chairman.
Thanks doesn't seem like enough. You know, that's a good truck.
No, thank you for guys, everything you guys do for your volunteer fire department and just getting that fired building done, and it's probably slow because a lot of you have jobs and other things to do besides just build a fire building. So, thank you again for your service, sir.
And I'm going to echo Commissioner Hattcock's comments. I was a volunteer for 14 years with Johnson Siding Fire Department, so.
Yep.
I, of course, back then, our equipment was pretty adequate, you know, old military six-by-sixes and anyhow, I just want to thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. Thanks for yours. Before we got 61 from the county, we had an old military Jeep, 50 mile an hour was all faster to go, no top. Been in those since.
I hear you.
Commissioner Drew?
As I came back from the east last night, drove through heavy rain by Kadoka. I don't know if you got much of that rain over there.
Two tenths.
Okay, well, anything helps at this point in time, but be prepared because it's, it could be a bad year for us, for fires, so.
Yeah.
But we appreciate your, all the things that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of the same, thanks. Volunteerism in the rural area is a tough thing, and so, and I know that money is tight, so specifically, when you look at what we're looking, I think the majority of the state already is in a drought situation and/or severe in many locations. So, anyway, if you need something, don't be afraid to come back and talk to us, and so this isn't easy thing, so.
Well, we've got Val and Jerome, and they help us quite a lot.
All right, sounds good.
If we need something, I'm sure you'll hear from them.
All right.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Val.
Yep.
And get a motion from the floor to approve.
Second.
Approve, got a motion from Hattcock and a second Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful day, and just, thanks again. We'll move on to item number eight.
Do you want to vote on that? We did.
We did.
You did the first and the second, but you didn't do all in favor.
What happened?
Say all in favor.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries. I just approved it myself. That was an April Fool on you, Kara. April Fools, Kara.
Thanks.
I should, an April Fool, or you might not come back. All right. Item number eight, this is items from the public per SDCL 125-1. Speaker request forms. I don't have any speaker request form from the public, so I guess we can move on to item number nine, unless there is somebody out here who wants to speak from the public on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, number nine, 2025 Legislative Session Update, Mr. Garth Wadsworth, Senior Public Policy Director, Elevate Rapid City.
You get five minutes, Garth.
We'll keep it to five. Good morning, Commissioners. Garth Wadsworth, Elevate Rapid City. Apparently, I don't know how to spell the word session. That is not a great look. So, as most of you know, I have the privilege of spending January, February, and March out at the Capitol representing Rapid City, Pennington County, and the business communities in the Black Hills. We do our best to make sure that there are no fires and nothing goes terribly awry. Commissioner Dur had asked that I attend to give an update on our scorecard that we put out every year. Unfortunately, I realize that I will not have final approval on that until later this afternoon, so I cannot share the details of that with you, but I can give you a little sneak peek. So, just a bit of context, heading into session this year, the election back in November was generally unfriendly to incumbents. South Dakota was no different. Black Hills was no different, but that's not unique to us. So, we have a whole bunch of new legislators. We obviously had a new governor, a new lieutenant governor, joining us midway through session, which caused a bit of delay, creates some uncertainty as legislators try to figure out how they deal with the new administration. And then, there is some expected turnover with the federal delegation, and we saw a lot of local legislators starting to position as they compete for those seats, which caused some interesting dynamics. And then, as always, the budget was a big concern. This year, we had an interesting situation. Ongoing revenues were down for the state, but one-time money was up, and so we had this kind of interesting situation where they were looking to deal with $300 million in one-time funds, but having to make budget cuts at the same time. So, overall, just shy of, or a little over 500 bills across both chambers, pretty on par with what you would expect. Given the number of new legislators, you typically expect to see fewer bills, but they were right on par with what we've seen in recent years. So, hot topics. Prison funding was the big one. As you know, that ended in a 35 to 35 vote in the House. They made a number of concessions, but failed to get that approved, and so they will be meeting again late July for a special session to address that. I did see that the governor just announced a property, oh, sorry, a property tax proposal to be dealt with at the same time come July through their summer study. Okay, so what else? Pipelines, this dominated the discussion of the elections back in November. The governor did ultimately sign House Bill 1052, which prevents the use of eminent domain for a pipeline carrying carbon dioxide. We had at least 10 to 15 pipeline-related bills. This was the one that ultimately came out as the legislature's preferred option for addressing some of the concerns that they dealt with yes, oh, sorry, last year. Property taxes, also big discussion. You know, this was had in a bit of a vacuum without much consideration for the pipeline discussion and without much consideration for 1052. We had at least 20 property tax bills. The governor's was the only one that was ultimately approved. I won't belabor the points of 216, but does a few things. It creates a cap on the increase of the owner occupied category, so that is all owner occupied property within a county, not individuals. So, it's important to state that it does not do anything to limit the increases of individual property owners. It caps revenues to 3% or CPI, whichever is less. It does allow homeowners to make improvements of up to 40% of the total assessed value without any changes to their assessments, and then it does increase the income eligibility for an existing property tax relief program. So, that is not automatically applied. The homeowners will have to apply for that, but it increases the income eligibility up to $65,000 per year for a multi-resident household and a max assessment of up to $500,000. What's not said is that 216 does nothing to reduce anyone's property taxes. Everyone's property taxes will still go up. The bill doesn't go into effect until 2027, and it has a sunset in 2031. So, it does effectively create a ticking time bomb for future legislatures to have to decide, right, to actively make the decision to keep this in place in 2031, which is going to cause a lot of people a lot of headaches.
Mr. Chairman? Garth, can I ask you a question?
Please.
So, when you see these, you know, the various property tax bills that were out there, and, you know, we're going to give this segment to the property owners tax relief over here, no, let's take it, let's not do that segment, let's look at this segment of the property tax owners, let's give them a break. And you made a comment about this is not going to lower property taxes, and I think what you're talking about, so not only this bill, but some of the other ones, would you explain and go into that a little bit more when you make that statement? And then, the follow-up would be, explain if you take one segment of the property owners and say you're going to give them relief, what does that do to the rest of the property owners? And I'm talking about a tax shift.
Right, so, great questions. So, what has happened recently is, one, the impacts of the production model for agricultural property have been fully realized. At the same time, we've had drastic increases in residential home prices. We've had redevelopment of ag land from ag land to owner occupied property, and so we have a new tax system for agricultural property to deal with. We have physically less ag land than we did a decade before because we've built houses on it, and we have both more homes and more expensive homes. And so, there has been a shift in the net tax burden from agricultural property to owner occupied property. What this does do is it effectively slows that down by limiting the amount of growth that residential property can accommodate, right? So, it puts a cap on that. It does nothing to revert back to previous levels, and there were at least four or five bills that proposed a assessment reset from the current valuation back to 2020. So, they draw a line in the sand, they say pre-COVID, things were manageable back in 2020. We're going to take everyone's assessment, and we're going to revert them back to 2020. So, that is a couple of issues. So, none of these passed, right, so we don't have to deal with this.
Mr. Wadsworth, I think we've got another question.
What I was going to say is that yesterday Governor Roden announced the homeowner tax relief proposal, and it says, "We delivered a great first step to address property taxes with the Senate Bill 216." What that does, the Pennington County, is that would give us the option to directly reduce owner occupied property taxes by replacing the revenue with the county's sales tax up to a half percent. So, I've been waiting for that ever since I became a commissary, because I've said all along, you can't sustain a county with property taxes. You need to have that sales tax to tax the 3 million tourists that come through here and use their infrastructure.
So, if we, if we can come back to that one, because there's a lot of discussion to be had. I think proponents of the tax assessment freeze admitted during committee hearings that the most likely result is that when you suppress assessment values, your mill levy just adjusts. And so, yes, there is some shift back, but we have agricultural producers and commercial property owners paying a little bit more, but your tax rate, at the rate at which your home is taxed, just increases, and so you don't realize those full savings. One of those proposals did pass out of the Senate unanimously. There was a lot of support. Ultimately, died in on the House. I wouldn't be surprised if we see that come back, right? We've got a delay between when 216 was approved and when it actually comes into effect, and so there's unfortunately, a lot of time for those ideas to resurface, and so we're going to have to deal with them. So, the governor's proposal to allow counties to implement a sales tax, I think it's important to keep in mind, the idea is to increase sales tax revenue to decrease property tax revenue. And so, it might not be evenly distributed across counties and across the state, but the thinking is, and the plan is, your net revenues are going to be much the same, and so you should expect equivalent cuts from property tax revenue to be supplemented with sales tax. The net cost to the taxpayer, to the South Dakota taxpayer, is probably about a 30% savings, right? If it's revenue neutral, roughly 30% of our sales tax revenue comes from people from out of the state, and so we can shift a third of that revenue to costs. That's a good thing, that's a good thing for South Dakotan taxpayers. Doesn't mean much for the county, right? Because the goal is to supplement property taxes and find ways to reduce that. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that I expect the House particularly is going to have a strong, strong preference for cutting local budgets rather than increasing other revenue streams. So, there is a summer study to basically have the state take a look at county, municipal, and school district budgets. There seems to be the belief that they can find low-hanging fruit and make easy cuts at the local level in order to reduce property taxes. I think we should be very concerned.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yeah, Garth, I guess my, the low-hanging fruit I would offer the state is all the mandates they push down to county government, so take that one.
There is a lot less respect for local control at the state legislature right now. I think I can say that. I might find myself in some hot water, but gone are the days of limited state involvement. There is a group of folks who found themselves in leadership, who want to act as the school board, as the county commission, as a city council of every community in South Dakota. I think we should be prepared. Any questions on property taxes?
An interesting comment, so. Commissioner Hattcock?
I think we are prepared. I think we're looking at where we can cut some of the state areas for budget. I think that's where Jerry was leading to, to a certain extent, and how that funding has affected us in Pennington County. So, it goes both ways, and I think it's always easier after being in politics a long time to tell everybody else to cut when you're not cutting yourself. I have talked to a few legislators, many of them, and said the same thing. So, it's not something I'm saying up front that anybody doesn't already know. If you're going to cut budgets, start with yourself, be the example, and then show the rest how that's done. That's, I think, my bottom line, and I did go up there for 191, that bill with a lot of different people, our firemen, a lot of our ag people, and all it does is shift. So, if you're trying to save one taxpayer, property owners of owner occupied, what you've just done to the people that rent, you burden them and just pass it off to them, which, is there more property owners, or there's more renters? There's a lot of renters that are senior, disabled, veterans, and all those areas that they're trying to save, take it from me, because I rent to many of the people there from our motels to our houses, you're going to affect them more than you will the property owners. So, to take a look at all that, when you throw something out there, I truly believe you need to do your research instead of say, okay, I'm the hero of lowering property taxes and thinking out of the box to a certain extent, but not seeing the consequences to your actions. So, I commend them for trying to think that there's a way to do it, but again, it starts with their budget, our budgets, and that's how you cut property taxes. That's your bottom line. That's your bottom line. So go everywhere you want, uh, to make that happen. But that's how, that's your bottom line to make anything happen for the taxpayers or to care enough about your constituents that, um, there's things that every, I believe, every budget can be cut through programs or other things, um, that we can make it more priority, not only in Pennington County, but the state or the schools or even the city, so.
Is there any other comments from the?
No, I mean, just to follow up on Commissioner Hancock's comment. I mean, Governor Knell offered the state budget cuts, and they spent the entire time during the legislature figuring out how to not fund the prison so that they could free up those dollars to do their appropriations and start funding things that were cut, so.
I couldn't agree more. Uh, I, I think the most obvious opportunity for the state to reduce property taxes is through the state aid formula and education funding. They can buy down the mill levy, right? By putting more state general funds into education funding, which means we pay less in local effort. We pay less in property taxes. They could have done that.
Yep.
They did not.
I appreciate the messages that you brought to us, and I appreciate the understanding. And I think that in their infinite wisdom, they've, they've thought, they're starting to think this through, that, uh, to shift it, I mean, if we keep shifting to the owner occupied, uh, that's the most vulnerable in our community, which I, you know, they've already, they're already twenty-five percent above. They're paying that. So having the sales tax opportunity, it makes the most sense. Some point, maybe look at a liquor tax to really, really put the, uh, where the angst of our services cost is in the real, you know, we, if you talk about what it costs to have prisoners, what it costs to have to have addictions, um, you know, and all the elderly people in the community or, or limited income people are paying for all that. And the biggest percentage of our, the county's budget goes into the, you know, s- health and safety of the, of the people that don't contribute. So, uh, there's, needs to be something that, and I appreciate, you know, your understanding and, and your approach to, to the matter here that, uh, this income, the sales tax is probably the only way to, to get this accomplished. Because, you know, and we, we, you know, we definitely play our part in watching our budgets, and we have plans in motion to do that. So, uh, that's important, but we appreciate it. Is any other questions from the?
Are you finished?
I have a few more slides.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'll wrap it up. I'll wrap it up.
No, you're good.
I think one of the big wins was a fifteen million dollar loan for Douglas Schools to support the expansion of Elsworth Air Force Base and the arrival of the B twenty-one. There was multiple iterations of this bill. I think we landed on Amendment H by the end of the day. But ultimately, it was a fifteen million dollar loan directly from the Housing Infrastructure Finance Program to the Douglas School District, twenty-year term, zero percent interest. They'll pay that back, uh, and that will hopefully be used to leverage about forty-two million dollars from the feds to help with that project. Airport funding, we were unsuccessful. We did get a majority on the House side, but failed to get the two thirds. That was an attempt to get thirty million dollars to be split between the Rapid City and Sioux Falls airports. Those are regional assets that serve the entire state. We got ten million last year. The smaller airports ate up most of that, but we will try again next year. Uh, and that's it.
Garth, did they give any towards airports? I thought they gave some.
So there were four or five proposals. So they did increase the deadline for money that had been previously appropriated, but that was not spent for marketing dollars. And so they do have some additional flexibility in how they spend those funds. There was a proposal to increase funding through the jet fuel and general aviation fuel taxes to the Aviation Authority. Those both died. There was one to do something similar with the registration fees. Those were withdrawn. And I think that's it. And the general appropriation.
Thank you, Garth.
I have one more question. Would you speak to the West River Water Project, Missouri River?
Yes, yes. Uh, okay. So, uh, there was two bills to support the, uh, Missouri River Pipeline to bring water out to Western South Dakota. Bill two oh two, SB two oh two, was to create a bank account, essentially a piggy bank, to place money, uh, so that we can start to save for this project. There was no money associated with it. It was just to create the savings account. So, uh, the Lewis and Clark system, which serves Sioux Falls area, up and down I twenty-nine corridor into Minnesota, Nebraska, Iowa, they had the op, or the, the benefit of the ARPA funds. And so they leveraged a lot of those federal funds. We do not have that option available to us. And so the thinking is, let's create a bank account. If some of this money becomes available, we can start to put it away in the event that we can use that to leverage federal funds in the future. Fiscally responsible, doesn't actually cost us anything in the meantime. Uh, unfortunately, that died due to some opposition from really the Aberdeen area. So if you're ever out there and you have a bunch to pick, um, they're responsible. I should watch myself. Uh, and then the second one was, uh, Senate Joint Resolution five oh one, which was the approval of a future use water permit for the Missouri River water. Again, costs us nothing, does not commit us to anything. It's just an accounting method to make sure that we don't bleed the Missouri River dry. If we don't utilize that, other states have the ability to get in there first and claim some of that water. Last year, the Lewis and Clark system had the exact same permit. It passed out of the House sixty to seven, a lot of support. A handful of our legislators from the Rapid City area, Greater Black Hills, voted in favor of the Sioux Falls permit last year. Just twelve months later, they showed up and they voted against the permit for the Rapid City area, uh, West Riv, uh, West Missouri River Water Project. So there is a contingent that claims to represent the region who is at the Capitol voting against the interests of their residents and their constituents, but in favor of the exact same project for communities on the east side of the state. It's inexplicable. Cannot explain it. I just think it's important that people understand how their representatives are voting on, on these projects. Like, they cost us nothing. They don't commit us to anything. This is the first in a long, long list of steps that we're going to have to take to make this happen. It wouldn't seem prudent to spend time and money designing and evaluating a pipeline that you do not have water for. If it is free to set aside that water, we should. That seems prudent, practical.
Yeah. And to that point, Mr. Chairman, I believe anyway, the Lewis and Clark, that, uh, you know, some of our legislators here voted for, uh, that, uh, East River, uh, supplies water to out-of-state residents, correct?
Yes. So it, it provides water predominantly to Sioux Falls, but also Minnesota, Iowa, and Nebraska.
And I believe that Commissioner Hancock, you had Cheryl Chapman, that, uh, what's that group, Garth? The West River?
West Dakota Regional Water System.
Okay. So anyway, she called and talked to me the other day, and I did check with, uh, our office. But anyway, uh, last year during the budget process, the board had approved of funding them fifty thousand dollars. And so that is in our twenty twenty-five budget. And so we're preparing to cut that check, uh, to them for this project. And so we're making an investment in this, knowing that long-term water supply to West River is critical. And, uh, it's disappointing that, uh, you know, some of our local legislators here voted against that support, so.
So, Garth, just so I can clearly understand, we were trying to secure the water rights and they voted against that?
Yes, I, I should say it passed. So the water rights are secured. We did, we.
We're getting, we're securing the water rights. Okay.
Yep, we got that.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's the main thing. I remember being at the city years ago, and we secured all the Pactola water rights. And it was probably one of the best things that I've ever been part of or, you know, that council. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner.
An article, I don't know where it was, but, uh, our former, our current governor, uh, did a reset on our former governor, a lot of her proposals. And one was the, the support the South Dakota Public Broadcasting, which I really am glad that that went through.
Support for SDPB was, I think, surprising. It, it was not controversial. Probably the broadest support for a funded program that we've seen across the, the political spectrum. And so, yeah, it was great to see SDPB get fully funded.
Commissioner Hancock, did you have a question or? Are you done now, Garth, or is that, is that everything?
Thank you, Garth.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate what you do. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
So one quick question, Garth.
Garth, we've got one more. Don't run away. I April fooled you again. I'm bad at getting good at this.
So we'll, after this afternoon, we'll get to see your, uh, scorecard?
We have some hoops we need to jump through to get it ready. Uh, it's not, it's not pretty. It's not ready for public consumption. But, uh, yeah, I'd be happy to share some of the details offline.
Well, I got the email. I have it. Can we throw it up on the screen?
Please don't.
Okay.
Thanks, Garth.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hey, Garth? You're doing a great job, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Garth.
Thank you. Okay, item number, um, no motion required. We'll go to item number ten. This is an annexation request area near Seeger Drive and one forty-third Avenue intersection. Mr. John Van Bee, Van Beek, President, Avid for Engineering. And I did talk to these people. Um, this is, has to do with some housekeeping issues that, between the city and the county. It's a formality. It's about, uh, giving up some right of way. I'll let Mr. Van Beek proceed. And we're trying to eliminate lengthening the time period to get this done. They're ready to move forward. The people on the project, I think they're here today too with you, correct? This is a big project for the county. It's a big project for the city. It's going to be unprecedented, and it's a vision that's been in the works for a long time. There's, uh, so, and that being said, Mr. Van Beek, I'll let you present. And then if Brittany's around, she can, is she here today? Anyway, go ahead, Mr. Brittany.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you. Thanks, Commission, for, uh, considering this item today. My name's John Van Beek, as you, you said, and that was a very nice lead in to, to the, to the situation. The, the agenda item is an annexation request, but really, um, we're trying to, to clean up the corporate limits of Rapid City adjacent to, to the project, um, that, that you just discussed. In, the, the area in question here is in Section nineteen and in the southeast quarter of Section nineteen. So if I zoom into this area, you can see that shading represented what's in the city limits and what's out of the city limits right now. This, this property right here in the southeast quarter was annexed, um, back in two thousand and one. The, uh, property across the street, uh, was annexed in nineteen ninety-nine. And the property all on the south side of Seeger Drive here was annexed in, um, nineteen, or nineteen eighty-six. The, the annexation of this portion of, of property in two thousand and one was very specific and excluded the rights of way for one forty-third and Seeger Drive. So what we're left with, as I zoom in here, is a strip of section line right of way and right of way previously acquired for both Seeger Drive and one forty-third that is still in, still outside of the county, or excuse me, outside of the city limits. So still in Pennington County. So property here is in, in Rapid City. This strip is in Pennington County, and this property is all in Rapid City. When we approached the city to try to, to, to discuss this issue and, and clean it up, the, the, the message we got was that there needs to be a request for annexation. And that's why I'm here, asking you to consider signing a request for annexation and a development application essentially to the city of Rapid City so that the city corporate limits can be updated in this area and adjacent to the southeast quarter of Section nineteen. That's about as simply as I can put it.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Can, Brittany, can you come forward and give us some advice on how we move forward with this? There's no motion or anything here that?
Sure. So, um, I would just, sorry, Brittany Moller, Planning Director. I would just request that the board, um, make a motion that you sign the application. Because it is public right of way, um, Joe, nor I have the authority to sign these applications on behalf of the public. So the motion would be that, uh, the chair's signature is on the development application and the request for annexation.
Is any questions from the?
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Commissioner Drew.
I'd like to ask our highway superintendent. Cause he's, he's suggested that, uh, along with this, that, uh, inclusion of new way, uh, be considered also, Niva Way be considered also. And I think we should hear that first.
Yeah, um, as our, our memo stated there, Niva Way is kind of an anomaly for us. It's in the middle of two roads or three roads that the city actually has jurisdiction of. But I, as I understand it, that's not on the docket for today, um, and for a discussion for another day. So, um, we are in talks with the city and trying to clean some of this stuff up. So I, I can leave it at that, unless you want anything more specific.
Oh, then I, then I would ask John, do you see any issue if we tried to do that, tried to add that to this?
Um, I, I think from, from the perspective of, of, of our ask or our situation, we're trying to clean up something that's already jurisdictionally agreed to between the city and the county and not necessarily open up more private property for annexation or other, other road segments for annexation. Certainly wouldn't have any objection to that, I don't believe, but not, not the, not what we're trying to accomplish today. The, the, the main, the main issue here is, is trying to get the rights of way adjacent to the southeast quarter of Section nineteen properly in the city limits of Rapid.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. I can help weigh in on that. And thank Mr. Drews for the question. I instructed Joe to make sure we bring this back to, cause getting their project going is, is important right now. And, but there is an issue that we'll need to take care of. We're, we're working on a few different issues in the community here, but that is one of them. And then we can, Joe can bring that back at another time, and it'll be, at that point, we'll have it narrowed down so we don't hold these guys up on their project, I guess, is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Joe, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about the right of way that you want to get to go in here, and who's maintaining the road?
Uh, Niva Way, county highway is maintaining Niva Way. Um, one forty-third, Seeger Drive, and let me go to the north here, country road.
Joe, I think we're talking about two different, let's make sure we're talking about the same road. Which road are you referring to? These guys are here, Commissioner.
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about the right of way. So what happens typically on an annexation when someone does it?
You're talking about that piece. I think Joe's reverting back to the other part that we'd let.
No, I'm talking about the road that, uh, is adjacent to the right of way.
So the road, since I believe that agreement, uh, which was in your packet there, was agreed upon in two thousand and twenty-two? Is that when they did the sewer project, Joe?
Twenty-three, October of twenty-three. Since then, one forty-third and this entire section and Seeger Drive are all maintained and under the jurisdiction of Rapid City. Just the, the corporate limits not, doesn't reflect that.
All right. So, and I think this has been talked about, when, but when these annexations go forward, the issue has been historically that someone will annex right up to the right of way because they don't want to take over the road. And so they'll annex, and then it still becomes the county's, you know, deal to maintain that road and all that stuff that's supporting their infrastructure and their annexation. So as we move forward, I think it's been talked about before, but when these things move forward, then, you know, make sure when this annexation and these things happen, that, uh, we don't have to go back and clean up a right of way issue, that that right of way and the road is taken at that point in time.
Chair.
And I'll, I'll weigh in on that. It's a hundred percent the conversation we had. And that's why these guys are here today, because that didn't take place. But the city had taken over, taken care of it, but they never, never resolved the right of way issue. And that's why we're here. They kept going back and forth, and that's when we decided to just bring it here. Brittany figured out how to resolve it. We're going to resolve it so they can move on. But Joe is aware of that in the future, that this won't happen again to us. I mean, it, it, uh, it will be taken care of at the time and should be, have been taken care of, if these guys wouldn't be here. So I appreciate that.
And if I may, Chair?
Yes.
We're actually working with the DOT, um, our Highway Superintendent Association and, uh, the LGA Office, DOT, uh, Local Government Assistance. We've drafted some legislation to propose for next year. I think Gary's seen that. And I'll provide it to you for next year, uh, next year's session to try and clean up some of these issues that are continuing to happen throughout the, the state. This issue isn't just a Rapid City, Pennington County issue. This is a statewide issue that's happening all throughout the state, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
I'm in favor of this, but I agree with Joe. There's got to be some kind of legislation creating donut holes. Once, I think you're surrounded by the roads, um, they should automatically be, um, entered in as annexation as well. Cause you still have some white areas in here, in between here. I'm not against what you're doing today. In fact, uh, I was going to say the motion on it, but, um, you're right. Gary and, uh, Jerry, what it creates is donut holes, if you see the white areas in that area, that hopefully we can, uh, clean those up and ask the city at that point as chair and vice chair in this commission, if they could annex the rest in. But today, um, to get this through, this is a pretty big project. I'm willing to, um, move that forward. But in the future, um, or even now, um, we need to start telling them once they have those boundaries in there, that those donut holes need to be cleaned up and that we're in, uh, committed to, um, annexing the whole area at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Rock, did you have anything? So do we have a motion to?
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I'd make a motion for the chair to sign. I'd make a motion for the chair to sign the development application for this project with the Planning Department.
Motion by Hatcock.
Second.
Who was that?
Me.
Second from DUR.
I'm, I've got to figure out sign language. No.
You want to add something?
No.
I have to think about it for a second. So, we have a motion by Hatcock, second by DUR, to, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. And we're looking forward to seeing your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe and Brittany. We want to, item number 11. Items from auditing. Oh, we're a little bit ahead of schedule here. Are we, are we good?
Oh, we're good.
That clock's already reading.
Cindy, you're late. What's the issue?
Almost an hour and five minutes, Cindy.
All right.
You're usually on time.
Ms. Auditor Moller.
Good morning. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. First item that we have before you is supplement SB 25004, and this is for a supplement to the opioid budget, which is under the sheriff's umbrella, and that is $275,510. And that comes from restricted fund balance. And then the second one that's within that resolution is to the jail budget for $754,620. That comes from the assigned fund balance for the transport bus.
Chair. If we could have Brian come up on the opioid restricted fund balance, just a brief explanation, how we got it, why we got it, and what it's supposed to be used for, and what he's using it for. And I already talked to Sheriff beforehand, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sheriff.
Good morning. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And Cindy actually probably is a little bit better at giving you the whole history of the opioid fund, that it, that Pennington County really spearheaded a lawsuit on behalf of the state of South Dakota and the other counties and jurisdictions across the state, that, that has some money coming in to Pennington County and the, the other jurisdictions across the state. And I actually sit on the State Opioid Advisory Committee. It's a statewide committee that we, part of this funding is set aside for the state to divvy out through different grant opportunities throughout the state. And then part of this funding was awarded to different counties and municipalities across the state to be used to follow a, a list of guidelines that was provided under the lawsuit for uses for Pennington County. And we've used it for a few various things in the past, but that account balance this year, I think Cindy, Cindy's numbers as of at the end of the year, we were just under $600,000 for the Pennington County portion of that. And, and looking through the, the allowable uses on that through the last few months, I really tried to find things that we were already doing in Pennington County to support, support those addicted to opioids versus trying to set up new programming. So that, in this supplement, I'll just give you a rundown of what's covered in there. And we had done this through the budget last year, adding a supervisor, I'm sorry, adding a counselor over at the jail that handles specifically, deals specifically with opioid users in the jail. And we assessed our counseling staff and our counseling supervisors, the specific programs that they're doing, support that they're providing for opioid users in their ongoing current counseling sessions, and come up with a formula to do 50% of one of our three clinical supervisors, and then 25% of four separate counselors. That's about the time that they, that they do, when that, when they're doing their opioid counseling. And then the other funding in this is specific, a majority of it is specific to about $60,000 for an injectable that's being used in the community for those that are on opioids. So when people are bouncing back and forth in and out of jail in our community, we use a good continuum of support and try to keep them on the same type of medication that helps them, you know, not be utilizing opioids when they're in and out, so we don't have to change that each time. So that's what this funding is for. My intention is, this will offset about a quarter of a million dollars of our current budget this year, and I'm going to pass that on to savings to Pennington County for services that we're currently providing. And we have enough money in there to continue this, this same process through 2026. So you'll see these same numbers and an explanation in our budget hearing for 2026. And, and there's enough money coming in there. I think we can do two or three more years with the same thing, saving Pennington County about a quarter million dollars for services that we're already providing.
Commissioner Hatcock.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. A lot of times on your paper, maybe break it down just a little bit more for the public. I appreciate your presentation. I don't think we really go through a lot of this sometimes, but that was pretty important to Pennington County with the opioid and the lawsuit and everything. So I think it was something that we should have brought forward in this way, how you're explaining it and telling us basically and the public what we use the money for. So I appreciated that.
Commissioner Dyer has a question or a comment?
Just a couple of comments and a question, I guess. So, yeah, in your memorandum, when you've got the budget line items in there, could you just say, a little caption at the top that says what budget this is coming out of, and maybe a little synopsis as to what you just explained?
Absolutely.
And then, this was, so these dollar amounts we're going to supplement during the budget process, then that budget decision was made about those allocations and how much we were going to draw down from that fund?
For Chair, if I may. There was nothing, I don't believe, that you presented during budget. You were waiting until we got, you got your plan all together and we could do the supplement to that budget line.
It's not something historically that we've done, but if that's the way we want to do it going forward, that's very easy just to roll into the budget process. This, this money is new to us, and the fund was building up, so we just tried to look for ways that we could offset some Pennington County tax dollars while we're providing the service. But I, I will include all of it in the budget presentation for this year.
Yeah. So, what I would suggest in the budget presentation, when we have these kind of funds or one-time money, not unlike other restricted funds, we have, you know, our 911, highway, et cetera, but when you put it in the budget, then part of that would be that you're going to say that I'm going to draw, I anticipate I'm going to draw these different line items down out of this fund to that amount. And that, depending on how you do it, I don't know about Springbrook, but I knew the new Tyler program coming in, you can set that up. And so like when you run payroll, those are automatically deductions that hit that fund account. And so instead of pulling out of, you know, let's just say general fund, it's going to hit these other line items automatically, and that decision has already been made at budget time instead of doing a budget supplement.
If I may, Mr. Chair. It's not in a separate fund.
Okay.
It's in a restricted fund balance within the general fund.
Within the general fund. But it had, in there, does it have its, does it have its own fund number?
It has its own budget number, yes.
Okay. So then you could draw it down from that.
We will, when we spend that, we will make sure that's the restricted fund balance we bring down, yes.
All right. Is that, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, Brian, is that a one-time fund or is it ongoing?
No, we have some ongoing money coming into that. And, and as, as more and more of these lawsuits get settled, more money will continue to funnel into that fund. So, I don't, I mean, there's no way to tell exactly how long that money's going to last, but I do believe it's going to be, I think it's going to continue to grow, and I think it's going to be there for a while.
Just got a ballpark with the...
I don't.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Some of the information that we get when, when we're receiving notification that they're going to disburse some funds, does show like payment year one of three for some of these pharmaceutical companies. So hopefully they'll continue to give us a little bit of an idea of how long they're going to be doing that from some of the pharmaceutical companies. But most of them are one and three is, between one and three is what I'm seeing on those notifications.
Okay. Thank you. Satcock, everybody's, everybody's good? Okay. We're all looking for a motion. Is there a motion required on this? Yeah, there is a motion required to approve the budget supplement.
Move to approve budget supplement resolution SP 25-004.
Second.
Got a motion from Hatcock and a second from DUR to approve this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Could I make one more comment?
Sure. No, you may make another comment, yes.
And I just wanted to, to share also that there, there are other funds available through the state group that I sit on that's available throughout the state for, for grant funding. And I've signed four or five letters for local entities that apply and get that grant funding. So Project Recovery here in Rapid City is one of the biggest, they get about 50% of the big money of the state to run a, a good program. And we, we, we deal, work with them weekly on what they're doing here. And then several smaller entities that, that figure out a way to provide services to those suffering from opioid addiction, both families and individuals, apply for grants. And then, as being on the, at the sheriff, and then also on the advisory committee, I sign letters of support and reference to those. So, there's a lot of other entities. This isn't Pennington County utilizing money that could be used in other service areas. There are separate funds for that. So there, there's a lot of good work being done with this money across the state.
So that grant fund, I'm sorry, Sheriff, the grant fund is, that you're drawing from, is that the same fund that the, the other people will be drawing from too?
No, this is money that's specifically allocated to Pennington County.
Okay.
Rapid City has some money. A, a lot of the area counties and cities have, have some money too. And I think with the way that fund is, we'll have an opportunity at budget time to talk about, you know, we can talk through what the allowable uses are. There's probably some other things we could utilize that money to help offset things in Pennington County with going forward.
God knows, we have an addiction problem in Rapid City, so.
So, bottom line, we, as Pennington County, we're one of the bigger people that, bigger agencies that decided to do this lawsuit with a couple lawyers that worked on, for free, to bring this forward in order for us to help people that were opioid addicted. So, that's how this all came about and ended up, we won. So, that's what that fund is, that specifically what Sheriff is talking about.
Makes sense to me. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
I knew if we waited long enough, we'd get something out of you.
So, Brian, on the state group that you sit on, in order for that money to be delivered to any entity, they have to have a program in place, do they not?
A program or, or a proposal in place. They, for the, the larger funding, they put out an RFP process about a year and a half ago, and a group in, out of Sioux Falls and a group out of Rapid City got a majority of that funding. But they support hubs in eastern South Dakota and western South Dakota for that funding.
Okay. So for those that, because occasionally I've been asked about this, how we're doing with that. And I, I've basically said to them that you need to establish something for your local area before you're going to be able to even apply for those funds. So they will accept a proposal at the same time without them having an actual program established already, as I'm hearing.
Yeah. They put solicitations out at least once a year, maybe twice a year, for different types of funding, for different programs across the state. And then you've got to put a proposal in, and then our committee reviews those and votes on them.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Got a motion on the floor, gentlemen, ladies?
You had a motion?
Is there a motion on the floor?
You're done.
So, all in favor, oh, we already passed it, so we can move on. I guess item B, approve the new license for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for solid rock hospitality. Does anyone have any questions on this?
No, I'll just go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Move to, move to approve the license for retail on-off malt beverage and SD farm wine license for solid rock hospitality.
Got a motion by Ross Connect and a second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. So, I'm sure that Commissioner Ross Connect's going to take me out to this one too, right? Yeah. Perfect. Items from Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Davis Purcell, 900 Concourse Remodel, workstation procurement, and request for direction on spending authority. So...
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Pennington County. So, to give a quick background, when we purchased 900 Concourse, there was a significant amount of cubicles, which I'm calling workstations here, that were disassembled, stored, and then with the purpose of, of reusing them post renovation. Cindy Chapman, my project manager, and myself have, have gone through this, these cubicles extensively over the last, well, six months, trying to determine if we can actually reassemble them for, for use at 900 Concourse. The reason I included a picture in there, these aren't the, our specific cubicles, but what this shows is 90% of the cubicles that were disassembled are that straight desk. And a lot of what we're reinstalling is a U shape in most areas to give, you know, those workers more space to utilize, because this was a call center, so there wasn't a lot of need for those, for those larger cubicle setups. And a significant amount of work goes into not only sourcing those materials, but also possibly fabricating some of those brackets to put those cubicles together, as well as ordering new pieces for those cubicles. We have found it to be very difficult. Not only do they not sell some of those parts, but essentially they were, they're, some of those parts are just discontinued at this point. So what we're looking at here is, I have 41 stations, at least that we have planned to go back into 900 Concourse. 27 of those workstations are planned to be occupied immediately. 14 were intended for future expansion. So when I throw this number of approximately $135,000, that is a hard estimate that we received from a Dakota business here in town for the 41 stations that we would need. And then again, they would be brand new, they'd be able to be customized and supported for the foreseeable future. So really, I'm not looking for the approval of, of purchasing new stations at this point. But what I am recommending is that we surplus what we have in storage, and I will do my best to get them signed off on, or excuse me, sell them at an auction. And that's where we're at, so I'll stand for any questions.
Here.
Yeah. Commissioner Hatcock.
The motion is different than what you're saying.
Oh, is there not a motion on there?
Yeah. It says move to authorize Building Ground to approve, execute all FTEs.
Okay, that's, that's the other item that I'll get to. The procure, we're talking about the request for direction on an FFNE.
No, there's, there's just one motion.
This is workstation procurement and request for direction on spending authority.
Right.
So there's really actually two in here, yeah.
It's, you only have one. And the only one you have is the 1.7 million for the...
Yeah, so that's the next topic I'll get to. So I guess I did not add a motion in here at this time, but for this, but what I would recommend is what I'll do later is I'll put on consent agenda if the direction is to move forward with purchasing new cubicles for concourse.
There are two. It's a combination.
I'll put a motion on later, yeah.
It says workstation procurement and request for direction on spending, so I guess it would be up there.
There's two separate topics on this memo. Two separate topics.
That's the way I see it. So, I mean, if, we can attack it that way.
All right. So Chair, have a question.
If the, if the commission is comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Because it does say workstation procurement, and that's what you're talking about right now, right?
Yes.
Yes, just the cubicles right now. I'm just giving you my recommendation that the, the best, best way for me to move forward is with the idea that we are going to purchase new cubicles for 900 Concourse, and then later I will put on the consent agenda to have our existing disassembled cubicles declared a surplus. And then I'll move on to the next topic in a minute.
So if the, if the commission is comfortable with that, we could have a motion that says...
Hold on. Just a question.
We've got some questions here. Go ahead.
Okay, so, you put 1.7 on here for estimated budget of 1.7.
That's a different, that's the second half of this question.
They come together, but the, the issue is, you have remaining balance of 1.490, you took it out. So you're, you're taking another 135 out of the 177869, or that's what you're adding with it?
If...
As current budget for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, FFNE.
I guess I request, can I answer that after we get through the questions on just the cubicles? And then I'll talk about all of the FFNE out at concourse and that second part of my memo. And I can explain to you all those numbers in there.
Well, why I'm saying then is you're asking for another 135, and your budget isn't matching, adding the 135, so.
Okay.
It would come with the procurement or taking away cubicles. Am I correct, Mr. Davis?
Yeah. So, the, if, if you actually look at the FFNE on the concourse remodel project spreadsheet, the estimate was about 1.7, 1.8. And actually, what you're reading for the 1.490 is...
Remaining.
Well, so, yes, correct. After some of this has been spent, but the majority of it is the audiovisual equipment piece of it from ABI, and that was approved completely separately. separately by the commission to move forward with that piece.
So what I'm saying, are you taking, is it already in your one seven seven eight six nine, the hundred and thirty-five thousand? Or are you taking it from the remaining of one four nine zero two one?
So if you take the one four nine, you would essentially add the hundred and thirty-five thousand on there for the cubicles, but I've also built in some contingency for myself because there is a lot of pieces and parts to this project that are in need of FFNE, and we're trying to account for everything we possibly can that's budgeted here. But the reason I'm asking for one point seven in the, and this is all part of discussion in the motion, is, and that's, it's what it really is, it's a, it's an example of what we could approve, but I want to get into that after I talk about the cubicles first.
So the one point seven doesn't include the one, one seven seven eight, doesn't include the hundred and thirty-five added to it?
No.
Okay, so you're taking away from it?
No.
Okay, so you didn't take it away. So then you're going to take the one four nine zero and take the hundred and thirty-five out of it, that's all I'm asking? Because it's going to cost you a hundred and thirty?
Sure, yeah.
That's your bottom line?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're going to try to sell or get rid of the other ones?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're not working, they're not going to work, and that will bring down your budget by a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
Davis, get any idea how many of those cubicles are out there? At one time, I thought we rented one or two, three buildings just to store those.
Yeah, so I believe, excuse me, when we first purchased the building, I think there was upwards of four hundred to five hundred workstations. About two-thirds of them were very old, like could not be reused and very, very poor conditioned. And those were declared surplus a long time ago. And then the other third were relatively new to what we thought, but they are about ten to twelve years old. So, and they're, and I think remaining, we probably have about one hundred and fifty, maybe to two hundred stations that are stored right now, but those are all straight desk configurations.
So you mentioned auctions, so can you explain that process? You got any idea what they would probably bring on the open market if you did an auction? Or how's that work? How do you market that?
Not, it wouldn't, it, I'll be honest, they won't be worth much. We'll probably have to sell them as units, like, like fifty in a bunch for five hundred dollars maybe is all we'll get out of them. But typically, we just advertise between three different entities, which is the Journal, the Prevailor, and I believe somewhere down in Custer. So it's really sort of locally sourced as far as advertising, but we, we also have been in touch with like some of the national brands that procure a lot of this steelcase furniture that we're looking at here, and there might be some interest there, but it's a, it, we, yeah, it's relatively, a relatively small number that we'll be looking at for those cubicles.
Yeah, so it's not going to be windfall?
No.
Yeah, and I assume that when we, the ones we don't auction, they just go out to the landfill?
We would declare them, yeah, after that probably as, as garbage, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross Kinnock. So we've got, does everybody understand that this is two different motions? One is the workstation procurement, so that would, motion would be to allow Davis to procure the workstations would be the first motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ross Kinnock?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Drews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One question. Your procurement of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, are we going to put them out?
Not at this time, I'm not asking for that. I just wanted to make sure that my recommendation is to move forward with this so I can get you guys very hard firm numbers on the FFNE. I was giving you a budget of what to look for when we purchase these, because right now I have no spending authority on any FFNE, which is what I'm talking about next. So the next part of it is...
All in opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. And we'll move on to the next item where it's the, this is the actual motion that shows on your guys' paper here.
Yeah, so again, I should have put this, I mean, right here, if you look at the motion, it says potential motion, because we can change it as we see fit. I know there, if you look under the FFNE lines, there's also network IT equipment and cameras and signage involved. There's also moving fees. There's just going to be some, a lot of final items that are going to need to be purchased as we move into that building. And so really, I'm looking for direction on how the commission wants me to approach that. Typically, what I would do with a project like this is get not only the project approved at the time of bidding, but also have a lot more hard firm numbers for FFNE and everything else, and we would approve the whole project at, in totality, but that is not what happened this time. So again, if I could break down the numbers a little bit, it's about one point seven million that we had budgeted for FFNE. We also, but we did have that line item for audio visual equipment in there for a little over three hundred thousand dollars, and you can see that two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of that was spent. And then also in the FFNE, there's a line item there for fifty-one thousand dollars. That is for, was for a lot of the cubicle disassembly, storage and all of that stuff. And that was approved way back when, so I had authority over that spending, and now we're sitting at about one point five million remaining in FFNE. But the reason I put the one point seven in there is because if we're, if we're, if I'm asking for cubicles, I'm going to need roughly another hundred and fifty thousand for those as well with some contingency built in. Now, what I, what I would also recommend is that I can come back to the commission with project updates anytime any of this is spent, or if the commission would like, I can get hard proposals on every single item that we are looking at purchasing and come back with those large scale orders for approval. But again, sometimes that delays our process because there's a lot of coordination and the timing of when we order this furniture, how, when we get it here, how we store it and things like that, as well as we have some tariffs in place. A lot of our furniture comes from Canada right now, so that's another thing we have to look out for, because some of those tariffs, I think, were implemented today, April first, on some of those items. So we may see some increases in that as well. So again, I'm asking for direction on how the commission best sees I move forward with, with the procurement of, of all the items needed for concourse.
Chair.
Commissioner.
I would like to see some hard numbers, only, only because from the past and the numbers we've seen and the numbers we came up with in the end, Davis, not you personally, but for me, that past spending has been over the top. And then relying that we're just going to stay at one point seven, I've always seen numbers, I've always seen the papers and what everything's going to cost before I decide on what that budget should be. I think it's only fiscally responsible to see those numbers, and even if you're putting down that that furniture is a hundred and fifty and this is going to be a hundred and twenty-five and then the audio is going to be a hundred and six, I'd like to see those numbers before I give or decide that one point seven is okay. Because in the past, as you know, those numbers never added up, we were going to keep the cubicles, we stored the cubicles, now we're not using the cubicles because we found out you weren't here at the time, I appreciate that, now we're not going to use them, they can't be used. Kind of said that before, knew about cubicles just by seeing them all over at secondhand stores and no one buying them, bottom line. Again, my bottom line is I like to see where the money's going to be spent and at least do a guesstimate to a certain extent of what each item's going to cost and bring that back to us before personally I decide to spend one point seven. Thank you.
Commissioner, you had a question?
No, no, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Drews? Okay. Commissioner Ross Kinnock, did you? Okay. So this, I just, this gives you the spending authority up to one point seven million?
It's only a potential motion, we do not have to pass any motion right now.
Okay.
What I'm gathering, it seems like we'd rather have the actual estimates in front of you.
How does that change? I think you mentioned it a little bit, the timing?
Say that again.
The timing, is, that affects the timing a little bit?
Yeah, well, right now, we're, we're at like six to eight weeks potentially for furniture, but that could change drastically with tariffs. I mean, it's, it's a real situation we're dealing with. I guess that's, that's at least for the desks and cubicles. For some of the network and IT equipment and cameras, not so sure on the lead times on that. We would have to get with IT, because they've gone through a lot of that. But I can say with confidence that our FFNE line item here that we have broken down, the network IT equipment and signage, the signage one is a little heavy because we're just not sure exactly what we're going to integrate on the exterior of the building as far as lighted signage and things like that, and that will all come back to the commission. But these are pretty, pretty good estimates from past projects that we've had. IT has broken everything down. Cindy, my project manager, has a lot of that FFNE broken down. I just don't, I, I break it down into larger pieces here, not, not so much each single line item. But again, I think what I'm gathering here is, if you guys want to see those, that's fine, I'll have to work ahead of schedule a little bit.
What would the timeline be on that?
We would have to order items no later than probably July, depending on the schedule from CECO. So we're looking at, we got a couple months here to get everything, and it, so we got some time. But again, sometimes those, those commission meetings don't line up perfectly, but what I can do is make sure that we get ahead of schedule here, and I guess if we need to pay for some storage to order some of that FFNE ahead of time, then we will, so.
Here. So in the past, when you get some of those bidding or you get some of those, then bring them forward.
Mm-hmm.
Accordingly, they don't have to be in one bid. Then it also shows taking away from relying on them, what you have left, blah 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 on what you're doing. And Davis, that's what's happened in the past. When I was here, it was easier to follow, it was easier for the public to follow about how we're spending the money on certain projects or certain areas. Again, if you know you're going to get certain items and you can bid on them now, then bring those forward at each commission meeting and say, you know, I got this bid, got this bid, and then move those forward. Seems like cumbersome in one sense, but it also puts you in a timeline where you can, you know, get to where you're going. It also makes it more transparent on the numbers and how much we're spending on each issue to figure out the bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Drews?
I would suggest that we ask Mike Iverson what kind of timeline he thinks he's going to need on the IT stuff.
And he's here. Mike, can you answer that question for us, please, sir?
Mike Iverson, IT Director. Some of the equipment is, they've been telling me right now there's no delays on it. The only thing that really hangs us up is the possibility of the tariffs that could be hitting us. So some of this stuff is built in Mexico, some of it's built in the US, so it really depends on that. But they say two to four weeks and then it's setup time. So that can be anywhere from a month to a month and a half, depending on what we've got and when we can get into the building, so.
Does that suffice everybody on, are we going to, how are we going to go forward, I guess?
I have, I have a comment, I guess, question. So yeah, what, in line with what Commissioner Hancock said, what I'd like to see is, I, I don't want to see this stuff come back every month and then you're going to piecemeal the project together and say, okay, you know, out of all the FFNE, if it's twenty different things in this month, we're going to, every two weeks, here's two or three things, here's another thing, here's another thing, and then we're rehashing the numbers every time you come in front of us. What I would like to see is the detailed listing, and so if you could get everything that you're going to purchase and everything you think you're going to need, and then price that out and say, this is, this is what I need to take care of concourse with all the FFNE, and hopefully get that done at one time, and put all those numbers in there and then come forward and say, it's a million seven and here's how the million seven is being spent, and break it out by the type of FFNE and the classification, et cetera, and have those numbers so we could, and I'm assuming that's something you could do. Okay, and I'd rather take care of it in one sweep, and then if the number is, let's just say more than one point seven, because right now, if we pass the motion this way, you're going to be handicapped and you'll be coming in front of us anyway. So I think that would give everybody a little more insight as to the scope of the project, and I think it is a good thing. You know, when I heard, you know, previous discussions about reusing cubicles, I didn't, you know, think that would work, and you and I did talk about that. So I think getting rid of the old cubicles and setting it up so it's functional for us is a great thing. I would just suggest come back with a whole project list, itemized out with a total dollar for us to review.
Okay, will do.
Mr. Ross Kinnock?
My only question is, now it sounds like if we order those after April first, you might be subject to the tariff. Do you have any idea what that amount might be? I heard twenty-five percent at one time on some items.
Yeah, it varies drastically depending on the item, but, and, and that's the biggest thing here is, you know, we, we need to order at a time where the building, like, we have to estimate, you know, CECO will give us their project schedule, but we have to estimate, it's a lot of furniture that we're ordering, and we don't want to have a semi backup to a storage unit, and then B and G is responsible for bringing all of that to concourse. So what this, what I'm trying to do, I guess, is create a, a schedule for FFNE to make sure that I have that authority when I need it to spend it, and I don't know if I bring you guys an itemized proposal in a month from now, if I don't order until July, that could change drastically as well. So it's just a complicated issue.
Commissioner Hancock.
So I have to ask the question, so are we in a hurry to go to the other building? For one thing, because we really haven't figured out what we're doing with everything at this point, and why is there such a timeline, is my first question. And the second question is, I don't mean bringing back every piecemeal or whatever, but some of that stuff is going to be easier to order, so it might be six items, might be eight items, whatever kind of thing. But bottom line is, guys, I understand tariffs, I understand things are going to cost more, I don't think it's going to change much. To a certain extent, it will, in other extents, it won't. And then why, again, what, what is the hurry? Are we, we want to get in there in October, I get it, but if we don't get in there till January first, or we don't get in there till next year in February, I mean, what is that going to do for us? Is that going to make insurances higher, because we still have all the buildings, we still have everything we always had, we're paying the same amounts for the utilities to a certain extent until we move, we're paying for a building that we're trying to finish and do, do right by and not hurry up in it in the first place, because that's what happened to this building in the past, and then they missed a bunch of steps. So bottom line, let's do it right. It's not a hurry, Mr. Davis, unless, like I said, we want to save money, I get that, I mean, that's, that's what we're supposed to do, but do it right, do it by, so the taxpayers are seeing it, we're seeing it, it's just more transparent in the future. In the past, I didn't, I didn't appreciate what was happening and what was going on, trying to figure out the numbers. So in the future, that's what we had talked about, is that we'd be more transparent, and we look at those numbers and we make sure the, the people that are paying the bill, our customers, are satisfied with what we're spending and how we're spending it, so they know what we're spending on. That's only fair, so, just two things.
I could just quickly...
Any more comments?
Quickly comment.
Yep.
I mean, I, I'm very confident in myself and Cindy and our other B and G team that we're, we're coordinating this appropriately, because the, at least the departments that are moving to concourse, that's fairly set, and those, those areas are being designed around those departments. And so we can coordinate this, I'm just making sure that it doesn't, I guess, the commission meetings don't fault the necessary time that I have to purchase the FFNE. So this was just a discussion to have early on, I shouldn't have even put a motion on it, just so I can make sure I'm getting the direction from you guys.
I think what it says here is a request for direction on spending authority, so let's, let's keep to that and give Mr. Purcell some direction. And I think Jerry, I think I can agree with Jerry's direction is the fact that, let's get to bids, see where it's at, and then give you the authority.
Good.
And I, I think part of that to alleviate, you know, Davis, what your concern might be, that if you put it all together, and let's just say by the next commission meeting or within a month, you've got all the FFNE put together and the total dollar amount is one point six, and then you say, okay, I need a spending authority for one point six. I would say, you know, that we give you some leeway in there, that if you get price increases or something happens, that we give you that spending authority to cover that contingency, and therefore you're not held off, and then when you go to make, you go to order, they go, well, the price just went up five percent, three percent, oh, I don't have that spending authority, I have to come back from the board, so I think that would be likely our approach.
Sounds good.
Thank you, is that, that, does that give you the direction, that your question?
Good to go, yep.
So is everybody up here comfortable with that? I think that's, we don't need a motion for that direction. Thank you, I think that getting to that point was good. Okay, we'll move on to item thirteen, items from emergency management.
By the way, Davis, you sound a lot better, you get the voice.
I feel a lot better.
Good.
Good morning, Chair members of the commission, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, back before you again seeking approval or authorization of the commission's chair on the adoption resolution for the hazard, natural hazard mitigation plan and the community wildfire protection plan. Again, two different signatures, but truly the same document, same content. Oversight on my part, the last time I was before you, making sure that, that you had access to that document and were familiar with what was was in that document and the content of that plan. Happy to stand for any questions. Uh, and again, seeking the, the authorization for the Chair's signature on both of those documents.
Questions here?
For Jerry.
Commissioner Haddock?
Nope, I was just going to make the motion.
Oh, that's fine. Make them.
Actually read through some of them.
We can make a motion and still have conversation. It's best sometimes. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the adoption of the 2024 Pennies County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution.
Second.
Moved by Haddock, second by Dur for approval. And let's, and let's have some discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah. So, yeah, I went back. I mean, yeah, you sent us the link and I went back and read it. And I happened to run into you. But anyway, the, uh, yeah, the plan and the digital thing, instead of a, you know, roll up of a PDF and the old school way of doing that, that, uh, that, that plan and the way that it's tailored and you can go on the web and find it, is the best plan that I've read. And so I think it's fabulous. So thanks for the work that everybody put into it. It's great. The, as I read the plan, one of the interesting things that came to me, when you get down to the risk management aspect of it, is to the concerns of the citizens when you do those surveys about what their concerns were. And if you went back and looked at those citizens' comments and you looked at how that was graphed out, uh, a lot of the major concerns related to weather. So, interesting.
Yeah. Weather risks or hazardous weather is always, um, and, and the reason that tends to play out that way, uh, is, is probability. So there are certainly, uh, human caused incidents and adversarial threats that have very, very high consequences. Fortunately, uh, the, the frequency of those events in our community, the probability, uh, is, is lower, uh, than, than the natural hazards. The, the blizzards, the hail, the, the wildfire, the floods. Um, it, it can be tough to balance because both of those types of threats can have catastrophic consequence.
Yeah.
All right. I'll just comment on that. I remember when we made the change to have you take over the department. And I think it wasn't even less than a year, Atlas hit. But the, um, the way that you guys handled it was superb. I mean, everybody, nobody felt uncomfortable about it at all. So, um, like Jerry said, a natural catastrophe or whatever, imagining what can happen. I had some conversations with your fellows in your office about the imagination process of, of how you guys think, how things that could happen or may happen that most of us take for granted every day and every night when we go to bed. So we appreciate all the hard work. And if Jerry said your plans put together right, man, you, you got some big kudos. Because, so I appreciate that. So, thank you. Commissioner Ross.
Chair, my only, uh, what's your position on the elimination of FEMA if that should happen? How's that going to affect us?
So, uh, not the first time I've been approached by that. And I don't know that I have a crystal ball or a, a good answer for you. I will say that, that the nature of our work, and it alludes to what, what Chairman Wefenbach just mentioned, we make, uh, I call them sometimes 50%, 60% decisions. We have to make very consequential decisions without the full picture, without all the information. Because in a disaster scenario, variables are moving too quickly to have all of the information before you make a decision. Uh, that's a really weird place to be in. So the nature of our business is to manage the unpredictable, manage an incredibly dynamic set of circumstances. And I think that, that accurately describes what we're looking at, uh, from a federal and a state standpoint. Right now, it's incredibly dynamic. I don't know, uh, what the follow-on effects are going to be. I can tell you that, that real world impact to our operation, and I shared this with Commissioner Dur, uh, in the last 11 months, uh, our grant funding, that's a federal pass-through through the state to our office, has decreased by 53%. So we've lost over half of our state funding through the, through the federal grant. Um, that's real. That's here. That's now. That's, that's happening. Uh, what's to come, I don't know. Uh, the challenge is, a lot of the work that we do currently supports federal and state processes for disaster recovery. Uh, so the uncertainty is how those processes are managed in the future. When our community is impacted by disaster, we're still going to have consequence. When our community is impacted by disaster, we're still going to have recovery. The uncertainty is how are those processes managed? Uh, our office is still going to have to do the work that we do. The question is, who are we doing the work for? Or what, what, what agencies and what processes are we working through? We still have to do what we do to, to carry our community, uh, through disaster. So that doesn't change. Almost everything else right now is, uh, the, the example that I use, a lot of what I do is, is visualization. Uh, and so the, the visualization that I use for people is the, the tablecloth has been yanked and all of the china and crystal and everything is about a foot in the air. And we just don't know how it's going to land. Uh, but the nature of our work is to manage the unpredictable and manage the dynamic. Uh, and we've got, uh, good people and good history. And, and with your support, the support of the councils, the support of the community, we'll, we'll come out the other side okay. I just don't know what that looks like.
So if grant funding went down 50%, uh, how's that, how's that impact you? Or your department or your?
Uh, so, um, uh, Alexa, uh, who's been with this office longer than I have, uh, is, is, um, moving on to another position. So I'm losing a very, very long-term employee. Luckily, I've got, uh, two really good employees, uh, in the office right now, in, in Adam and Emily. Um, and I shared this again with Commissioner Dur, Dur at the home show at our booth. Uh, currently, um, we are, so our office is going to be down a person. Uh, I can't in good conscience replace that position until I know what things look like. So, uh, we will operate a position down, um, uh, for the foreseeable future until, uh, again, with that visualization, until everything comes back down on the table. And I know what our workflows look like. I know, uh, what that, 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 until there's a little more certainty, uh, in funding from federal level, from the state level, from the county, from the city, until I know what that looks like, we're going to operate a person down, uh, and, and concentrate on our core mission, uh, and make sure that we're able to support the commission as the commission needs to be supported if our community, uh, would happen to be struck by disaster. So what it means is, is we have less financial resources to do our work. Um, but again, the nature of our business is to do the best we can with the resources we're given.
Just segueing off that comment, what does that translate into a dollar amount?
Uh, roughly $60,000.
Okay.
That 53% loss over the last 11 months is roughly a $60,000 a year.
Mr. Chair. So, so is there any possibility that that, instead of getting cut year after year, that it could increase?
That is absolutely a possibility. Uh, there's a whole lot of reading between the lines. Uh, initially, everybody was, was hoping that, that the federal government's stance was going to be the states and the locals are better positioned. So we will, instead of, uh, some of the early hope was that, that maybe that federal, uh, tax funding money would be reallocated to the states for management. Uh, the more recent, the more recent talk from federal level administration, uh, is that the mitigation, the before a disaster and the, the recovery, the after a disaster, uh, some of the recent talk is that should probably be a state responsibility. Uh, the issue there is, is that is the lion share of the funding. Uh, we're talking, um, tens, if not hundreds of billions of dollars nationally, uh, that, that would be, to, to, to reference your conversation earlier, shifted to the states. Uh, and that's, that's a pretty scary proposition. It could go either way. Uh, but I, I don't know that I would anticipate a windfall of federal funding for emergency management. Uh, that's certainly not what we're planning on.
Thank you, Dustin. Great questions. Um, we got a motion on the floor. Um, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Second item is the community wildfire protection plan. So it's the same plan, same everything, just a different document to sign.
Just as great.
Mr. Ross.
I'll go ahead and move the, approve the adoption of the 2024 Community Wildfire Protection Plan Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Ross Connect, second from Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There are none. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I have like a minute or two of leeway here?
Absolutely.
Jennifer, would you come up?
Absolutely.
Point of privilege.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Introduce yourself, please.
Jennifer Sitzma, Executive Director for Black Hills Council of Local Governments.
All right. So my question ties off, and I know you guys, I believe anyway, did you have a hand in this plan?
We were the contractor for the plan.
Yeah.
And we do that at a subsidized cost because Pennington County is a member of ours.
Right. So anyway, I just wanted to recognize, I have two things. One, to recognize you in your office because you do great work. And I previously worked with Jennifer on other projects. And, uh, yeah, she is phenomenal is not a word to describe how great she is. So, I mean, the work that they do in that office with the staff they have and the support that they give to, uh, local governmental entities and offsets of governmental entities is phenomenal. And then my second part of this, other than to say, you know, good job, would be, um, related to this conversation about the change in government funding. I'm assuming in a lot of the projects that you do, it has a major impact of those trickle-down dollars coming from the state.
Sure. I'll speak specifically to the contracts for mitigation planning. Um, the way that we're able to do this work to the county, um, we apply for a 75% grant to cover, you know, our contract. And then the other 25% is collected in, in kind, which Dustin and his team have been the people putting in the work. So the county essentially pays $0.00. Um, your funds to reimburse you for this contract are sitting with the state. So I don't anticipate any issues with the county getting your dollars essentially from FEMA to reimburse you for the cost of this plan. As we move forward, um, our contracts are written on these plans as there's a status that you currently have with your plan, which is APA, uh, approvable pending adoption. We aren't able to bill for those plans. So we do all of the work upfront. Um, and we've incurred all of those costs to do the work upfront. And then we don't bill till the end. And we really do that, um, as a benefit to our members, to ensure that, I mean, it helps with the auditor's office, you know, that everything's coming in and, and going out about the same time. So you don't, if you're a smaller county, you don't have to float that cost on your own. Um, we can't get APA status on our plans without FEMA. So they're going to need to make some decisions. Is the state willing to give us an APA status and without FEMA's approval? Because that's the delay. That's why you kind of weren't involved. We, we had the plan drafted back in November. Then it goes to the state for 45-day review and then FEMA for 40, 50. And then it comes back as APA, which is where you guys are. So for us, we, we currently have about $100,000 that we had projected in revenues for this year. And our, our total budget in the years, um, just under $500,000. So one-fifth of our revenues because we have plans, Lawrence, Butte, Fall River, and you guys, that we had anticipated being able to invoice this year. Um, if we can't get APA status, it leaves us in a situation of, do we bill our members for the work that we've done and ask you to pay us, not knowing if you can get reimbursed? Again, Pennington County is not in that group, but those ones that are later, that's going to impact our office. So it's kind of an order of operations thing. Um, again, our state has all of these dollars, but we, we keep these on a continual five-year, um, basis. So we've already submitted applications for other plans that are about to expire. And I guess for the public, or for you, if you don't know, having the plan allows you to be eligible for the state and local assistance dollars, which is, I think, 50% most of the time of the emergency manager's position. So having the plan allows you access to those dollars. And if these plans expire because we're not able to, you know, we're not able to get them reimbursed or, or start work on them, um, that could be a little bit of an issue. But I always like to see, you know, the optimism. And if, like Dustin said, if it comes back to the states, there's times we do things in our planning process with these plans that FEMA doesn't have a clear understanding of because they're in region, they're, they're in Denver reviewing plans. So they don't always understand how rural we are, how ag we are, how hardy we are. And they want us to put things in the plans that sometimes from our perspective, from a planning perspective, we don't feel like makes sense for our region. So if it comes back to the state, at least we would be working with people who understand South Dakota and their needs. But, so we are up, up in the air, but that's kind of, that's where we are right now. Um, it's too early in the year for us to know how our budgets will be impacted.
All right.
Commissioner Drews has a question.
So Jennifer, uh, doesn't it seem to make sense that even if FEMA is eliminated, they're going to have to take some of those administrative responsibilities that currently rest with FEMA and transfer those to, whether it's just to Homeland Security or, uh, to other individuals to, to handle? Uh, doesn't appear to me that they can just not cart block, just cut out all of those, uh, functions that have been taking place. I understand, probably won't have the people out in the field. But there's a lot of administrative stuff that I think, uh, will have to be completed somehow or another. And I, I don't see all that being transferred to the state. So.
Yeah, I think, so one of the reasons why the, the council of governments exist is efficiency. Um, and I, I notice inefficiencies throughout the different federal programs when working with them at the federal level. And there's efficiencies that can be realized just because of our knowledge of a lot of these programs. Um, it's because we write these plans, you know, all day, every day, this is what we do. It makes us very efficient at that. And me being able to keep trained staff on hand allows them to just get into the work and do the work and know what needs to be done, know what questions to ask. And so I, I don't think it's a bad thing if some of these responsibilities come back to the states. I think if the, like through all of the other influx in stimulus dollars that came in, we were the, kind of the answer. We really get all these monies and it goes to the district and they're, they're just going to handle it. And I think for the most part, the planning districts across the state just handled it without, without actually bringing on additional staff and sometimes even understaffed. So I think one thing is, um, yes, we're very efficient and most across the state, I think most people would say if they've worked at the planning districts, it's been a good experience. But I think we can't keep operating at the level of staff we have now if they're going to keep pouring on the responsibilities, if we're going to continue to be the answer. Um, again, I'm all about efficiencies. I'm all about, um, if we're going to use public funding, um, you better, you know, you better be very responsible and, and mindful of what that, of what you're doing with those. And I think the efficiency, being able to kick out these plans, I mean, I have one staff essentially that's doing this with a few help from others when needed. And she's doing nine of these plans in our region on a regular basis. So can't, you know, your, your comments, I really, I appreciate those. And, and really those should go back to Kaylee, um, because she's just been a, a superstar doing this work. Um, and I think the county had a good experience working with her as well. So.
Ms. Jennifer, I think, Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with Jennifer and her group on and off over the last six years. And I agree with Commissioner Dur that, uh, you're doing an outstanding job. And it was really a pleasure working with your group and, and the, and all the projects that, uh, you know, some pretty big projects. So just want to thank you for your service.
I appreciate that. And we'll be back in a, a month or two with our annual report. So you get to see us again and hear what we've been doing.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to echo the comments that Jerry met when we worked with the council of government when I was with the city. And they brought things to the, the city that they didn't even know, weren't even aware of. And I appreciate your optimism on the fact that eliminating some of this bureaucracy is going to hopefully filter down to us here at the state and realize that people like you and your organizations are way more well-equipped to handle it. And when you get all these middle people in the middle, it just, it's just tough. And I'm hoping, you know, we should have an opportunity because Christie is the homeland security. She's the one that eliminated FEMA. So I'm thinking that Commissioner Drew will be down there picketing her to get us some, get that taken care of as soon as he can. So anyway.
And not, again, thank you for your support, uh, and for the motions. Not to put the cart before the horse. We have a few more municipalities. I'll be at Box Elder this evening. Um, Rhapsody later this week and then the following week. Uh, as soon as we get all of our approvals and have this plan fully adopted and fully implemented, I'll come back with some significant recognition for the work that Kaylee and Jennifer, uh, put into this. So I'll come back with some, some, some specific recognition. Thank you.
I know. But great job. Appreciate it.
Did we dispose of that? We did?
Yep.
Okay, so we're moving on.
I like that. Did we dispose of that? I like that. Did we dispose of that?
And we're moving on to item fourteen, Items from Equalization, Twenty Twenty-Five Pennington County Assessment Presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I'll have to pull up a PowerPoint here. Okay. So I'm gonna give a.
What's your name?
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization.
He said, he said his name.
I didn't hear him say it.
I'm gonna give a quick overview, overview of the assessment and tax process. And, uh, then I'm gonna go into a review of, uh, Senate Bill Two Sixteen that was just passed, the Governor's Bill. And, and you've already heard, uh, quite a bit of that. Starting with assessment notice. The, the board knows this. Uh, there might be somebody, uh, from the public that's watching this that could learn something. So we mail assessment notices, uh, on or before March first of every year. An assessment notice is not a tax bill. It provides a property owner notice of the property that's assessed in their name, the market value of that property as of the assessment date, which was the previous November first, and the classification of that property. South Dakota law requires that all property be assessed at market value. And the point of the assessment notice is to tell the property owner what that value is. When we mail out assessment notices, which we've just done, we don't know yet what property taxes will be. In South Dakota, uh, property taxes are decided, uh, throughout the year after the assessment is set. Got a note there that, uh, the Director of Equalization appraises all properties and administers property tax exemptions, and I'll get into a little bit of that on another slide. And we, uh, we've heard a couple of comments of what I wanna say there as well. The tax process. Oh, Cindy, uh, Pennington County Auditor tells me that there's something like two hundred taxing entities in Pennington County. The county's one, uh, the cities, uh, the school districts, fire districts, water districts, ambulance districts, road districts. All of those entities are taxing entities. And they meet during the summer and fall. Uh, their boards will hold public meetings and set their budgets. As part of that budgeting process, they will decide how much revenue they wanna collect from property taxes. The county does this, the school district does it, all of the, even the smaller taxing entities do this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr.
So Shannon, with that said, uh, each entity, and he said there's two hundred. They're restricted to, uh, what, three percent? They can't exceed three percent annually, so that's, that applies to us and all the other, uh, districts.
It does, yeah. So when I say they decide how much property tax revenue, uh, they wanna, uh, collect into their budget, it's restricted by state law at how much they can increase from one year to the next.
But they have the opportunity to opt out.
Yes. Uh, the opt-out is the exception to those, uh, restrictions. When, uh, when those taxing entities, when they, when they decide how much property tax revenue they want to collect, uh, that amount will be collected, regardless of what happened with assessed values or what, uh, what will happen. They, they set that amount and it will be collected. When they have decided that, they send a levy request to the county auditor. So all of those two hundred-some taxing entities, they send a request to the county auditor uh, saying, "We want this much revenue from property taxes." The auditor receives all of those and has to calculate a mill levy for each one of them. Mill levy is just simply a mathematical factor that provides the requested revenue from the available tax base. It's just a mathematical formula. Nobody sets the mill levy. The taxing entities decide how much revenue they wanna collect. And the county auditor, uh, from the Director of Equalization knows how much, uh, assessed value or taxable value we have. The mill levy is just that mathematical factor that provides that revenue. And it changes every year. Mill levies change every year because the tax base changes and because those levy requests from all of those taxing entities change every year.
Mr. Chair. So we have a road district, and I don't know that we sit down and request any money. So I'm just assuming the money that goes into our road district is just the, uh, direct relationship to what the assessed value of the property in our road district is. Is that, uh?
You're get, you're getting into the weeds with me a little bit, uh, with road districts. And I'm, I'm speculating here. A better question for the county auditor, I think some road districts uh, collect tax revenue two different ways. The same as, as all property tax, and some of them are, are based on, uh, almost, uh, a special assessment process. But the road district board either sets that special assessment or the amount of money they wanna receive and sends that request to the county auditor. They, there's still a decision by the board of that road district. It isn't just, uh, wait and see what shows up next year. The board decides how much they wanna collect. So once all that's done, the, the county auditor has taken, uh, those levy requests, calculated the mill levies. Uh, now the auditor can create a property tax bill for a specific property. The bill is mailed in time to pay by January first, so the last few days of the year, taxes are paid the year following the assessment. The tax bill actually tells you how much property taxes you owe based on the previous year's assessment. And the tax bill will include a breakdown of your property taxes, showing where all of the money goes to every tax district applicable to that specific property. Exemptions. So South Dakota law allows exemptions from property taxes for very specific property ownerships and uses. Churches, charities, benevolent organizations, hospitals, schools, ag buildings, elderly and disabled property owners, disabled veterans, those are all various exemptions. The churches, charities, benevolent organizations and such, those exemptions, the county commissioners approve or deny applications for exemptions. But the application and the administration of them come through the Director of Equalization office. The last two boxes, the lower two boxes on this slide, there was a little bit of discussion earlier. There is no such thing as a tax exemption. Those taxing entities have met and they've decided how much revenue they wanna collect from property taxes. And that amount will be collected. When a property is exempt from property taxes, that's a tax shift to all of the other property owners. Those taxing entities are not shorted money when somebody's granted an exemption. They will collect the money they requested. When there's an exemption, everybody else pays more to make up for it. This is an overview of Pennington County's assessment. What happened, uh, just this last year? So we mailed out assessment notices here just recently. We're working through the appeal process. Uh, these are some, uh, round numbers of what happened with assessments in Pennington County. We have approximately fifty-seven thousand parcels in Pennington County with a value of almost twenty-three billion dollars. But about fifty-three thousand parcels are taxable with a value of just over twenty billion dollars. The median change in the residential property assessment from last year to this year was an increase of about two and a half percent. Approximately seventy-four percent of residential properties increased assessed value at ten percent or less from last year to this year. And all of those changes, uh, of the, of the assessed values countywide uh, result in a median level of assessment of about ninety-six percent of market value. So that's how accurate our overall assessment is this year. We're about ninety-six percent market value. Pennington County tends to run ninety-six to ninety-eight percent every year. This median level of assessment is the number that is used to decide our taxable factor. When you look at your tax bill, you see taxable value, and that is less than assessed value. The median level of assessment is what sets that taxable factor. If our median level of assessment drops, uh, down closer to eighty-five percent, that taxable factor just goes up the same amount to make up for it. That is, uh, the first part, uh, the first point on the agenda, and I'll get into Senate Bill Two Sixteen, unless there were questions on, any other questions on the first part. Okay, so Senate Bill Two Sixteen. It's called, it's called the Governor's Bill. What happened is, is the governor, uh, created a, a committee to come up with a bill that essentially pulled ideas from some other bills that were in the legislature. And of all the different property tax bills, this is the one that, uh, that passed this year. And I'm gonna hit on the key points and tell you what might happen with each. And you, you've heard some of this. Garth did a excellent job with this. The first point is, is there's a three percent cap on the annual increase due to reappraisal of the total owner occupied valuation of the county. And I think Garth did mention that this does not restrict the change of a specific property. Any individual property assessment can increase or decrease by any amount. This is a cap on the total owner occupied valuation of the county. And this will sunset in five years. Uh, the idea, uh, of this is, is we've got five years to come up with maybe a better, more permanent plan. When there is a cap on assessments, there is a shift in taxes. If our real estate market increases more than three percent. If our real estate market doesn't increase more than three percent in the next few years, then this means nothing. But if our real estate market increases five or six percent, there is a suppression of assessed values on owner occupied, and that just shifts that tax burden to the other property classifications, non-owner occupied and ag. There is a three percent cap on the increase of a tax district's levy request due to new growth. Any of the taxing entities, the county included, can increase their budgets, the property tax portion of their budget by three percent or the Consumer Price Index, whichever's less. And they can increase their property tax portion of their budget by the amount of tax revenue coming from new growth or new property added to the tax roll. Whatever that amount was. Uh, this bill now caps that change in that budget to three percent as well. Pennington County's growth is, I think we've been running three and a half percent every year, something like that. So it will restrict how much the county can increase, uh, their budget due to growth. And this sunsets after five years as well. Senate Bill Two Sixteen also limits the definition of new growth to a change in property value of forty percent or more. So new growth, the simplest explanation is, is that brand-new house that's built is now paying taxes that wasn't last year because it didn't exist. But it exists this year, and, uh, that new house or the tax revenue that house will pay is new growth. New growth is now defined as anything, uh, with a change of value of forty percent or more. So if that new house builds a garage or a shop or a deck or something like that, that was, that in the past, that was new growth. This will limit what's been considered as new growth. So that's another restriction on how all of these taxing entities can increase their, the property tax portion of their budget every year. It will shrink what's been called growth. There was a large part of this bill that expands the qualifications for the elderly and disabled assessment freeze. The elderly and disabled assessment freeze is a, uh, program that allows, uh, a person who is sixty-five years old or older or disabled to have their prop, their owner occupied property frozen at whatever it was when they turned sixty-five. It doesn't do much good if you're sixty-six years old, you're paying taxes on a value that's just last year. But if you're eighty-five years old, you're paying taxes on your house based on what it was assessed at twenty years previously. So there's the advantage. There's qualifications. You have to, you have to, lived in South Dakota, you have to have, uh, income below a certain limit, and your home has to be below a certain value. That income limit was just expanded from fifty-three thousand up to sixty-five thousand. And the maximum home value went from three hundred fifty-six thousand to five hundred thousand. And both of those qualifications are set in statute to change by an inflation factor every year. So there'll be a different number the following year and on, on into the future. This is a.
On that example that you gave, that homeowner would also have to have lived in that house correctly? For the eighty-five-year-old?
It has to be owner occupied property, so they have to be living in the house.
And they had, in order for it to go back to, with their age sixty-five?
Yeah. Had to have been living in the house when they turned sixty-five, yes. Yep. Or, or back to whenever they acquired the house. So, yes.
So Shannon, how does it work for someone who's dis- disabled?
Same thing, it's.
But if they're not sixty-five, it doesn't matter?
Elderly or disabled. Most of the people that apply and qualify for this are, uh, qualifying on age. But it, it's elderly or disabled.
Yeah, if you have someone who's fifty-one, who's disabled, does that affect him at all? I mean, what would roll back his property tax to what age? I mean, if he's fifty-one, he's not sixty-five.
When they became disabled. When, when they became disabled, so if he's, when he be, he became disabled at fifty-one, then it goes back to that. If you're sixty-five or older, it's assessed at when you turn sixty-five.
Mr. Chair. You know, when you sit there and look at the, your maximum income, uh, fifty-three, four, fifty-nine, sixty-five thousand, you have to show a lot of documentation, uh, according to that, uh, form. To prove that, uh, I mean, your tax returns, uh, there's a lot of documents there. It's not just, you write down sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
That form is very detailed, and, uh, there's a lot of sources of income, you know, so you might have an annuity. Well, that.
Yes.
Wanna know all that information, so it's not just writing down sixty-five thousand.
So the, the application goes to the treasurer's office, and the treasurer's office, uh, will help people with it. But the, the treasurer, uh, checks that qualification, and it is all sources of income. Uh, and yes, there.
Wanted to clarify that.
There's a lot of documentation there. This, this is a big expansion of this. Income limit from fifty-three up to sixty-five thousand and a home, uh, up to five hundred thousand. Right now, we have just over five hundred properties that qualify for this. And there's almost fifty-four million dollars of property that is exempted, re-shifted. Uh, that, that's the amount that is, is shifted to the other, the assessed value that shifted to the other taxpayers. I expect with, uh, this change in this bill, uh, that that five hundred number will get significantly larger. We'll, we'll see a lot more people that'll qualify.
Shannon, Commissioner Hancock has.
So if you're disabled, is it always just a hundred percent that gets, uh, the break, or is it? It's 'cause a hundred percent pays zero of property taxes, or what do they pay? If they're one hundred percent disabled?
I, I don't know what the qualification is for, what defines disabled. Question for the treasurer's office, because the application goes there. But when a. But when a disabled person applies and the treasurer's office says they qualify, then their owner occupied home is assessed at whatever it was assessed at when they became disabled. So it's the same thing as an elderly person. It they're still pay property taxes, but it's at a value of a date in the past.
But there isn't a there isn't a certain amount of years that that had to happen? Because I thought someone had said you could go back four years for that. But if if it didn't happen before then, you could still do that if you can prove that you were one hundred percent or whatever disabled or a veteran? Could you get back to us on that to verify?
You're confusing several different tax reduction programs.
Okay, so tell me about the disabled programs that you know of.
There is there's this one. But as I said, most people that qualify this are elderly, but there are some that are disabled. There is a disabled veteran, which is permanent and total disabled.
Yep.
That takes two hundred fifty thousand dollars off or will next next year, two hundred fifty thousand dollars off the assessment. There is a paraplegic veteran. And I can't remember what the exemption is for that. There is also a paraplegic exemption, not veteran.
Right, and disabled, is there disabled in there without being veteran that you can get? Or is it just still take?
Don't think so, other than this.
Okay, that's why I was kind of so people understood the difference of of what we're talking about.
Shannon, if you could clarify, when you talk about fifty-three point seven million dollars exempted or shifted, is that the amount that's shifted or is that the total amount of their assessments? Because if they if they if they roll back their property tax to age sixty-five, that doesn't mean they're not paying property tax. That just means they're paying at a lower value.
That's right. And and that fifty-three million is the difference between what it would be and what it is for them under that program.
That's what I was thinking, but I wanted.
Yep, they this does not exempt a property from taxes. It just pays taxes based on an assessment in the past. And that's why I say as you get older, that past is further away and it's a bigger advantage.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Ross.
You know, I I some of the problems with the property taxes to me was directly caused by COVID. I just saw people out there panic buying. And this is what's happening right now. If you if you could show us a graph of the assessed valuation in two thousand twenty of residential owner occupied properties and and show what happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. When you sit there and looked at our historic growth, it went up about three to two percent a year. And then when COVID hit, you could see that graph, it was jumping ten percent, fifteen percent. And that's the problem. We really need to go back to two thousand twenty and go up three percent a year to really get an idea what our assessed valuation of owner occupied properties should be. Senate Bill two sixteen might help, but I think the governor's recommendation that we come out yesterday, I think that'll I think that'll probably certainly help Senate Bill two sixteen.
You you started your comments with property tax. Rising the rising assessments through COVID didn't change property taxes. The taxing entities set the taxes they want to collect. We've seen mill levies drop because assessed values have gone up so much. But property taxes have gone up because all of the taxing entities keep raising their budgets. If if we saw a crash in the real estate market, then assessed values would go down. But property taxes are still going to be collected at the same amount.
Well, if I understand it, you can a budget can't go up more than three percent, so.
But it's the amount they collect, absolutely. So if if the market crashed and our assessments went down, those taxing entities can still increase their budget within those limits or keep it the same at least regardless of what assessed values did.
I I I'm not going to here to argue with you about that. But one of the problems that I see when we get arguments that are pressed to us or or is that, say, you have three valued properties, one, two, three, and all three of these properties, even though they're quite similar, may have different values. The job of equalization is to equalize that, correct?
And equal is everything at market value?
Right, so after how many years does it take to equalize those values? So we're all starting on the same spot? Because when you say that assessment values don't affect taxes, that's mainly true, but not true. If you have this property, this property and this property that aren't equalized for some reason. What I see, people come to me with an argument and go, dude, my property tax, my my assessment went up twelve percent. Okay, because his property was assessed below these other two properties. So now that his property gets increased, twelve percent to equalize it, at what point do we all start from ground zero? Well, we're all equalized because we got, like you said, mentioned four hundred appeals. So at what point do we are we all starting on the same, you know? So when we make the comment that says, yep, the budget doesn't affect taxes, we're kind of not really being disingenuous, but we're not being honest. Because if the properties all had different values, it does affect those people that have been paying X. And all of a sudden, now their property increases. Like I have several properties and I watch them go from, I mean, some of them jumped ten, fifteen, twenty percent. I'm like, if we were equalizing properties, that shouldn't happen if that property has not had nothing done to it. Am I correct?
No, because our real estate market will change regardless of whether anything is done to the property. The real estate market changes.
If you have three similar properties, it would all change similarly in in accordance to basic median change. But we're getting increases that are way above and way below because at some point, these properties never started on ground zero. They're they're all over the board. And that's what I'm saying. How many years does it take to finally equalize properties where we're all starting from ground zero? Or maybe that's just not realistic in my mind, it seems.
Every year, every year is a new assessment year.
Right, so when we tell people that their assessments don't affect their property taxes, we're not being genuine because the fact of the matter is if for some reason along the line, their properties weren't equalized, because that's what the equalizations office job is to do, is to go through the whole system and make sure we all start at the same spot. Well, since I've been dealing with taxes and I've lived here since nineteen seventy, in the last ten or fifteen years, I've seen drastic changes all over the board with my properties. And it's like, I don't know how that can be. Somewhere along the line, something wasn't equalized. So if you, right, so if you raise my assessment, my taxes are going up.
Yes, on an individual basis, what you're talking about, specific property, that's actually true.
That's the that's the biggest appeals we get is people that come in and appeal to us and go, wow, I've been paying this, now I'm paying this. And and because my property value went up fifteen percent. And how can that consistently happen if our job is to equalize those taxes and make sure everybody starts on the same field?
Because that what you're describing there is a constant struggle for the office to make sure that we have accurate valuations. It that we never will get to a point where, oh, it's perfect.
We ever get to the point where we don't have four hundred appeals?
Yeah.
I mean, what I call Minnehaha County and maybe the guy gave me the wrong information. He's he's talking under, you know, under hundred, under fifty, like twenty of them? Is what the number they gave me of appeals they've had?
That's hard to imagine.
That's kind of what I thought in comparison to what I'm comparing it to. But at some point, I can't imagine having so many fluctuations that are that big. I mean, there are a lot of them are way and one of the arguments we see that I get on my email every day or phone calls every day, some of them are drastic. I mean, almost like to the point of how could this happen, I guess? Commissioner Hancock.
So I'm I'm agreeing. Why I'm saying that is because if it's, okay, so our budgets affect how much we have to collect, but the assessments are just by equalization. So bottom line is if you're assessing somebody thirty, forty percent higher or raising them thirty, forty percent, why does that affect? Isn't the budget that affects it and not the percentages? Why are you equalizing to a certain extent that is actually pretty high to me on the percentages? Just to, as Ron says, get to that bottom line so everybody's equalized? So if it's not affected by assessments and it's affected by budgets, then why are assessments going up so much in a certain areas to where even to me, over the years, just been watching, those percentages were like, I'm going to say it, outlandish to areas where, to me, even looking at different properties, it it doesn't look equalized.
So we have fifty-seven thousand tax parcels in the county.
Yes, sir.
And I've got an appraisal staff of fifteen people. We have to identify neighborhoods. We're going to reappraise every year because we can't look at fifty-seven thousand properties every year. We're prioritizing the work we do in the areas where we think there is more change going on. Properties change. They remodel, they add on, they burn down, they depreciate. It is a constant struggle to make sure we've got the right data on every property and account for the changes in the real estate market that happen. And the real estate market impacts different neighborhoods differently and different property types differently. We are constantly struggling to make sure we've got all properties at an equal level of assessment. And that that process just requires that sometimes we can't come across a property that we have to increase or decrease more than the average for some reason.
But you're even going into old neighborhoods and doing those percentages that are pretty high. And even if you haven't been in there for five years, I get it to a certain extent. But people are run on budgets. So when you're doing some of these percentages, that's what I believe is taxing them out of their homes to a certain extent. Shannon, it's not only taxing, and let's be fair, it's insurance. They're both going up. But there there's a certain area that even if you're, I remember North North Rapid, Lemon Street, that area, a lady was going up five hundred dollars. I mean, that doesn't seem like much and some of the people had commented, that's not much. You should see mine. That's not not what I'm saying. Bottom line is, how much is the percentage from when you were paying before? And why does that assessment on someone go up forty percent, thirty percent, twenty percent? I guess because you haven't been in there five years, as what I was told before, that's fine to a certain extent. But even in this isn't even new growth areas, this is this is old neighborhoods. So that's why I think you're it's putting people over the edge to the point where, okay, one it isn't just because one person moved in the neighborhood and then fixed up their house. It's because you haven't been there for a while. But I don't know, I just I never, and I was telling Ron, I never really got that part of it if it's about the budgets. If it's about keeping our budgets down, I'm always in favor of that. But raising and going into people's neighborhoods and changing them to those percentages, that's what needs to change. That's what's freaking everybody out. It's not just that that we have to collect that much money as budgets and reduce our budgets. We should do that anyway. But because those percentages are getting and have gotten crazy to to where people are just like, we're not getting it. That's that's the most questions I hear.
Well, the state law requires that we assess property at market value. There is nothing in state law and including Senate Bill two sixteen that will restrict how much an individual property assessment can change from one year to next. The law just says at market value.
So market value is determined by your group and not by the basically state or anybody else? Your group goes in, assesses people on market value, changes those percentages that are in an area that sometimes to me is just outlandish. I'm not saying you guys do a bad job, just some areas that you just sit there and go, there's no way. And some of those assessments, you're going, there's no way. Because something sells in a neighborhood that might be from a two hundred thousand, two thirty neighborhood and might go up and one house sells for four hundred, we're equalizing the rest of them at four hundred because that's what they can sell it for. And that's not from you guys, that's from people that are selling their homes or or in the neighborhood where the, remember, we've heard it, where they sold the homes. And all of a sudden, we're saying, holy cow, this whole neighborhood should be that much. To me, that's crazy just because you had one market value or whatever at four hundred. So we have to go in the neighborhood and reassess and maybe the rest of them, we missed we missed something. Maybe we could find some other four hundred thousand houses. It's not it's not quite how you guys do it, I already know.
We don't we don't look at just one sale. That one sale doesn't create a market. We look at the entire market. So what you said is true, except there has to be a lot more sales that are indicating that.
But I haven't seen them when we're doing those pictures up on the on the dais and they're bringing things in. It's not just one sale. They're they're taking that sale from two blocks away, three blocks away.
Yeah.
I I don't see that's the same depending on the neighborhood, what the houses in that neighborhood are selling for, just because you do that house. That's why I said. And then and then what happened is because they did that market sale, then the next year or a couple of years later, they they see, well, that one sold for four hundred. They're using those examples and then starting to look in the other neighborhoods where they could find it so they could look like it it's raising the others. Just just from watching, Shannon, that's my perspective and I've been here for a while. And I and I guess I just I I never really got that part. And I still really don't get it on market value on those kind of percentages. Maybe it's just me.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make another comment because we talk about the law. The law's not changed, right?
Senate Bill two sixteen was passed.
No, but I mean, the law on market value has not changed.
That's right.
So it's been that way forever.
Yes.
But we've never achieved any equalization. If we get these kind of increases, we've never achieved equal equalization. So we got to look at it, our process somehow to say, why is that? If it's because we have a shortage of people, we can't get to them or whatever the case may be. Because if we hadn't ever achieved what the law said, market value, that we wouldn't have these big giant fluctuations. Am I right?
Our median level of assessment is ninety-six percent of market value.
That's an overall general philosophy. I'm talking about the four hundred people that come to us. Because you're you're repeating the fact that I think we all understand the fact that what you're challenged to do and the challenge is to assess at market value. If that's the case, year after year after year, those properties that never hit market value never met the law, correct? That's why we're making these huge increases today. That's the only thing I can surmise. So I guess in the end, what we need is data, information that says, you know, what neighborhoods are we going into? How does this look? I mean, how does how does the history of this neighborhood look? And is that data available? I mean, do you guys track that?
Yes.
Okay, and then who overlooks when we make these increases in these neighborhoods? As you said, we go through a neighborhood and we make these adjustments. Are they overviewed by another appraiser? Or is that appraiser that did that, is that the final word from that appraiser? You don't have a system that overlooks those or anything or?
What you're talking about is a process that our office does every year. At the end of the year, when we've collect collected all of the sales information, we look at the statistics for all of the neighborhoods, over a hundred neighborhoods we've identified in Pennington County. And we decide which one of those we're going to reappraise next year. But we look at the median level of assessment and the coefficient of dispersion. Those are statistical measures of the accuracy of our assessment in each of those neighborhoods. And we decide if we need to increase or decrease assessments in those neighborhoods at a large staff meeting.
So how do we so how do we identify those outliers that we're getting for assessments of big increases? And is there a way to identify those in your process?
Those are.
Obviously outliers, right? I mean, if they're that if we're making increases, if we're all if we're meeting the state law and they're all on ground zero and then we go through that area and find out that they're not, do we have a report or something that reports out these prints out these outliers and said, hey, let's address these now before, I mean, or do we just send it out to the the person and say, here you go? Your taxes just went up fifteen, twenty, thirty percent?
The the process for setting assessments is not a flat change.
I agree.
Per year, it's not a five percent increase across the board. We create a valuation model for various market areas across the county. And we calibrate that model every year with new sale information. So different property types in different locations will change assessed value different amounts every year.
Right, but I'm saying if everything starts at ground zero, if everybody starts at the same starting line.
We don't do that.
Everybody runs at the same speed, they should all finish at the same.
No, you're talking about a flat adjustment.
No, I'm not.
Every year is a new year. So we don't start at last year's assessment. So we don't start at last year's assessment. When we start next year, it, we still have all of the data in the computer and we know what last year's assessment was. But imagine if we just wiped that out and started the appraisal process all over again, brand new for this year. So we don't start at last year and add to it.
That doesn't make any sense to me. If you're trying, if the job is to equalize, the job would be to get everybody on the same page value-wise. And if you're, and if you have everybody, if you've met the state law, which you're saying in, is the requirement, then they should all be equalized. So if there's nothing done to the property in the neighborhood or whatever increases by X amount of percent, but all of a sudden you get an outlier that goes up twenty, thirty percent, you got a problem. Somebody didn't do their job equalizing that property. Because I don't equalize the properties. Make sense?
Equal is all property at market value, it's not the same change from year to year.
If everything was the same, why would one property change more than another? If everything's the same, and like Commissioner Roskinex said, COVID changed our home environment. Why, but nobody did anything to their house. What everybody that started here would generally get somewhat of the same, in the neighborhoods, somewhat of the same increase in property if nobody did anything. But they weren't, they're getting big spikes. Why did, what causes these big spikes is what I'm trying to identify.
Every property's different. There is no, no two properties that are exactly the same. There's different locations, different property types, different ages, and then you throw into that the changes that properties make.
I, I see where we're going, and we're gonna, it's gonna be, need a longer discussion because I'm not communicating my point to you very well, so I will yield to-
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
So Shannon, in my neighborhood, if, if my neighborhood is a part of a community of, say, twenty-five properties, and there's my property and three others that are similar in nature, and those other three properties all sell for about a hundred thousand dollars more than what the current real estate market shows at to be the value from last year, not only are the, the assessment gonna go up for those three, but since mine's similar to it, my house is gonna end up going up also.
Yep.
Probably. I, I'd like to say we look at more than three sales even.
I understand that.
But your example is right. Yes, we do, we don't assess at sale price, but those sales are an indication of what the market did, and a change in assessment will affect all of the properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Shannon, so you're saying there's fifty-seven thousand parcels, four thousand or seven percent are not taxable? How hard would it be to put a, on a pie chart, break that down to how many of those fifty-three, fifty, or fifty-seven thousand parcels? We got the three categories. So one would be egg, how much of that's egg? How one, how much of that's other? And how much of that is owner occupied? So we could really sit there and look at the three different categories. Because you said, if one increases, the other one decreases. I'd like to be able to sit there and look at that so that I could really see what percentage of that fifty-seven or fifty-three thousand is egg and what percent's other.
Give me some time-
Who's carrying the tax burden?
Give me some time to get through the appeal process and we can create that. There was a, a map that was hanging in the hallway here that depicted, at least in the Rapid City area, the exempt properties where you could see the various types. A, a pie chart is something we could do.
I think that'd be pretty simple, but I think it would help everybody kinda see where, you know, the three categories and, and who's carrying the burden.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just, I think that we're heading down that road, Ron. I think with some of the, the conversations that I've had with Commissioner Dur that we're, we're heading down that road across the county lines, across the county to, to look at metrics and data and information that you can actually make good judgment calls from, and we'll be discussing that at some point, so. I, I don't wanna belabor it anymore, we'll, we'll have a conversation, so.
Mr. Chairman.
But Commissioner Dur had a-
Shannon, so the Department of Revenue, and again, I, I, I believe everybody knows this, and it's, yeah, we're getting a lot of mandates from the state, and then obviously, you know, we try to follow those mandates internally the best we can, but these are Department of Revenue mandates on market and et cetera, correct?
I don't understand the question.
So the question would be, Department of Revenue, I'll, I'll cut to the chase. So you go out and your staff does the, you know, you do the assessments and stuff, you get that all done, you send out, you know, you have the notices go out. Department of Revenue comes in at some point in time, and I don't know exactly when, but Department of Revenue comes in and they do an audit of your office.
Yes.
Okay, could you explain that?
So the, the measure of the accuracy of an assessment is a sale ratio study. The assessed value of a property divided by sale price gives us a ratio. And when we do that ratio times all of the sales and calculate a median ratio, that's that ninety-six percent. There, the state law says that we have to be assessed at market value. One law says at full market value, another law says at least eighty-five percent. And then there is a, another statute that sets up the coefficient of dispersion, which is how tight that, all of those sale ratios are around that median. They're essentially statistical measures that determine how accurate our assessment is. The Department of Revenue comes in and audits our sales information and sends a report to the county commission that essentially says whether we've met the statutory requirements. And in some years, the Department of Revenue also does a comprehensive audit of the office practices in the office. And the county commission gets the results of that. Ultimately, all of that audit leads towards that taxable factor that we'll get here soon. So the Department of Revenue just finished the audit, we're, we're waiting for that taxable factor to come.
All right. There's a taxable factor, Jerry. Or Shannon, the taxable factor is that, for us, it's eighty-five percent, correct? I mean, of the, I mean, because it could be different for somebody who is at, already at eighty-five percent.
If, if the county's level of assessment's eighty-five percent, then taxable factor's one hundred.
Right.
Ours is about eighty-seven, eighty, eighty-eight percent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Shannon, when you say a sale-
Oh, good.
You might explain to the commission what a good sale is and what a bad sale is.
Okay.
Because not every sale can be used in your database.
Yeah.
And there, I, there used to be ten criteria that that sale had to meet before it was considered something that could be put in the database to determine assessed valuations.
So Pangton County has around two thousand sales every year that are considered good sales. And, and we call those good sales. They're, they're defined as an open market transaction that meets those ten criteria. It's a property that was advertised on the open market, that there was no, nothing influencing the sale, a transfer of ownership from one business entity to the same business entity of same ownership, a transfer of ownership due to a divorce or something like that, transfer of ownership where there's no money that changes hands. Those are all transfers of ownership, sales, but not really a good indication of market value. So the Department of Revenue looks at all of those ownership transfers. And that's part of the audit, to make sure we're using only sales that represent the market and not those others.
So, you know, what gets me is if you go back to COVID, one of the criteria was that neither the buyer or seller can be under undue duress. And when people were paying a hundred thousand more than a property's listed, that was duress. That was panic buying. And this is one of the problems, that what, what we're looking at today is, to me, a false market, that just, we just can't delete it, we just have to live with it, it's not gonna go away. And I think that Amber Hughes, she was trying to say, let's go back to two thousand twenty when we, before COVID, where we kinda knew where things were at because we had it historically just two or three percent a year. Unfortunately, you know, we can't do that, but to me, that, that's where a lot of the problem is.
I think I cut Commissioner Dur off earlier, and I apologize.
No, I just had a comment, it goes back to the audit. And so that's one thing, is we were, you know, getting, you know, a lot of the emails and phone calls. We are, you know, in the equalization offices, catching some heat along, you know, some, with the other offices, you know, getting back to another discussion about the work week, et cetera. And so I'd asked our commission office, you know, where's the audit from the Department of Revenue? And this would be a question for the other two commissioners that have been here, if you, or three, excuse me. Have you guys been presented the audit from Department of Revenue over the equalization office?
I don't.
Because our commission office says they've never seen it, which would mean, that would indicate to me that you guys have likely not seen it.
I don't recall seeing it.
Good.
And, and I don't know what it looks like. I, I just know that the commission gets the result of it, but I've never actually seen what the commission office gets, so I, I couldn't tell you what to look for.
All right. I do know what to look for because I've, you know, past life, not long ago, got those audits and they were shared with the board, and I guess that's kind of a point we'll talk about later, is there's a lot of information coming in that's not making it to the commission.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I, I know, and I don't wanna digress because I know we're moving forward, so from this point in today, we're, we're gonna be moving forward on getting better information and better metrics and better reporting and all this stuff, so we're gonna put the energy into a lot of that. But we are facing the appeals, and so this is a good exercise, and I appreciate the time that you spent with us and not by any means beating you up, but we have to understand when, when the, we have, you know, we got sworn in today and there's obviously, you know, some, some guidelines that we need to meet. So spending a lot of time reading a lot of stuff on assessments and that type of stuff, I'm hoping that we can get uniform with the other counties at some point to make that known to you now, that we'd like to be on that same roll with, with the other counties. But, and that being said, there's no motion required.
Are we gonna go forward with the breakdown on the different property types?
I'll do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Let's get through the, the appeal process, so I got some time to do that, and I'll, I'll come back.
I think that would help us, I appreciate that.
You know, you put it on the agenda if you want, but I'll, I'll prepare something and send it as an email.
Thank you for today, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon, I think we can move on to item-
Thank you.
Appreciate your help today.
Fifteen items from fire administration authorized to purchase a Ford F-250 pickup truck. And Ms. Amy is gonna present.
Amy.
Thank you.
Val. Val Newman, Fire Administration.
Amy, wow. Hey for a fool. Yeah, hey for a fool, I got, thank you. You helped, you build on, Iran, build on Iran there.
All good. So we're coming before you today to ask for your support to move forward to purchase the replacement vehicle for the fire administration office and use our general fund reserve accumulations for that purchase. We've had this in our long-term plan for three years. The first year, we didn't get it because of the Hawk Draw fire, we used funds for that. Last year, we didn't find a vehicle to, to purchase for replacement. And then I worked with Connie from Highway, she was great, she helped me locate a vehicle off of the state bid and showed me the process for that. So Connie has been a great assistance for me through this process. And so we found a vehicle that would work for replacement from Lamb Motors off of the state bid, and I have included that information in here for contract number one, seven, six, one, nine. I did speak to Lamb Motors last week to request the official quote that they would honor the state contract bid amount, and he, like everybody else, has brought up the amount for the tariffs that are being put in place today. But he did tell me that, I told him that we weren't having the meeting till today and we could not spend the funds from our reserve accumulation without approval from the commission. So I couldn't give him a yes or a no, but we needed the official quote to move forward for the request, and he did say he would still honor the state bid amount regardless of what the tariffs do today, knowing that I was bringing it forward to ask for permission today. We are also along in that amount, asking for permission to include in that to the additional forty thousand for the required tools, communication equipment, and logistical support items for the pickup. I did include a sheet in the back quote from Northern Tools. Connie and Joe were helpful in helping us know who to ask for that quote for the topper. There's a specific topper that we would need with a slide-out for the equipment and tools for that. But I did speak to the Blackhawk chief yesterday and assistant chief yesterday. You'll have to excuse me, I'm trying, fighting a little bit of a cold here. I spoke to them yesterday, and they told me that if we worked with Sontec, that they would be willing to give us a bundled quote that would include the lights as well. And so they contacted them yesterday, and I'm still working on getting those numbers for quotes, we might be able to get that a little bit cheaper price than what I included in here from Northern. So we're working on that as well. But we need permission from you to go ahead and move forward so that we can purchase the vehicle. I do have with me today our fire service board chair. If you have any questions about the previous vehicle and the purchasing of that. And then I also have with us Chief, Assistant Chief Hartman, he is also on our budget committee, and he has been working with Administrator Harvey on trying to find the right vehicle for replacement and the reasoning behind why we really wanna move forward. And like I said, it's been on our long-term plan for three years, and we finally found a vehicle that we can do this with. So if you have any questions for either of them, they're here, and I do have the speaker request forms for them, too.
Thank you, Ms. Val. Do we have any questions from?
No, just, just a comment.
Good.
I've been on the fire service for, board for a while. I've also, Jerome has to take me, not has to, I asked him to take me in this vehicle because I can't see at night. And I'll just tell you, it's well-needed to be replaced. We did put it in the budget, we followed the process, and it is an emergency vehicle for a fire administrator, and we already know how much work and how much damage they can do to a vehicle by all the miles they put on it, what they use it for. I think it's well-needed, and I would agree with Val about getting the fire administration office a vehicle that's reliable and something that's gonna be futuristic, even better than the vehicle they have now.
I, I would like to add another rationale for this, is if you've ever been in Administrator Harvey's vehicle, you will know it smells of smoke, and there's a reason for that, is because all of his PPE and equipment are housed, because it is a Tahoe. And moving to the pickup version and doing the topper and the slide-out in the back would allow for him to be able to keep his PPE and equipment in the back of the vehicle. And the carcinogen topic has come up, and it was brought forward to the commission about that last year, too, with the cancer items that are related to that. And Chief Hartman or our chair can speak to that a little bit better than I can, but that is another rationale for the reason for the replacement of the vehicle. The vehicle currently has ninety-eight thousand miles on it, and I was speaking with Brittany, Brittany, excuse me, today from planning and zoning, and we would like to speak with the auditor, perhaps maybe they would be able to utilize the vehicle so wouldn't, it wouldn't just be us getting rid of the Tahoe afterwards either. So it would be cost-saving to the county.
Mr. Roskinex, how's it?
Yeah, you answered some of my questions, Val. Ninety-eight thousand miles, what year is the vehicle and what type of a vehicle is it?
It's a 2016 Tahoe, and then we're wanting to replace it with the pickup version so that we can move the equipment into the back and then use a slide-out. Currently, Blackhawk has the same setup, and then the radios and would be put in on special side cabinets of the topper. And Blackhawk, when I spoke to them yesterday, said they would be willing to help us with the installation of that as well.
The only other question is, I see this is gonna be a short box, is there any, just any reason why not going with the long box opposed to the short box? Is there some rationale there?
Chief Hartman, if he might be able to speak to that. I, I did ask that, that was put as one of the options to go between the two. I don't think there was an actual need for the extra cost to switch between the long box and the short box, because if you add that decking system and the topper on there, he would be able to house all the equipment and PPE that he as the administrator would need, there wouldn't be a need for that extra space. And the cost to add the long box is what I understood when we were doing the research.
Damon Hartman, Assistant Chief at Doteve, and I'm also Deputy State Fire Marshal for this side of the state. Based on- Based on ATF, DCI, and State Fire Marshal's Office, we went with the short box just for maneuverability. And with the slide-out and the topper, we are able to get everything in it that we need outside of evidence collection stuff that I need to carry. Makes it tight, but it's something that he doesn't need to carry. So a short box works perfect for that reason. Outside of that, with the slide-out that we're talking about putting in there, again, it gets all the carcinogens out of the cab, so he's not carrying them back with him when he gets back from the scene, so.
That totally makes sense, so I appreciate the explanation.
Any questions from this side over here?
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Move to authorize Pennington County Fire Administration Office to order and purchase a Ford F-250 three-fourth ton four-by-four short box pickup from Lamb Motors. Preparation PO Box forty-eight, out of South Dakota five-seven-five-six-four, using state contract number 17619 in the amount of fifty-nine-three-oh-nine, fifty-nine thousand three-hundred-nine dollars, is what it just said. An additional forty thousand will be needed for required tools, communications equipment, and logistical support items. Total cost ninety-nine thousand three-oh-nine, being paid for out of the fire's general fund reserve accumulations.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by Hadcock and a second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Val, for all the good information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave, and Dave coming.
I'm not sure why Commissioner Hadcock told me your name was Amy, but...
I did, I'll tell you.
Thank you, Val.
You're seeing if I'm paying attention.
Yeah. So we'll move on to item number sixteen. Items from Human Resources.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could we take like a five and a break?
Yeah, let's take a five, I would agree with that.
Do.
You know.
I agree.
We'll take an hour break. That's April Fool. We'll take a five minutes, so. We're back. I don't think we need a motion or anything. We'll just move on to item sixteen. Items from Human Resources. Position description for Director of the Commission Office. Thank you, Ms. Carroll, if you'll present that to us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director. Then I feel very privileged that I've had the opportunity to work with the Commissioners as we've done an assessment of the Commission Office to determine as far as what the needs were and what this position should be. And so I'm pleased to be able to bring this request to you today, that the Director of the Office of the County Commissioners is where our assessment showed us the pathway to. And it's somebody that would be a strategic leader. They would also be very astute at budgetary and financial practices and reporting. So helping us with those cost-saving measures, there's been a lot of discussion this morning about budget as well as cuts that need to be made and just how frugal we need to be in this position. Would definitely support the Commissioners in that effort. And then also improved operational efficiency through project management. We have a number of different projects that need to be worked on for the county. Most recently, the approval of the Administration Office hours of operation is a good example that we would need assistance from this position. And so the legal and compliance oversight also are some of the key things. So my recommendation is that we would approve the position description for the Director of the Office of the County Commissioners, as I've submitted. And that motion could read to move to approve the Director of the Commission Office position description effective April first of 2025, and that would be at a rating of a P-43. And this position, just as far as where the wage would be, that a P-43, a step one, that the annual salary for that would be ninety-two thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Commissioner Drew.
So, under the strategic leadership, I've got a little concern with the language. It says with strong management and oversight capabilities. And then it goes on to talk about the County Commission. So it leads me to believe that oversight capabilities could be over the commission. And I don't think that's the desire or the design.
No, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Drews, that, that oversight capabilities would be for the Office of the Commissioners.
So basically, staff management, day-to-day operations of the Commission Office, not unlike in the previous position for Commission Manager?
Correct.
Good.
Chair.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I like how you line this out, because what we had before, we're also, the amount for ninety-two, if they're going to be at this time not interim, I think should be higher. These capabilities compared to the last county director or manager at this point has more responsibilities. For me, ninety-two, it should be at least the hundred and five. And you know me about raises and, and also being a director in that, that, that role. The functions, the project management areas, the just technology, they're going to be running a lot more things and directing a lot more things in Pennington County for us, which is going to save us a lot of time. Before, I didn't believe that was happening in a way that I thought was strategic for all departments, including some Commissioners. So at this point, I think we could figure out the P-43 based on what I've seen for the resume and the things I have with the person that we're thinking of, that this should be something that is paid more than ninety-two, based on me being here for a long time, seeing the different areas that we have changed, the different functions that this is, is putting towards a director in this position. The responsibilities and the efficiency and the things that I have already gotten from this young man, I think at this point, if we could, I'd raise that up. And I'd also appreciate everything that it's going to do to hopefully alleviate a lot of the work that we have to do as Commissioners in the future and make it a little bit more of a team for our department heads, all our department heads in Pennington County. So those are my, my thoughts. I think it's a good direction. And I'm excited to see those skills be used that he has shown us on some of the papers and some of his resume. If, I know we're not talking about a certain person at this point, we're talking about this position, but it has all the qualification of a person that should be paid a lot higher than a P-43 to me.
So I really appreciate that, Commissioner Hadcock. You do have the ability that if you decide to appoint an individual, that you can look at what their qualifications are and you can go up according to policy up to step twelve. The commission themselves can even go above that as an exception, so.
It's just a recommendation from you, ma'am.
Right, this is just stating that this position description as it is, not talking about an individual, that that step one is at ninety-two thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskin.
Right now, there's two Commissioners that are pretty involved with Black Hills Association of County officials and County Commissioners. And it's a good group and, and they kind of, their mothership would be the South Coast Association of County officials and Commissioners. I would hope that this person would be involved with that group so that there's continuity. I think it'd be a good relationship, so I assume that would continue.
So yeah, Mr. Rosskin, Commissioner Rosskin, a good point, yes. And so if you look at, you know, some of the things in the job descriptions, talking about leasing, you know, and with our partners and people that we do work with and share goals and missions and those types of things, so yes.
Thank you.
So.
Any more comments or? I, Carol, can you, Commissioner Drew's brought up the one sentence, could you read that sentence to us again?
Yes, it does state in the memo that I submitted to you, strategic leadership with strong management and oversight capabilities. And I think that's what the concern was, is that oversight capabilities of the Commissioners. And I clarified that, no, that is of the Office of the Commissioners.
Commissioner Drews, you're comfortable with that clarification?
Well, I think it needs to be stated as such, that it's the Office.
Can we just add that to it, when we make a motion, that is oversight of the Commission Office or?
So that was not part of the original, that's part of the memo that I submitted?
Oh, it's just a memo, okay.
Right.
It's not the job description, okay. I just, I...
So we're just going to approve the job description?
Okay, I'm good.
All right.
Well, I'll make the motion. Do we have to put the P-43 at this point? Or we, we should put it? Ms. Carroll?
That should be included in the, the motion.
Move to approve the Director of Commission Office position description effective April first, 2025, at the rating at P-43.
Second.
I have a motion from Hadcock, a second from Dur.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a comment on this?
Oh, I've got, I still got a question on that. So am I not reading the, the same memorandum, Carol, that you're talking about?
No, you are reading the memorandum, I believe. The position description itself does not have that language in it.
Okay.
It's just her memorandum.
I see, okay.
All right.
That makes sense, Commissioner Drew.
So we're not approving the memorandum?
No.
Per se, we're just...
No, we do like Carol, but no, we're not approving her memorandum.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're good with that?
You're approving the position description.
All right. Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on. This might be, is this your, no, items from Human Services. OLO, moving forward in a sacred way contract.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, that's right. Twelve twenty-one. Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Human Services and the Veteran Service Office. As most of you are aware, the Sheriff and I partner on a number of items with this. I tend to try to seek out some different opportunities for people to succeed, including clients that are utilizing the Sheriff's Care Campus, whether those are clients in Detox or Safe Solutions. And so I've had this, we have been having some conversations with the OLO organization for some time. And I had some remaining funds within this leftover grant funding through my department. And so we thought that could be a good use of trying this out with OLO to bring in some of their representatives, to engage. There's a large population of individuals that use the Care Campus that are Native American, upwards of eighty percent. And so try to use some of their cultural programming and encourage the individuals utilizing the Care Campus to go over to their facility. They're located over by the old Kmart, a couple doors down from that. And so that's what I'm asking for permission. It's a small amount, up to two hundred hours. And one of our requirements, like anything we do, is to see what the outcomes look like. And so, and they're aware of this, that they're going to have to provide us with some reports on the outcomes they see. And so hopefully, we see some success with their organization and we can encourage more individuals to utilize the services they have in hopes of reducing the amount of admissions into the Care Campus.
Thank you.
Here.
Commissioner Hadcock, please.
So I don't love programs, as you know, some programs, of course, because the outcomes are a little bit easier to understand. I'm in agreement with this. The main thing is too, is to show the outcomes every couple months. It's exciting if it's working, I'll just tell you. And it's exciting, at least for me, to hear that those outcomes are working with this group. The location is a good spot for an area for the population that it's serving over in North Rapid and the surrounding area. So I know Jean Tyon also. So the main thing is that we're getting the information and the outcomes from this group and that if it continues to work that way, it could be pretty exciting. So thank you for doing this. It has been asked of me many times to do this, probably you as well, Barry, because that's what you do for a living, is you take care of our, our population that need the services and same with our sheriff. So in this case today, I think this program, if it works with the outcomes, it could be pretty exciting for our jail, our Care Campus, and just the surrounding area for our native population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we get a motion or Mr.?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
That'd be great.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to pronounce this, but I'll get my...
OLO.
Yep.
It's pretty easy.
I'll just move, I'll just move to approve the contract.
Just OLO.
Yeah, that's what I did, because...
Supply and service, second.
Motion from Commissioner Rosskin, second from Commissioner Hadcock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Barry.
Barry.
Yeah, just wanted to say thanks for all the work you guys do over there, appreciate it.
My second, Dave.
Thank you.
I was going to ask Barry if he could pronounce that one more time.
He did. He said OLO.
Okay. That's, that's...
That's awesome, but maybe we should take a lesson in some of that, so I appreciate that, so. Items from Planning and Zoning, Moratorium for Data Centers, ordinance number seven-ninety-seven.
Good continuing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. So the request for the moratorium for the data centers, we will have to continue this till the April fifteenth, 2025 board meeting, because the Journal failed to advertise.
Mr. Chair.
So moved.
Relative to this ordinance, Gary and I have met with Black Hills Energy, you know, on another matter, but this came up. And I think their position would be to try not to do an ordinance, but do a working group. In a few days, we'll meet with Black Hills Electric, West River Electric, and Rushmore Electric. And I think they got concerns too relative to a moratorium. I think they're leaning towards a working group. We haven't met with them yet, but I'm just sharing that information.
So the, sorry, Chairman and Commissioner, the request for the moratorium is due to the fact that our ordinance right now, there is not a way to regulate them efficiently. Like right now, we would have to do it through a conditional use permit process. There would be several variances that would be required. It's quite cumbersome. Actually, the Assistant Director right now, he is at a national planning conference in Denver, trying to gather more information from other entities on these types of uses so we can bring back something that's less cumbersome. So the moratorium isn't necessarily to like not have them at all, it's just to regulate them more efficiently. Like I said, right now, it would be a conditional use permit and a number of variances, which I think would be some...
I understand that, but we, I'm assuming that there could be a working group. So you've got the different stakeholders involved working together. That's, I guess that's my question.
And I, I'll just chime in, I think you, you're willing to sit down with some of these guys with the, with Rushmore and we've had some, there is some real anxiety about the word moratorium. And we have to understand, it's not a moratorium, it's just a timeframe. But, and I know who, the Black Hills Energy and Rushmore and those guys, they have a big interest in this. Elevate called me the other day, they have a big interest in this. I guess there's some interest in data centers in Rapid City, so I believe what Commissioner Rosskin is saying is if we...
It's just a matter of transparency and working together.
Yeah, that we're, and they understand that we get this going and they'll be more than happy to meet with Brittany, or Brittany will be more than happy to meet with them. I guess I'm not speaking for her, but I know that there's Matt Bruner from Rushmore Electric and all these guys want to have some conversation. But are you done, Mr. Rosskin, or?
Right, I'm done. In fact, we're going to meet, we're going to meet with Matt, but...
Perfect, okay, good.
So bottom line is, is they are working with Matt, they're working with many entities. And what they do is they don't make a ordinance without contacting the people that would be involved. So it doesn't need to be a working group. What it is, is just people that come in that contact them and other people that are involved with those kind of entities with data centers. And they gather that information and it's not always has to have a, a working group to do that. And I don't think Matt Bruner understood until I visited with him. It's kind of like I told him, you guys have a new power company, you have some new rules, you have some new regulations. You can't just, someone comes in and you say, well, we don't have an ordinance, we don't have any rules and regulations, what are you going to tell them? That's our bottom line. Then he understood. Same with Matt. Matt still moved forward a little bit. And then a couple other people that I have business with. Bottom line is, moratorium is just till you get an ordinance, like Brittany said, the working group, they've already been, Matt's been sending information and also not even on AI centers or data centers. They've already been, Matt's been sending information, and also not even on AI centers or data centers. He's also been sending stuff on nuclear stuff that Ron had talked about. I asked him about, when Ron had talked to me about it, if he had some information. So all that can be sent to the planning department, and it is very transparent when you do have all those groups sending information or meeting with, which they have met with a couple different groups already, to to move this ordinance forward. We did it the first time with wind and solar. We actually had a group in that sense, but then more information and more issues came up. So you'll never make a perfect ordinance and never do it always the right way, because things are ever changing. But our planning department has done some pretty amazing stuff without having a big group having to do it. So those are my opinions. Like I said, everybody should be able to put in their input with the planning if they have any. And like I said, I talked to Bruner and some other entities in the power companies and told them to send any information or anything, and then meet with Brittany and Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Drews?
I like your suggestion. I I think it's the use of the word moratorium is more scary than than what we're trying to do, and I think if.
Do you have a better word, Commissioner Drews? I'd appreciate that because.
Just eliminate the word moratorium and just use that we need time to receive the information and put together an ordinance.
I appreciate that, because I've been getting a lot of phone calls. I don't want the Rapid City Journal to go out and print an article above the fold that says we're doing a moratorium, because that's not the case, in any way, shape, or form, so.
Tell me, tell me the definition of moratorium.
It doesn't matter. What's perception of moratorium is, so.
It does. It does if you can explain it, and if the Journal explains it right, I I disagree.
Okay, that's fine. You can disagree, but let's.
But you see what I'm saying.
Who's, do we have a motion on the floor yet, or?
Right now, we're just continuing.
She started one, Dad started one. She was, but then no one's.
So let's, let's, let's put a motion on the floor and discuss it if we want to change it to something other than just, you know, putting a hold on it or something. That's all we're doing.
Well, I have to ask the question, if you don't moratorium, how long are you gonna continue it? You're gonna tell people you're gonna continue it for two months, six months, eight months? Why you do that is you don't really know the amount of time it's gonna take you. That's why you have a moratorium, because it could take you a month, it could take you three months, it could take you six months. And then if we say, okay, we're just gonna continue this till we decide, then it makes no sense again, because you have no.
Gonna give her time to.
Let me speak, Mr. Weifelbach.
The only reason we're continuing it now is because it never got noticed.
No, we're continuing it. In this case, it's because it's not noticed. Why I'm saying that is because you have to have some date, if that's what you're saying, and you don't have a date.
Does two weeks work?
No, meaning for moratorium, for the moratorium, Mr. Mr. Weifelbach, not the, not the recess.
The reason I don't want to call it a moratorium, and I'll explain myself, and I'll leave it at that, but because I get calls from Elevate, and they get, they get calls from outside of town, the people that are looking to come here, and they go, hey, man, you guys are not open for business. That's the perception they're getting. And I could have asked Garf when he was here earlier, so.
That there will, there will be no permitting of data centers until the working group has come together and created a ordinance that we can all adopt. Nothing happens then. You don't have to use the word moratorium.
You can't legally do that, but that's okay.
We got a motion from.
Okay, we're, okay, you guys, we're continuing this, so we have more time to, because it's not on, it wasn't done right, so we can go ahead and to continue the ordinance seven ninety-seven to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meetings due to Rapid City Journal's failure to advise advertise the request.
Brittany, what works for you?
We have to continue it to discuss the moratorium due to the failure.
We'll just continue this item, not basically changing it. Wouldn't do any good, so, all right.
Was there a second?
There was a motion, but.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think there's a lot more discussion. I brought this up because it's out there and we just can't.
It is, and I I got phone calls about it, so we just, and I've talked to you about it.
I'll second the motion to continue so that we can get it figured out.
So motion to continue?
Yep.
Okay.
And? Yeah, just have a comment. So related, we had our first meeting of the Energy Task Force, Alternate Energy Task Force. We had our first meeting, and I'll talk about that in Commission Updates. Anyway, we've got, you know, I believe anyway, a diverse group of people on that committee that, you know, have some input. We did talk about data centers yesterday, Haven Stuck, or was it yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah. And Haven Stuck brought brought up on the committee about the nuclear thing. So we were across the board, kind of talking about everything that we're looking at, and so instead, this is something for you to think about, but instead of appointing another working group or committee, I would ask if we could, if we could incorporate that into this committee. So it's something to think about. I agree with that.
I don't know if you have the experts for that, but.
I think I'm comfortable just come, I'm sorry, I'm comfortable just continuing it and giving Brittany the time. I think she has a good direction. And she's willing to, if any of the Commissioners want to, I mean, I think she's planned on meeting with with those fellows that you mentioned.
Right.
Because those are the big stakeholders, and maybe you could add Garf in there, because he's the one that called me on a Zoom call and had the conference. Wishes that we wouldn't do this, and I said, it's not our intent, but, you know, sometimes your intent and what you say is misconstrued, as we can see in in almost every everyday life. So I'm comfortable just.
Mr. Chair, so I guess when we meet with them, we can tell them that at this point, there's no moratorium, that we're working on it. Maybe some different wording, just to explain to them what we discussed today.
Well, I think next time it comes back, we'll have, we'll have an idea of what we're gonna do.
Right.
So I think Brittany has talked about going out to the eastern part of the state where they have data centers and actually seeing, you know, because the word data center alone is, people have a misconception, which is not even true anymore.
Right.
They don't use the water that they use, they don't use electricity that people say they do. That stuff's all been addressed, but I know we have some on the eastern part of the state. Am I correct, Brittany?
I've spent hours doing that, searching data centers. The one in Sioux Falls has got the east and the west. It's called TE, T I E R. And I don't know which one you're gonna look at, but those are the two in Sioux Falls. And it's got all kinds of descriptions of what they do. But, you know, this is stuff that I've been, there's so many different types of data centers and how they're rated. They're rated in megawatts or kilowatts, but.
It is definitely the future of of artificial intelligence is is cooling the machines down.
I think there's four hundred thousand data centers in the United States, but anyhow, I think.
Have a motion on the floor to continue the item?
Yep.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Well, she could, thanks, Brittany, and then, you know, I'm sure everybody will be checking in with you to see how it's going, or if you could just send us a.
And I would like to comment, too, that Jason is at a national conference, and he is trying to get information on this from planners and industry providers and get some more information. So we should have that information available to the commission at the next meeting.
I think the input of what the people you got, you guys will come up and with some of this, these commissioners' input, you'll come up with a good plan, so.
Mr. Chair.
That makes sense.
I would only suggest they get all that information, but then that information goes to the different stakeholders out there, so everybody kind of knows what's going on, so there isn't a sudden.
We can assimilate that.
Knee jerk.
Yep, that would make sense.
Good words. Moratorium assimilation.
There you go.
Not just two good words.
I like that.
Do we need, do we need a little time for you to get for planning ready? Items for planning is only ten thirty, so we're we're past that, we're.
Been here since age.
Move to go in the Board of Adjustment.
He's been waiting, he's getting ready. Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, go in Board of Adjustment, sir.
Motion to go to Board of Adjustments? Do we have a second?
Aye.
A motion to go to the Board of Adjustment, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Number nineteen, Planning Board Adjustment Hearings, variance COVA twenty-five zero zero two, Jane Tolman, Darlene Brown, to reduce the rear yard setback on the property line of the subject property. Go ahead.
Cody Sax, senior planner. So, yeah, item A is variance COVA twenty-five dash zero zero two. It's reduce the rear yard setback for a proposed accessory structure in an existing house. The applicant and landowner is Jane Tolman. She is in the audience. If there are any questions, access is off Rockwood Court. So when we look at variances, we take a two-pronged approach. Prong number one, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. It doesn't appear that this variance would run counter to public interest. However, prong two is whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. There is no special condition that would exist. The house could have been built to meet the twenty-five foot setback, and the proposed structure could be relocated to meet the twenty-five foot setback. Currently on the house, there's a single-family residence with a detached garage and a shed. Those sheds and that garage also don't meet a setback. Those are the next items that they're working on bringing into compliance. So the house sits twenty-two point five feet from the property line, and the proposed structure is gonna be eleven feet from the property line. Again, there's no special condition exists for why that proposed structure would need to be there. So staff does recommend denial of variance COVA twenty-five dash zero zero two. As there's no special condition. However, if the Board Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff has one condition.
So Cody, sorry, Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
So Cody, is there any neighbors complaining that they had a gazebo up front?
That they have a gazebo out front? No.
No, that they want, where the location?
Nope.
They want to put it at?
No, staff has not received any public comment on this.
Complaints, and it looks like when I read through their papers that they had contacted the neighbors, which I appreciate. When you're gonna change the setbacks and you're being, gonna be closer to them. So for me, it's a no-brainer to approve it.
I'll second that motion.
With one condition.
That was a motion made?
Yes, sir.
This, you, did you talk to, did we, I mean, I sat down with you guys and discussed all this. So this, their house is already built, so you're just proving to keep their house where it's at, basically, and allowing them to.
So so pretty much what happened is she came in for the variance.
There's three of them on here, right?
Yep, she came in for the variance for the the gazebo. I think she's putting a pool in there and everything. When you get a variance, the property has to be in compliance. So when they reviewed the property, you're required to get a survey. So I told her that the shed and the garage were too close to the property line, and she needed to get a survey. So she brought in the survey, and it showed the house being too close, and since we know that information now, we can't just ignore it, because if the house ever sold and someone wanted to extend it, they wouldn't be able to, because it doesn't meet the setback.
I'm gonna guess this meets, I I think this is a good example of of the planning department taking the time to to make this work for these people, even under the circumstances that they had. They bought the house unexpectedly without, and that's not anybody's fault, except for the fact that they did buy the house and whatever. So but all three of these, they're not here evidently, so they must, or they are here. Oh, okay, yeah. So you're comfortable with these decisions that were made and and allow these things to happen this way, this? Yeah.
Am I comfortable with the? Come up, come up, ma'am.
You want to come up to the front and just, I just, I know that they, Cody spent a lot of time on trying to make this work for you guys.
Yeah, the staff denied it, but the commission, staff has to do their job, ma'am, and deny it, but the commission can, because that's, they have to abide by the rules. Then they come up, and then we can change those rules based on your neighbors and all the circumstances. So that's what we've done here on this first motion.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, too, because I think in the going forward, that might be something to consider with the Board of Realtors or somebody, because it, you know, turned into four variances. But then I appreciate, these guys, you know, I I contacted Mr. Roskineck about it, and he was able to get with the zoning and planning, and they they moved. There was gonna be four variances, one for the gazebo, the other for the house. And in addition to the shed and the three-car garage, and again, we we were gonna end up paying, you know, over two thousand dollars just in variances, plus the, you know, eighteen hundred dollars for the, what do you call that, the survey. So it was like, wow, you know. So we get, you know, we, in the future, maybe something has to be done with disclosure or something like that. I think that's where we were a little frustrated, because we were trying to be up and open and honest and say, this is what we're gonna do, but a lot of our neighbors were out of compliance, and so we're just like, why are we getting hit? That's where we got.
Yeah, basically what happened.
But I understand he's doing his job, you know.
He triggered it by doing a gazebo.
Yeah.
And then if they trigger something, they'll have to comply and do the same things. A lot of people built and did what they wanted in the county, unfortunately, and didn't abide by the rules and regs, then come out and ask for forgiveness. So we're thankful that you did this today, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So what started out to be one variance turned out to be four, if I understand it, and each one was probably five hundred dollars. So if you look at the example there, the surveyor went out, and he said the garage is so far from the property line, it doesn't meet the twenty-five foot setback in the house. I understand that. But the shed, I don't quite understand the shed. I don't even know why the, he took the time to measure that shed, because that shed could have been a nice fishing shack. That's four feet by eight and could have been within twenty-five feet. Is there any criteria where they sit there, if it's this small, you don't have to bother measuring it?
I ask, I think Mr. Sack explained that, if it's because it's it's connected to cement, right?
So I can explain that. I think, so Cody Sack, senior planner, so in our ordinance, it doesn't say that a structure that is under a certain per, uh, square footage doesn't have to meet a required setback. All structures have to meet a setback. It's just if you need a building permit or not. So that shed was being too close, even though it doesn't need a building permit, it still is technically required to meet the twenty-five foot setback. So she was told that the shed would have to be surveyed. The house, the house was the only thing that wasn't, didn't need to be surveyed, that the surveyor actually put on the survey. And that's what triggered this, this variance for the house, too.
The shed, real estate, or is it just a personal property?
It's just a tool shed.
It's, so it's attached to the ground?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd make the difference.
But if it wasn't.
If it wasn't, then you'd be fine, because you could move it, right?
Correct, and that was staff's recommendation to avoid third variance, would be just move the shed back to the twenty-five feet. They they chose to stay.
And then when we looked at the cost of moving the shed, it was ridiculous.
Right, yeah.
It would be ugly, because then you got cement, so.
And I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that this was rolled, and and basically what happens when you buy a house is, all that stuff should be recorded. If it wasn't recorded, it has nothing to do with the county. It's, it's, so. But working with you, we got it done, working with Ron, and that's the, the end result is good, so we'll get a motion.
So this is the first motion already by by me, and then second by Ron.
Got a vote on it now.
On which one? Motion to approve?
Yes.
A, there's a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go on to B, and it's the same situation there. We're just doing another little, we're just doing some housekeeping, basically, right?
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
One condition, I'll second.
With one condition.
Yep.
We've already heard.
Motion by Roskineck, second by Hancock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to item C, some more housekeeping from Cody.
Cody, you have anything?
Okay.
Move to approve COVA twenty-five dash zero 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 four with two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion from Hancock, second from Roskineck. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
So at what point can we build? That's the next question. Is that?
I I can get with you after this, after this meeting, and we can go over the.
At least down at the meeting here, so.
Thank you.
I think that resolves everything for her right, Cody.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, you're free to go, ma'am. Thank you.
Motion to move out of Board of Adjustment?
Motion to move out of Board of Judgments, do I have a second?
Free to go.
Second by Dur. I have a motion by Hancock, second by Dur to move out of Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number twenty, Planning Regular Agenda, Preliminary Plan, COPPL twenty-five zero zero one, Betty Johnson to create Lot One D R, Lot Two R, and Lot Three R of black metal, number four, load MS nineteen eighty-six. This has gotta be in Ron's area.
This thing is such a remote piece of property, close to the old city, but just rugged.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so Cody Sack, senior planner, Preliminary Plan COPPL twenty-five dash zero zero one is to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot One D R, Lot Two R, and Lot Three R of black metal load, number four, number four, load MS nineteen eighty-six. The applicant landowner is Betty Johnson. Current zoning is rural residential district. So pretty much what they're doing is, if you look on the screen, the highlighted in pink is the current lot line, and the green line is what they're proposing to do, so they're just adjusting some lot lines. Nothing out of the ordinary, no rezone, no road improvements, no right-of-way taken. So staff is recommending approval of Preliminary Plan COPPL twenty-five dash zero 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 one with conditions and with the planning commission's concurrence.
I'll second, or I'll second. I'll make that motion.
Little motion from Hancock?
Second.
Second from Roskineck. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Move on to item B.
Thank you, Cody.
Public hearing of planned unit development overlay. Public hearing, uh, planned unit development overlay, COPU twenty-five zero, 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 one, Jenna Wilburn to allow for a specialty resort.
Good make.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Megan Talmage, Planner. Um, this request, as you said, is a request for a planned unit development overlay. Um, it's located north of the intersection of Rochford Road and Silver Creek. Um, staff recommends to continue this item to the May sixth Board of Commissioners meeting. As you can see, I received a lot of comment on this item. And I, um, I'm looking further into those concerns so that I can condition this request properly.
I, I would only request that you keep Commissioner Roskinek in the loop on the comments you're getting, because he's probably getting them, too.
So, back in nineteen seventy-five, my dad built a cabin on Minnesota Ridge. So you have to go down Silver Creek, then you take two oh three up to the cabin. So I had to drive by this a lot. In fact, we used to cut pine trees down on the opposite side. It's basically a bog. You got a very delicate ecosystem there, and I just can't even believe that they're suggesting doing this. When that eighty-three acres sold a couple of years ago for one point five million dollars, we approved, subdivided that in the three tracts, and then the balance is fifty-three acres. And the fifty-three acres is what I was told where they were gonna do the specialty resort, which would have been on the Mickelson Trail, and it wouldn't, uh, it was big enough to where you wouldn't be in an area what I consider pretty delicate. And just like everybody visited the solar farm, I, I really think a personal visit to this site needs to be done, so people could really see what they're looking at and how delicate that is and how, to me, it's just narrow and long and, uh, it, I really got concerns. And obviously, so do a lot of other people.
Definitely, some several people do, so, do I got a motion on the floor?
Motion to continue till...
Motion to continue?
What was the date?
May sixth.
May sixth, yes.
Second.
And I'll get a motion from Haddock and second from Drews, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Items from commission members, diligent, diligent agenda software, Commissioner Dur.
Oh, right. So, yeah, there's been discussion, we've had this since, uh, you know, coming on the board in January, talking about our agenda process and the software. Talking to the staff about our current software that we're using for the agenda, which is Granicus, and... Okay. I will. All right. So we've talked, I've talked to the staff about the agenda software and really to the point, trying to get the software to work. And a major player in the software of getting that up is the planning department for their agendas. They have a workflow that, uh, apparently, uh, Granicus had sold, that there was a workflow process to get the agenda to a point that would be ready for public purview and transparency. And, uh, you know, that, to, Granicus oversold and under-delivered on what the ability was for that software. So, uh, we looked at, uh, the diligent software, which is a product, uh, in my background, I'm familiar with, with the same company. This is a different product they have, but, uh, so we had, uh, two, two previews of that diligent software, the second one with the planning board, IT, and other parties that would be involved in this. And anyway, they felt that the, uh, diligent software would fit the needs as to, uh, what it would take to get the county, I believe, any way to get to a point where we're running a much smoother agenda with transparency and obviously getting to the point where you would have an internal workflow with workflow approvals and, uh, department heads having that workflow, then that workflow coming to the commission offices, they're getting ready to build that agenda and launch it. We have the, uh, a three-year agreement with, uh, Granicus and, uh, basically, uh, we have to give them sixty days notice that, the notice timeline does not happen until April eighth of twenty-six. And so we are locked into a final payment with them of twelve thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, the current contract, uh, with diligent would be for seventeen thousand dollars a year. Uh, and the information is in the packet. I had Cody out of the HR office. Uh, he prepared a little, uh, kind of a comment and comparison between the two of them, because obviously I'm sold on it, but I wanted an independent look at it as to how the software thought we would perform and what the comparables were between Granicus and diligent. And then he did, uh, you know, survey, uh, some of the people that, uh, will be using this. And so anyway, the information's in the packet, but we would be absorbing another seventeen thousand dollars that is not budgeted and then transitioning away from Granicus. And, uh, we would still likely, unless we could get, uh, Granicus to give up that last year commitment at twelve-five, that would be an additional payment. I did have Tyler go through the agreement. Did you want to come up, Tyler? So Tyler looked at the contract we made as the proposal came forward from diligent, we made a couple of changes to it. One, they were looking for a thirty-day turnaround on a payment settlement, and we got them to go to forty-five. Joan had concerns that we would be able to get that payment, uh, done within that timeframe. And then they were asking for a five percent renewal every year, automatic, and we got that down to three percent. And so I believe you looked at the agreement?
Exactly just that. Uh, Tyler Sobzak, pending to County State's Attorney's Office. Uh, I've reviewed the diligent, I believe, I'm just gonna call it a purchase order form in addition to the old Granicus documents. As far as diligent is concerned, I have no issues, qualms with anything, with anything they presented. They were very amicable to Commissioner Dur and Joan about the changes that we wanted to be made, particularly, you know, those three percent and then the forty-five-day voucher cycle, so they were very receptive to that. As, as, as it goes to Granicus, at least, we are, as we're sitting, on the books for the year of, I'm just gonna call it the twenty-twenty-six year. Um, and we do have the ability to terminate our agreement with them right now, but even if we do so, uh, we're, we're, we're still on the books for that, I believe it's about twelve thousand dollars. So anytime between, you know, the appro, the proposed approval of diligent and that April eighth, twenty-twenty-six date, we just have to craft some language to terminate their use whenever that time comes. But April eighth is the deadline, I stand for any other questions you guys may have, otherwise.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank Jerry for looking into this as an alternative. Uh, when you sit there and look at cost versus value, I mean, that pretty well explains it. You know, yeah, it's gonna cost a little bit more, but are we gonna get some benefits from that? And I really think we will. And, you know, you sit there and look at, when we hired Walter, that was an added expense, but look at the money that he saved the county. So I, uh, totally am in a, uh, in agreement, uh, you know, going in this direction whenever we decide the time is, uh, right.
If I may briefly interject as well, one thing I do want to note, that's a little bit different, the diligent contract as compared to Granicus, the effective date of this document is gonna be the date that it's signed. It's a little, it can vary between company and company. Normally, you know, the effective date is when we get the, the secondary signature, so this is just a little bit of a deviation from contracts that perhaps you've entered into in the past. So the effective date would be today. Um, other than that, I still stand for any questions you may have.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Not really a question for you, Tyler, but Mike, have you looked into any of this? Jerry, maybe you had discussions with Mike already? Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mike Iverson, IT Director. Uh, just briefly looked over it once it got sent over my way. Um, I, I looked at it from my perspective without really knowing what you guys needed. Uh, everything looked great, I'm actually excited to see what it'll do for you guys and to really bring more transparency to it. I didn't see any red flags, so, you know, I signed off on it and said it looks good, so.
So there's nothing else different than that than diligent that you would recommend or that you've seen in the past that we've used in order to accomplish the goals that we're looking for?
I never used Granicus in the past, so I'm not sure what you guys had used previously. Uh, it wasn't part of my purview before. Um, but going forward from what I could see you guys needed, no, it looked good.
Okay.
There were a lot of options on there that I think you could add on later if you find more needs.
And that's what I thought when I looked at it, and then I saw the twelve thousand as well and the difference on that. But it was a good explanation, Commissioner Dur, on the process. I just wanted to make sure that you had had conversations with Mike and, um, that were all on board, because, uh, a lot of that you're gonna probably have to be helping with.
Absolutely.
Some of it, or just, uh, maybe the upgrades or certain things on it. Um, and you probably want to understand, because if other departments and other people are gonna be using it, um, yeah.
And it, it, it looks like it's completely cloud-based, so as long as they keep it US-based, we'll be good, so.
But that'll simplify it. Maybe not for Nick Haddock, but for everybody else. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you, uh, Jerry, for doing the work on this. I did read up on, I was just, what I was doing in the back is, the two people look confused in the back and, um, they just want to know somewhat of the process, so that's why I left the room for just a second.
Another thing I should mention while I'm up here is this, uh, compared to Granicus, again, this is on an annual subscription basis. We were locked in three years with Granicus, not gonna have that issue here with diligent, so.
Tyler, for you, do you...
So it's a yearly subscription?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is, basically allows us to move in, to approve the contract with diligent, right? So the nice thing about it is, there's been several people that are involved in using this product, so we've seen some of the, what can be produced. And I think Mr. Roskinek will probably write a check when he gets the information that he's always wanted.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, agreement and contract to, with, uh, Granic, or excuse me, diligent and, uh, have the chair sign the agreement, the order form and the future documents.
A motion from Dur and a second by Haddock to approve with diligent corporation. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Mike, you got a, your first job, don't let us down, buddy. We, we are on you like a refrigerator. So, we'll move on to, um... Yeah, thank you guys so much. Tyler, Mike, thanks, guys. So, um, we want to item B, and this is something I brought forward, uh, the building committee. I'm looking to, uh, dissolve the building committee as it is according to the bylaws, um, and to move forward with, uh, something different in the future. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but, uh, the first meeting I went to, there was twenty people there and the conversation was just about, you know...
Mr. Chair.
I think people had a, um, ability to do something else, so, um, if I could get a motion to dissolve it according to the bylaws, we have some communication on it, whatever.
I'll make that motion, move to dissolve the building committee for discussion.
Motion to have a second for discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on a sec.
Yeah, I'm not gonna support this motion and the reason why...
We need a second first.
Wait, I'll just give a second so we can have discussion.
Okay, so we got a, a motion and a second for, uh, discussion, so then we'll go to Mr. Roskinek.
Are we ready?
Discussion, yep.
As I said, I don't know that I can support this. I think the building committee might be, could be organized different, scheduled different, but I, I think that, uh, we need that transparency. Uh, and that's, as I said, I, I've been on that building committee probably three or four years and, you know, we had to make some big decisions, and I think by having the committee that we did some research and we brought a lot of knowledge to the table that, that, uh, I think, uh, helped make some decisions that saved the county. I'm just gonna say millions of dollars, so. Uh, is it structured right? Is, is the schedule right? I don't know. But, uh, I think we need, that's one committee that, uh, uh, I think that benefits county.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Drews, you had some...
So, and I agree with what Ron has to say, and without having an alternative plan of how we move forward with it, um, I don't, I don't think we should just eliminate it and then try to wait for a plan to come forward. I'd like to see some sort of an alternative plan pushed forward as to how we're gonna handle this, because I do think that it serves a critical picture.
Yeah, well, the meeting I went to, nothing got accomplished, so I don't know that we're really doing anything. Twenty people that say they don't have, they don't have anything, they have no time on their hands, otherwise, I was trying to eliminate that so they can move on, because right now we got, uh, the building and grounds guy going through, doing a, doing a valuation to make sure the move all takes place. Um, I think we got a new commission guy coming in, I think he'll be our plan to, to resolve that. But in the end, the whole communication and the whole, when the decisions are made, they come down to us and as a, as a commission, whatever decisions are being made, and that, that was my reasoning before it. If we dissolve it and then we can rebuild it, however, the commission and, and our new commission director feels, uh, but I'm open to anything.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
So I've been here probably the longest, and I've been in building committees, and I've been in comp committees, and I've been in some of these committees, and it's not more transparent. I'm gonna be up straight. Um, it hasn't been transparent, it's who talks the loudest and who has the most influence. Um, so, since I've been there, I truly believe that Mike was trying to run a meeting and never could. Um, and, uh, what was happening is who spoke the loudest and who had the commissioners' ear the most. So for me, um, transparent is having a buildings and grounds guy that's running the operation, coming forward, and when there's buildings or anything need to be bought, this process is done in public, in front of the people. Um, transparent, that's transparent. Every building, every piece of, uh, remodel, anything we do should be decided because it was vetted through the process of our buildings and grounds guy, that if Carol, let's use Carol for example, an HR needed remodel, that that would come forward once that recommendation was done by the buildings and grounds. I saw a lot of overspending, I saw projects that never should have been done, I saw too much of millions spent on buildings that shouldn't have been bought in the first place. I saw contracts that weren't, weren't signed. On this building, there's a nine million dollar contract, never signed. Too much stuff going on in that building committee and no direction in a sense that the buildings and gra, grounds guy just took direction from a bunch of commissioners and, um, department heads. That's not his job description. His job description is to tell them what's going on. I never seen it, I was in there a long time in those building committees. Um, too many people, too many committees. Um, since then, we already know, um, what has happened. What has happened, your bottom line is what has happened from the committees that has been positive for Bennington County in a way that people have their voice. I think if you have a good buildings and grounds communicator, which I think we do, and that's why I'm in favor of this, um, at this point moving forward, let him do his job, let him communicate with our department heads, with our new director, if we have the director that's appointed today, and figure out what his job description is based on what he's getting direction from, from this commission and what his budget is. We spent money in those budgets that we're finding out, and this isn't guestimating, that should have never been spent. That bond was meant for a buildings and grounds building and a, um, and a, uh, jail. That direction went in a whole different direction with money that was spent that it should have never been spent. So, um, sorry, but that was your building committee. So for transparency, for better, um, communication, for a team to be able to do their job and not sit twenty people in a meeting when they should be working, doing something else and letting our buildings and grounds guy do his job, I think he would, um, probably appreciate that as well, maybe, I don't know, um, but from listening from the past. Um, I know Mike wanted to do the same thing, but, uh, these, uh, the commission didn't believe that needed to happen, so, um, at that time, it wasn't me, it wasn't another one, it was a three-to-two vote at that time. So, again, maybe Mike, or maybe Mike, maybe Mr. Davis, you have some input on this? Maybe you'd like to keep the committee, I don't know, but from what I've been listening, trying to do your job, it seems, it gets a little frustrating.
Mr. Chair, when he's done, may I speak?
Sure. Mr. Davis.
Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. So, you know, as I've been thinking about this over just the past couple of weeks when it was first presented, I actually am in favor of dissolving the committee for a few reasons. One is, really, when I first came on here, I kind of just, I knew I was the chair of the committee, I let our construction manager at the time run the meetings, and I believe there was a lot of good decisions at maybe the time I was here that were made, prioritizing facilities and other projects and things, but there was also a lot of monotonous things that weren't getting done, or recommendations that we weren't sure if they should come through the building committee or come through buildings and grounds, and there was just a lot of delayed and some project timelines and some other things. But also, what I'm trying to do as the buildings and grounds director is come to the commission with very solid recommendations, as long as I still have the ability to meet with department heads, commissioners, for certain projects that obviously we need to have more input on. I can't be the, you know, end-all, be-all, so I will certainly make sure to bring these recommendations to you, but that's what I've tried to do at the building committee, and towards the end, it was more, it was more of recommendations from buildings and grounds that were 95% of the way complete, that then were just brought to the building committee to kind of say, okay. And then, because we have to take all committee items to the commission two times, we ended up just taking them under buildings and grounds, so we didn't have to come up multiple times and we could get something moving. But again, I have full confidence in my team not only to provide the commission with, with recommendations, with, you know, facility needs and things like that moving forward, but it does get clouded when, when there are committees in place that differing opinions from different departments come, and then it makes it hard for us to come to you guys with a solid recommendation, because there's so many varying opinions, rather than just focusing on the actual needs or the actual project, you know, that's in our lap, so.
Okay, here's my two bits. Right now, maybe what you're saying, Davis, applies to this administration and applies to your position, which we're all going to be gone sooner or later, you're going to have somebody replace you, you're going to have somebody replace us. And mark my words, if you had dissolved the building committees, another administration's going to create it, it's just the way it is. Look at the comp committee, it was, it was there, it was dissolved, it's back. You can certainly dissolve it, but I would highly recommend that you come up with something, something interim before we totally dissolve it. I mean, that's just my, I didn't say the building committee couldn't be restructured, but I think the building committee has been effective, and that's, I just think Mr. Drews is right on, that we, if we're going to dissolve it, let's have a Plan B in place. But that's.
Mr. Dirk, can you, can you kind of weigh in on how you see that, that, one of the things we're working on is the metrics, the information, all that stuff, so I think that he can weigh in a little bit about how we're.
You know, I don't know that maybe it's the committee, maybe, maybe the committee's okay, maybe it was the personalities, individuals in the committee, I mean.
All right. So, it's kind of funny, because if I have a thought in my head, somehow it winds up on the agenda.
Pardon?
Nothing, just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How my comments are sometimes, you know, what I think about does wind up on an agenda, so, and I'm just going to, you put it on the agenda, but I'll say it started with my comments. So, I've been to, I think, three building committees, I've been to two or three comp committees, and, you know, I, the last building committee that I went to, so getting back to the first building committee, we went in there over to your conference room over there, and the conference room table is full, and then they're seating off to the side, and so we had people, you know, seated behind us and on both sides that were not part of the building committee. I never made any comments, but, you know, even our own commission office was present there, sitting in the gallery, and everybody was just chit-chatting behind us while he's trying to run the meeting, so just in that respect, I thought it was unprofessional. So, go to the second committee, and I think, and I never said anything to Davis about that, and then Davis sends an email out that says we're going to limit the committee to actually, you know, people that are on the committee, and so you go to the next committee meeting, and the gallery is cleaned up, and I was like, that's great. So I listened to some of the things coming up about a building committee and stuff talked about, obviously related to the projects we have going on internally, and so building committee would, let's say, be at 8 o'clock in the morning, and there were department heads, and the judge and Liz over there, and so there was a mix of department heads at the building committee meeting, and then we got done with the building committee meeting, and then we came over to this building to have our comp committee at 10 o'clock. So there were many of the same people on the building committee that came over here for a 10 o'clock meeting on the comp committee, and then we got through comp committee, and then, I do know, and I've not been to them because I don't want to go to one, and then they have a department head meeting, and so I'm seeing, you know, a mix of some of the same people going from one committee, getting out of that committee meeting, going to the very next committee meeting, some of the same players, and then bringing more people in. And so, the example that I would give is like, on a couple of them, but one on the comp committee, you know, it came from the board here that we need to look at our overtime policy. And so the overtime policy was shopped in the first comp committee, we meet again, it comes back in the second comp committee, and it, in these committees, when there's been an appointment made by the board, or by bylaws as to who's a member of those committees and the appointment is made, and that department head doesn't go, in some instances, when that one department head did not go to the meeting, four people from their department showed up in their place, and now we're talking about something that we talked about at the previous meeting, and this is new information to these new four individuals, so you're rehashing all of these same questions and going through the same thing, and I'll just use overtime as example. We've been on three meetings with just changing the overtime so we don't pay, you know, employees benefited leave time, accrued leave time for overtime. So, the last time we had a meeting on that, we had more people that showed up at that meeting that had never been there before because their department heads were not there, so then we started back on the same conversations we had at the very first meeting. So, when I went to the last building committee, and Davis was going through, on the agenda, was talking about the bylaws, so they were going through, looking at the bylaws of the building committee, and I just said, you know, could I just have a minute to tell you what's on my mind, and the judge was there, Liz was there, and I just said, I find that we have so much redundancy on these committees with the same people going to one committee to another committee, and then seeing in some of the committees, I thought maybe some more department head should be involved, and some I thought subordinate staff should be less. And so I did, at the building committee, say, it's in the back of my head that the building committee and the comp committee should go away, and Davis just said, okay, I'll pause on the bylaws. And so, I'm just, and I told the judge that was there, and Liz, I said, you know, my envision would be that these, like, the building committee and the comp committee would go away, but the same people on these committees, the, I would say, you know, 80 to 90% of the same people on these committees, they also meet and have a department head meeting. And so what I wanted to do was get away with, from the building committee, get away from the comp committee, have our department heads and elected officials go to less meetings throughout the week, because I've been to these meetings, and they all talk about how busy they are, and then I just said, my thought was that you would just handle all of these subcommittees at a department head level, they have a department head meeting, they're all pretty much on these committees anyway, and I told the judge, and I said, you're a partner with us, so it's not like we want to not have you involved in these discussions that relate to projects at the courthouse and things you have interest in, that when that agenda is built for the department head meeting, that you would be a part of that, and the court system would come over at that department head level and be involved at that level and talk about stuff that pertains to what is going on at the courthouse. So, when I went to comp committee on the very same day after the building committee, I told the comp committee, I had just met with the building committee, I'm one commissioner, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen, I'm just telling you straightforward, this is my thought process and why. And so, those are the reasons that I thought that it should be handled at a department head level, and that it winds up filtering its way up there anyway, and just have department heads along with our leadership team work together on these things, and then collectively, you know, make that decision about what you want to do, and then bring it in front of the commission, and not that, it's just like I had my meeting with the wind and, you know, our alternate energy task force yesterday, and I said, I do not want to have bylaws on this committee, I don't want to do that, I think that we have too many operational things happening out there that are subsets of the commission that have bylaws, and then, I mean, think about it, they have bylaws that they approve, they go through an agenda, they're typing up minute meetings, they're sending out invitations, they're approving their previous minutes, and, you know, just like we do at a commission meeting, and I'm trying to, my thought was to free them up, get everybody in the same room, and let them get together and talk about this stuff, and one of them was like, when I went to Weed and Pest Board and said, what do you need? Well, we would need, you know, we'd like to get this building out here done, how come you've never done that? Well, I guess it has to go to building committee. Okay, I'll bring it to building committee, but, and then, I'm out on a tour of JDC when I did the building tours, and I saw the JDC, some simple things was in disrepair, carpet coming up off the floor, all kinds of things, I brought it to building committee, made a suggestion, and, you know, you said you would handle that in-house, and so I think it's a communication thing to give everybody from every department the ability, not that we have to appoint five different committees and try to make sure every elected or appointed official is on one of these committees, they have a department head meeting, and my background and experience is that you handle those things at a department head level, and then you come forward with whatever department headed impacts, and then you say, this has been shopped at department head meeting, and we come forward and we're all on board, or this is our conversation, so that was my thought process on it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I'm not saying that's wrong, Jerry, I'm just saying that I think there should be an effective date and some kind of a plan in place that kind of documents a procedure that you just talked about. It sounds to me, what you're talking about, what I considered a contingency plan or a Plan B. So, what's that look like on paper so that we know when we can start that process? If we're going to eliminate the building committee and just eliminate it, and it's gone, I just wanted to see something in writing that, what, how we get, you know, that another commission could look at, because we're not always going to be here, so how's that work?
Chair. Chair.
So, here's the issue, and the bottom line, when we had a comp committee, we dissolved it because of the same reason it, it started in the first place and the issues it had. You had a bunch of people that were in departments making their own rules and regulations that affected many people, and some in a very good way, and some in a very bad way. So it didn't matter whether it was building committee or it was comp committee, the two loudest, or the three loudest, or four loudest in the room, and the commissioners were the deciding factor. You guys listen to everybody, I saw everybody listen to everybody, but the bottom line is, who gave the direction? Okay, that's been happening for, I don't know, eight years now? And where are we at today? That should tell you your bottom line, it wasn't working. Some of you thought it was working because you were part of that. The rest of the people that were watching on the backside and the constituents did not think it was working. There was no transparency. There was no transparency with the building committee, there was no transparency with the, not, no, no is not a good word. There was some transparency with each, but in the bottom line, what happened to their budgets from those committees? What happens to our, we have what? Well, we aren't on comp yet, but, bottom line is, if Davis goes to a committee or to a department head, it shouldn't be who's the loudest in the room again, though, because that could still happen again. What it should be is brought to Mr. Davis first in transparency, and then, if he wants to bring it or have a conversation, some of this stuff, like Jerry said, he thought he had to bring it to building committee or sort of other people. It didn't have to, they could have just brought it to our, our guy that does it for a living. I keep telling people, how would you like it if you had to run your business and go ask 10 people, what do you guys think? And then you have two political people, or two people that are more in charge, telling you, this is what you're going to do because this is what we want. And then they have the votes, three people, and then it happens, in that exact order. So, I don't like having all that political bull crap in between, I never have. I like the person that I, and we pay our department heads over $100,000 each, that why do they need to go and ask a bunch of people how to do their jobs? Now, if you're not a good communicator and, and Mr. Davis doesn't do a good job, you probably will have another building committee, because you already know, later on, people will think that's not transparent, he's not doing his job. Mike was a very good man, he saved us millions of dollars, but when he tried to communicate in that, in that building committee, let's be up straight, y'all overran him. And then that's what we have today. He was so frustrated with that whole process, and, Mr. Davis, I've been listening to you, I'll be up straight, it sounds like you're with, with, just listening to you today. It's very frustrating not to be able to do your job, do it efficiently, effectively, without asking commissioners and department heads what they, what they want to do. It should be your decision based on the cash flow you have, the, the cumulative building money you have, and what is the priority? Because we had priorities, and it never was followed. You went off those priorities and spent millions of dollars on buildings and things you shouldn't have. You took the priority. I'm talking, please. I know, because I've been here. I've been in this, I've been in the building committee, we had priorities, we followed those priorities, then all of a sudden you come back, and I asked, was asking Mike, what are the priorities and what happened? Loudest people in the room. Commissioners told me. Okay, let's be up straight. Commissioners told me, and they had the votes, and so that's how it moved forward. Okay, so let's be up straight. So now it's time for a building committee guy that gets paid over $100,000 to do his job, and if he can't do it efficiently and effectively, we find somebody else. We don't need a committee to tell him he should be able to do that, we're just doing that director position, we changed that because it wasn't working before, it didn't work for five commissioners, it worked for three. So now at this point, he's going to be a director that actually is a communicator, a guy that wants to work as a team or a girl, as a team member, just like Mr. Davis. If he can't communicate to the, the department heads or to the other people that need those things that Jerry shouldn't have to go to, because they should be able to come to, to Mr. Davis, because he'll be able to tell him, I have the money, let's get it done, or let's not, it shouldn't have to go to commissioner, it should be able to go to our director. I'd be offended if it wasn't. If I was the director and I, I felt like people had to go to commissioners to get their stuff done, instead of come to me first and, and let me explain like you are today, how much money you have, how much you can afford, how much, maybe it's the third on the list, I like seeing that. I like that, because I think that's transparency, and that's, that's a good way to do business, whether you are a private or a government entity. That's my opinion.
Mrs. Drews, you know, I'm not here to sling mud, I'm here to try to find solutions. I'm going to keep the emotion part out of it, and I want to go with the policy.
Not emotion, it's fact.
I'm just speaking.
I know it's fact.
Now, if we're going to, if we're going to go with the Plan B, then what I expect, Davis, is that the next meeting that you come to, there is no building committee, but I want you to sit there and tell us what needs to be done, and who you talk to, and why it needs to be done. Because that's what you're suggesting, right?
Well, this was not my suggestion, but I think what I, what I can say is, just a couple of comments that I definitely want to reiterate is, 95% of lately, what I have taken to the building committee has already been decided by buildings and grounds. We're, we're giving you our best recommendation, which, at the end of the day, it should just come to the commission ultimately, right? I think the redundancy can be eliminated, you know, maybe without sacrificing quality or oversight of these projects that are, that are going to occur, and I'm more than capable of, of doing what I need to do, but again, like, my, my day-to-day job and our day-to-day operations in buildings and grounds, half of that stuff doesn't even go to the building committee, because we just have to do it, and we have to get things done. Some of the larger things we take to the building committee because we feel responsible to do so. So again, I think, I think the building committee was probably created at a time when it was needed for, for this, when this needs assessment went through and the, the discussion on the expansion and, and the buildings and the different projects that were going on, I just think we're to a point now where the building, or buildings and grounds can certainly provide you guys with all the insight and, and, and anything, and the transparency that you guys are looking for, for any projects related to the county, without a committee oversight.
I think we're looking for efficiency, but more so transparency, so I would expect that every two weeks, commission meeting, you say, this is, this is an update on where we're at, you know, we're looking at this, just kind of an update, because we're not going to have a building committee no more, so we're, we need the transparency, and I would expect that every two weeks. Whether it's, nothing's happened, nothing's happened, or this is what we're doing, the children went out in the courthouse, whatever, just an update on what's going on with buildings and grounds.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't know how that stems from not having a building committee, but I, I can certainly provide a, maybe a report monthly or something that, that breaks down all the projects and other items related to buildings and grounds. It's, I'm sure I can find time to do that if that's what we're ultimately after, but that would have to be a motion by the board.
I, I think it's, yeah, just tell us where we're at.
Okay, and I'll, let me intervene on this a little bit. Today, we, we, we approved a new director's position, and, and if you look at the, the criteria in that director's position is exactly what you want, Ron.
Okay.
I know what you want in your heart, because. I know what you want in your heart because you got to have information to make good decisions and we haven't really had that. And having a Buildings Committee makes it tough for him to do his job and then tough for the director to do their job. If we move this director into this and all of a sudden he's got to make all these changes, slows him down. And I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, and I'm going to go back to the, the, one of the things you brought to us. And this is from Buildings and Grounds. It said, request for direction on spending authority. Request for direction. And your request for direction comes to us here. So anytime we can eliminate committees, because committees, all they do is divert the responsibility and accountability of us. We have the power and the authority by bringing this director in and that's why I'm glad that Gary pointed out the fact that this director is not going to manage our commission. He's not going to manage this county. He's only going to do the direction that this commission gives him. And I'm, that's where we're all on board with it tonight. So pointing that out and making sure that, that was not an issue going forward. We don't need a comp committee or a, or a, uh, we're going to get this information and this is, and if you want to chime in at any time is like, this information is going to be handed to us on a basis that we can make really, really good decisions. If it doesn't happen, I'll, I'll, I've, I've put all my stock into this happening, Ron, because I know what you want and I, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it here at all. I mean, I went to one meeting and it was like, you kidding me? I mean, this is crazy. You guys ain't got no time to do them, but you come, come to a meeting. And then I go to the planning commission and go, uh, the planning department, well, we haven't even been invited to any meetings, so we got nothing out of this whole building process. And that's where we can go to Davis and said, you know, first of all, you make sure you get us some new chairs. That's one thing that's on the list.
Are you talking about your chairs?
Yeah, these things are terrible, but that, that's the way we want it.
To buy your own.
So I'm just saying, I'm, and I, I agree with you. You, I don't think, I don't think this is any, uh, malfeasance on your part or anything of saying, I just want something that works. And I know you want something that works. Jerry wants something, Gary wants something. If you could look at the information that this new fellow has comprised of what he did at the last place he was at, I'm telling you, if we can get that here, if we can get 50% of that here, I'm going to be running over to the city going, you guys need to make some changes. Because this is, this is what you need to make a good decision. You need a guy like Davis who understands the Buildings and Grounds. That's his job. He's, 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 uh, we pay him. If he, if we're not paying him enough, he's going to find another job. Uh, but I'm hoping that, you know, since we've made these last commitments to these people, that they all step up to the plate and start giving us the information we want. It's hard to sit here and make good information, good decisions when I got to call 20,000 people to get the information I should have at my fingertips on a weekly, two weekly or monthly, but go ahead, Commissioner Ross.
So if you dissolve a committee, what do you do with the bylaws? Because evidently there's.
We have to, if we dissolve this, we have to go, someone's going to have to go through these bylaws and see how we do this, how we dissolve it to go through the bylaws and do it properly. I understand that part, but I didn't want to leave this on the director or somebody else. I wanted to put it on us because we do need transparency and accountability because when you go out there, just like what I was talking, all these phone calls are coming to you, Ron, from your area, all the phone calls in my area coming from me and vice versa. People don't understand it. I was asking one of the employees earlier about how many phone calls do you get? Well, I said, you know, when I'm out in the public, they aren't looking for Davis. They aren't looking for some building committee. They're looking at me.
Oh, Chair.
So I guess, you know, we dissolve the building committee and then we come up, then we come up to something fairly significant. Maybe that's where you want to have a, a committee that, a small committee that.
I think, well, what you, the information you're going to see, Ron, if at that point you think we need a committee, we'll revisit it, but I don't think, you're going to be blown away by the amount of information that you're getting.
Chair.
I know you're an analytical type guy and that, that's what you're looking at.
Well, I'm laying in the, changing my tune on this, but I just want you to know.
No, 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 that's fine. You don't need to change your tune.
My concerns.
I just, and I get it. I appreciate that concern and that's why we're having the meeting otherwise.
Chair. The bottom, the bottom line is.
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Hancock. Okay, we're all ready? Okay, go ahead.
Are you all ready?
I just, I thought I had someone over here had a question, so.
No, it's, it's not a question. I get where Ron's going. The bottom line, Ron, is if you have a good, um, director in our, and, and that's the difference I was trying to tell you. If you have a good director in our commission office, they are going to work with the same thing that we did as committees to work with our, um, staff or our department heads to figure out what our needs are from this commission. If this commission is, or maybe it's Ron Ross Connect and he says, well, the building committee, I'd like a new update and stuff, that would be his job. It wouldn't, you wouldn't have to always contact, um, Davis or, or Cindy. When you have a good director, that director does your work for you. Does that make sense? Um, so the committees where your comp committee and all your other stuff goes to HR, HR comes back and says, okay, um, the director gave me this direction, um, from Ross Connect, these are your papers, blah, blah, blah. I think that's where you're going to see a connect instead of a disconnect from, uh, building committee and comp committee. Same with if it's fire administration. Um, let's say Davis is our director. He's going to go to fire administration and you're going to say, I would like some updates on fire board or whatever, um, could you get those for me? We shouldn't have to come here. We shouldn't have to go to Cindy. We shouldn't have to go to Carol. We should be able to have someone that can communicate this through, get the data we need. If they can't do it, maybe our director, from what I've seen, um, the person that I've seen their, um, what they do and what they've done in a packet or a binder is they will be doing that job for us. We get paid 30,000 a year to represent the people and that's what we should be doing by getting the information from the director who gets paid, each one of them a hundred thousand each, to do their jobs. We shouldn't have to direct them. Does that make sense? So hopefully, and I'm going to, I'm going to bet from what I've seen from the process in Mead County, because I looked it up, um, to see if, uh, trust but verify, that's who I am, that they can do their jobs and how they did that process. Then thankfully, um, we got a binder that showed me that process and showed this commission that process of how I don't have to work as hard, just like Mr. Davis, to do his job in order to get it done because he'd be able to work with one person instead of listening to five different people, even though we'd have that input to get the information from Mr. Davis. Does that make sense, Ms. Ron?
I guess where I'm coming from is that we were on the committee and we were deciding that we, everybody agreed we wanted concourse. And with my appraisal experience as part of the committee, and I, I showed them how the bid on that building, I, I think I saved the county a million dollars just based on how I told Kevin to approach the folks in Florida on a per square foot basis instead of just a bulk discount.
Yep.
That's where I think I came in, or I think that's where having, you know, that's, that's a kind of a unique situation, but that's where, you know, Kevin didn't have an idea what that's worth. And I'd like to thank that my 30 years of appraisal experience helped in the building committee on some of the decisions.
I think, Mr. Ross Connect, I think you're going to find that, you're going to have more input. Uh, I think that since I've been on this committee and this, on this commission, what I've seen is a lack of, uh, of input from the commission because of the disjointed, I think, our director. And one of the reasons that I was on board with this is the fact that it's going to bring this together and it's all going to come down to the request for direction. I think there's going to be a X amount of stuff that you're going to get from metrics when you make it a decision. Say if, um, you know, Care Campus comes in and goes, hey, we want more money for this or that or this, you'll be able to go to your pamphlet and go, wow, boom, here, here's the numbers. No, you don't. Something's wrong here. Or if that is not available, we can request that it be made available with the input of the, uh, the new software that we're getting and all that stuff will be tied, this stuff all together. Right now it's all disjointed and having a disjointed committee doesn't really do us any good. But is there any more comment? I'm just going on.
Mr. Chair. So I think, I think one of the things, if we're going that direction, one of the things that this commission has to do then is allow, uh, we had a good director. We had a director that went to numerous meetings and reported back and, and, uh.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. She reported back to some people.
All right. Now, hold on a second now.
Well, he was looking at me.
Go ahead. Do we have the floor or not?
Let's, let's, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll say when we talk about commission, a director, we need to, we need to go forward and, and, and the director sometimes is good as the direction that they get. So, um, Commissioner Drews, finish your conversation.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, we don't, we don't want to, so, and Commissioner Drew.
Yeah, I just, you know, it would be a follow-up and I think that I'm listening to the concerns of, you know, Commissioner Ross Connect and Commissioner Drews. And to be frank, I wanted to wait to put this on the agenda until we fill the position in that office to come forward with a plan. But the comment I would, the comment I would have would be that if we go through with the motion and then, because it sounds like it's already came up about, and I saw it not from Carol. Carolyn actually had this conversation a couple of days ago and it relates to another committee that I'm on, the Healthcare Trust Board Committee. And those bylaws and that stuff goes back to the nineties that I would like to revisit that and look at that committee. The building committee goes back to the days of Judge Davis, so we're talking well into the eighties, I believe. Uh, and it was actually formed when we had to work on the courthouse over there and Judge Davis at that time was a driving factor on the building committee and getting some of that done. So anyway, we've talked about it. I'm in favor of canceling this committee, but then within 30 days, uh, we come back with a, a plan as to how to move forward.
I appreciate that.
Is that a plan I'm bringing forward or the commission or together?
Uh, I'm, I would be, I would take input from you, but I think it'll follow up on some other comments, but, uh, I think it would.
Yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off. I can certainly make some recommendations.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That definitely would be in the conversation, so.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the, on the, on the floor, right?
Mm-hmm.
To approve. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, um, uh.
All opposed.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So let's do a roll call.
Yes.
Drews.
No.
Hancock.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
And Wythenbach.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's move on to the next motion and, uh, let's try to keep the conversation to this motion and, and I think this probably, I mean, this is similar motion to dissolve the comp committee. So if we can get a motion on the floor, we'll have a discussion.
Motion to dissolve the compensation committee.
Typically I don't make seconds, but I'll make a second for discussion. So a motion from Hancock, second from Wythenbach for discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Again, uh, this is a committee that I believe, um, served a great purpose, saved the county a lot of money, uh, especially with the salaries. And, uh, they did a, they did an in-house study, which, uh, uh, otherwise we would have gone outside, which we had done previously with that, uh, which was very costly. And I think most of those proved pretty ineffective. And so I just, I want to congratulate the comp committee for the, for the work that they've done. They've done an amazing job, I believe.
Any other?
Mr. Chair. So I was on the com- comp committee for about six months and I ended up not going on the comp committee anymore. And I had decided at one time that I, um, that we should take out the comp committee because Carol should, not Carol at that time, John should do his job. John wanted to do it, thought it was frustrating. That's the history on it. Trying to work with the group of people. Um, and again, wasn't my words, his words. Loudest people in the room got what they wanted. The rest, um, also the amount of time it took from other departments to try to come to the comp committee. And you're right, Ron and Jerry, um, trying to get to these committees and having different people and then had to reiterate, including commissioners. So long story short, we had an in-house study of a wage study that was done with 240 job descriptions that now should be combined, it looks like, into, uh, less. It spent, uh, an exceptions and wage study, $16 million in four years. I don't think it saved the taxpayers dollars from doing that. Um, let's be up straight. That was a comp committee. Um, and those exceptions being made, um, should have never been made the way they were as well. That had nothing to do with the comp committee. All they did was recommend. Um, so for me, um, that committee was not transparent to the public. The wage study that was went through, um, the way it had went through the process was not transparent because the, uh, the public did not know all that was happening, only because a lot of that stuff was done behind the scenes. So unfortunately, um, during that time and the same, this is my first speech on, uh, the comp committee should have been dissolved a long time ago. Um, because of that reason, it caused a lot of, um, employees, I'll be up straight, to be very, very mad about the, the, the way the process was done and how untransparent for even them it was. Travis was one of those and me that was listening to everybody, your community and your employees. The ones, of course, the 27% that got that exception and got those bigger raises, of course, they were very happy. The 73% in the process in which that was and some of the rules and regulations that were made that were not even state reg rules, they were Pennington County rules, were upsetting a lot of employees. So unfortunately, I disagree. I, um, not that you're wrong, Mr. Drews, that is your opinion, but from what I've seen and how that process works and what that did to our budget was not a savings for Pennington County. I believe, uh, at that point, um, it ran amok and it became something that, um, I believe is going to hurt this year's budget and have to be cut in some areas of those, uh, those, just like, just like the buildings were, just like the, the employees. I don't know how we fix it. I don't know how you fix it when, when some are, and, and people like, oh, we're, we're getting, what we're doing is we're going to make it so there isn't such a, um, difference in jobs and descriptions and different stuff. It actually did the opposite. And I'm not hearing that from Deb Hadcock. I'm hearing that from some of the department heads that did not know and I was trying to tell people, they did not know how to do wage comparables and market analysis. So at that point, again, I'd like Carol, if that's her job with her four or five people, to come to that recommendation and come to us with people that have done that. If that's her job description, I can respect that, but not have a bunch of people that speak the loudest in the room, um, be able to make the decisions that came to where it was in the end. So those are my opinions. I think, uh, we'll see those decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock. Commissioner Ross Connect, do you have anything to say?
Uh, I'm going to be with Commissioner Drews. I won't support the.
Okay. Commissioner Dur, you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'm going to put our HR director on the spot if Carol could come up.
Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County.
All right. So again, you know, this was my observation going back and being on comp committee. And I guess the one thing, you know, that I would say about the building committee and/or the comp committee, you know, it's quite obvious that everybody in there is trying to do the right thing, you know, as to how they think things that come up and agenda matters of the Healthcare Trust Board, you know, everybody, everybody's been engaged and everybody is trying to do in their own mind what they believe to be the right decisions are for the organization. I've not seen any way at the meetings I've been at where anybody has come forward with a personal agenda. It's all been above board. Uh, I disagree with some of the things that have, you know, like in discussions about the overtime and stuff that we've had in comp committee. Obviously I have a different opinion about that. Uh, and I have had some conversations with Carol about, you know, we've talked about the history of the comp committee. We didn't really talk about, I, I mentioned building committee to her. And part of that was looking at how I thought that the commission office should function. And I know she did have these discussions with, uh, you know, the rest of the commissioners on some of these matters, but the question I had and discussion with Carol related to, you know, could you function and do your job if the comp committee wasn't here? And anyway, I believe that you did not raise a lot of red flags about the comp committee going away. Would that be fair?
That, it's a fair statement. You know, when I first started here, the comp committee had been rejuvenated and it was in place at that point in time. So as I'm learning and observing what is going on, it seemed rather strange to me it seemed rather strange to me that the HR director, who within their position description is responsible for the policies in the employee handbook, that we had a, a separate committee and, and the HR director did not even have a vote on that committee. That you were treated more as a consultant and the person who would draft the committee, uh, policies so that they could review them and then come to the commissioners and present that on behalf of the committee. And, and Davis mentioned that, that one of the things that I saw that was being redundant is the need, because it came out of committee, to come to the commission and say, information only, but not asking for a motion for approval at this point in time, need to come back to the second committee. So do I see it as a responsibility of the HR director, absolutely, to manage the policies within the employee handbook, which does include the compensation policies? One of the things that I do like that came out of that committee, so if I look at the pros and cons, is that we developed a collaboration, spirit of collaboration with the department heads that I do not think existed as well as it does today. And so I think that was something that came out of it. It would be something that if the decision is to disband the compensation committee, I would continue to have that collaboration spirit with the department heads. And, you know, I, I like this term that Jerry uses. I would shop anything that we are looking at changing. I would shop that with them first before I'd make my decision on what it was that I was going to bring to the commission. So in the grand scheme of things, I'm not in favor of committees, if you want to know the truth. I'm being very candid. I am not in favor of committees. Matter of fact, a lot of studies that I have done about what a work week should look like, that many companies who have actually gone to thirty-two hour work weeks, guess what they did? They got rid of committee meetings and people are so much more productive and get everything done that they need to in a thirty-two hour work week. So, you know, there's the data that supports that, that our committee's as effective as we would like to think. Are there better ways that you can get that information if you have the right people in place that are good communicators and have network to build the right relationships with the department heads? And that's, I guess, my position is, that's my responsibility, if this is what the decision is, is to make that commitment to our department heads, not to isolate them from what the process is, but to use a different format in which I would get that input.
And I, I've done.
Yeah, I'm just going to comment then, in my belief anyway, that communication that you had of the comp committee, not every department head was on the comp committee, correct?
Correct.
But then you have a mix of these committees where we have some of the leadership on the committee, some not. And my envisionment of talking about canceling, like the comp committee would be, that the HR director would then, at a department head meeting with all the players in the same room, shop that information and get the feedback. And that's where they communicate instead of, you know, again, multiple committees throughout the week. And to be frank, this would mean that, like, for me, I'm assigned to the comp committee, then that is an assignment that would go away for me. I'm on the building committee and assignment to go away for me is our liaison on the board. I do not believe that commissioners should be going to department head meetings. I believe that should just be at department head level and then come back and communicate to the board. And it's also a little bit of a selfish thing on my point, because I go to these committees. And again, I've done some of those things. And so, um, it's hard for me sometimes not to say what's on my mind because I just want to get to the point. But I would rather take me out of it, just, I'm saying me, let the leadership and department heads that are running the day-to-day operations come up with these, uh, ideas and thoughts and direction for the county collectively come back and come directly to the board. And in this case, for me, allow me to go out and engage in my community and get out of what is, in the last three months, for me, has been a lot of daily interaction between all the meetings and the follow-up correspondence and the preparation and that. I need to get out and visit my community and visit with my constituents, so.
And I, I appreciate that. I think probably, um, I've had that conversation with, with Carol too on, she had stepped into the, uh, department head meetings for me because I see no reason for me to go in there unless it was a, you know, because I only represent one person. I don't represent all five of you guys. But I think, I know this is ugly, you know, and trying to get this to work. I have a hundred percent confidence that we're going to get the information we need. Uh, also, what committees lead to is group think or irresponsibility or unaccountability. Because in the end, if a committee comes forward and to us to make a decision, I see it, the TIF committee or all these other committees, they, to me, it's like, you know, don't do that to me. I'm an elected official. I have to make that decision. Uh, but in our case, we pay, we have great people that we're, we're, we're working with here. With our HR departments, our buildings and grounds departments, and all those other departments where they are actually under the direct control of us. I think we're going to find that we're going to be light years ahead of being able to spend time with our constituents. I think Jerry made a good point there. Uh, you know, I don't, I think, you know, compensation's obviously not going away. And I mean, and buildings aren't obviously going away. It's the communication process, I think, that I see that I'm excited about. I, you know, when I first, you know, thinking this through of, of not having, having a person that is going to be directly accountable to, uh, the commission, um, is going to be huge. Uh, and getting the information that you guys need is going to just absolutely blow you away. Uh, and I'm saying that and I, I know from discussions that I've had with all you guys that it's frustrating to try to make a decision without great solid information. It's easy for a guy who's a real estate guy to make a decision based upon real estate because he knows it inside and out. So, but I think some of these other things, it's like the care campus or whatever, some of us aren't qualified unless we have the metrics and the data in front of us to make those decisions. Compensation, that's your, your wall game. Um, that's what you get paid for. That's what you love. I've talked to you about that. You love your job. You love that part of it, uh, the, the human resources department of it. So that being said, I said enough. So anybody else have any conversation? Do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah.
So all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All opposed, same sign. Let's do a roll call. So a roll call.
Okay. Um, Dur.
Aye.
Drews.
No.
Haddock.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
No.
And Wythen Buck.
Aye. Motion carries. So we'll move on to item number twenty-two. This is items from chair, commission members, a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns of the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future considerations. So this is for us to, if we want to have anything to talk about, that we want to talk about.
Yes, Chair.
So we'll go with Commissioner Drews.
So I see that everybody's getting copies of the TIF information.
Uh, is that going to be directed through the commission office? Uh, how will they handle those?
I think that'll be directed to the commission office, I believe. I think.
Should be.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there's only, that's the only way to get it done.
Okay. I've been responding to them as I receive them, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that because it.
But it would be better if it was more consistent with everybody's response.
I think we can all agree that that, that makes sense, Gary, because it gets disjointed. Some days, there's a day that I, I might not get to that stuff right away and we got somebody out there waiting for, uh, for us to answer a question or something. So I think that this will be a new thing for our director. And, and these are all, if you guys have ideas of information that you want or, or think that you need to see in the future, you guys have been here longer than I have, let's write those down and, 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 you know, so we can get that attack too. I mean, obviously, it's going to take some time for our person to get up and running and get things rolling. But I think in the end, guys, that having these things centralized, but still having, us having the control, because we're, we're the authority, we're the decision makers, we're the ones that put our necks on the line when we make these decisions. Did that answer your question?
That answered that one. I have a follow-up.
You got it. Go ahead.
Okay. So the next question is, is based on the, the two actions that have just been taken on the elimination of committees. Uh, so we're going to move forward with elimination of additional committees also. And I, and I asked this question because one of the, one of the ones I sat on is the library board at the present time. Okay. We don't have a vote on that library board. Uh, we do give over half a million dollars a year to libraries.
Uh, my suggestion would be that instead of having a, a member sitting on the library board,
that we request that they come to us at least once a year, maybe it's at budget time, uh, to give us a report and what's happening on the library and.
I would a hundred percent agree with that. We can put that on an agenda and just, you know, I, I think you'll probably find some agreement. And if any of you guys, I'm a non-committee believer because, especially if you don't have a vote, why are you there? I mean.
Oh, Chair.
Having an update will be good, so.
On the library, we should consider if we still want to pay them too, Gary. Since we don't have the services and how that services work, I think if we have a new director too, maybe he can look into those services and if we want to continue paying that four hundred and some thousand a year.
I don't get any input from that because most of my constituents are in the city. And I think Hill City has their own library.
Yeah. So yeah, typically, when you would have a budget process, everybody that's getting money from the county in some form or fashion would come forward, even if it is by levy. And in this case, it's a library levy and we have an agreement in place. And that library levy is split between Rapid City, Hill City, uh, Wall. And so, uh, and everybody that is paying that levy is not everybody in Rapid City or Wall. It's everybody that lives in an unincorporated area. That's how that levy is overlaid. So all of, when we, when we go through the budget process, and Gary brought up a great point, you know, I've, I've seen, and again, it's kind of historical, where county commissioners or others are, you know, kind of appointed to a lot of these various community committees and stuff. They're getting money from the county and we have no input. And, but I think those are legitimate budget discussions to have because, you know, I had talked about the library levy generates just shy of a five hundred and fifty thousand a year. And if we're looking at lowering property taxes out there for the people that are paying, I mean, I'd actually talked about what is the process to get rid of the library levy. So.
I think that, I mean, yeah, I agree with that. It makes sense because it, right now, isn't everything, a lot of it's digital now? Very, very few people use books. I know they still do, but maybe there's a digital program we could.
My daughter is one of the users with her kids. And I asked her about this, but, you know, she brings them in from the country and they go to the library.
It's the feeling there. Yep.
Well, as I reported.
Is there a way we can deal with the interim between, I mean, I don't really, I think your time to sit on the library board is kind of a waste. I'm not, I shouldn't say a waste of time, but it's, maybe your time could be used somewhere better, somewhere else better.
That could be.
So we're, I'm good with you.
Yeah. And I guess the comment I would say about a lot of these committees, we're on them, but they're not our committees. You know, we have the, every year you make these appointments and you get there. And then a commission representative, I would imagine, are in their bylaws. And so you're talking about some of these committees and then, you know, whatever that looks like, having that conversation.
I just, I, I just feel uncomfortable having Gary sit there in that committee and not, I mean, he's a valuable person. Have a, any of you guys.
Well, a couple of months ago, I, I kind of gave a synopsis of what was reported from the lib. They have all the information on, you know, how many they serve in the county, et cetera. But it would be nice for them to come here and present that information.
If you make that request to them, I'm good with that. I mean, and then at least till we can formally dissolve that and just say, hey, we just will see you at budget time. And if any of you guys got those issues, I think they're important to bring up because we have limited amount of time with, to spend with our constituents. I think Jerry pointed that out. It's like, we get in this world of just solving, putting out fires and then we forget why we're really here. So, does anybody have anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Uh, no, this isn't my committee. This is just, uh, stuff that I've done. So yeah, I had a meeting with Davis. We scheduled it about an hour long and we talked about future needs. And, uh, I'm not going to go into the weeds on that, but just wanted to let you know that we had a long discussion. And one, one of the things that he told me, he said he just wanted to get the politics out of this whole thing. And I thought that was a, a good statement.
Yep.
I'm going to let that dog sleep and move on to the next one because I get a lot of complaints from the treasurer's office. So I met with Annette and I think I shared this with Jerry, Commissioner Dur. And I asked Annette to do a presentation at the May sixth meeting, which would basically highlight what she does in that office, similar to what Director of Equalization does. How many transactions? How long does it take for this transaction? What do you do besides transactions? You know, you pay your taxes. Because, uh, people really need to see how that, all the, the complexity of that department, in my opinion. And Cody with Human Resources is going to work with her so that we got a power, a good PowerPoint. Hopefully, that's what we're shooting for.
Okay.
Uh, and so. Uh, that's in the works and it's slated for May sixth. Then I, uh, also, I'm a member of Hill City Economic Development. We had our meeting. And then what, uh, some of the members of the, of that, uh, organization would be the school district, uh, somebody from the city. So all that, all that last meeting was just an update, kind of what's going on between these different organizations.
I can tell you, I'm looking forward to doing some economic development up there with my pocketbook.
Absolutely. Lastly, you know, you're talking about committees. I attended the complete health committee, which you're not a voting member. And I have no idea. You're lucky if they last an hour.
Community health, pretty much.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't know if that, uh, if we could do something similar like we do the library.
But we don't, do we, do we, do we send them money to the community health or?
I really don't know.
Yeah, we do.
Go to the committees we want.
Okay.
Represent us.
Okay.
That's typically why we're out there is because there's money attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chair. Back to the library. There was a public vote a number of years back as part of why we fund the library. You, a few years ago, I'm going to guess maybe five years ago, we had a citizen on that library board that we appointed, similar to we appoint citizens to a lot of boards. Um, we were having a hard time filling that and somebody, a then-current commissioner opted to be on that library board. And it's just continued to be a commissioner since then.
Perfect.
So we could put a member of the public, if we could find somebody to do that, to appoint them to that board.
What I just heard is Joan wants to be on that board.
That's what I heard too.
Not hear correctly then, sir.
Gary's happy. He's like, he's so thankful to you.
I got a friend who works at Hearing Aid Shop. I'll get you an appointment.
Joan's got enough to do too without going on that board, so. Yeah, well, the committee reports, uh, Gary Drew, you're on top for the committee reports.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, uh, Jerry went to the Elevate, I have a city board, so I'll pass that to him.
And he went to the.
Ron's already complete, uh, talked about the complete health board, uh, and that, I was out of town for both of those.
Thank you. Uh, then we go to Jerry Dur, Healthcare Trust Board.
All right, Healthcare Trust Board. Yeah, we had a meeting.
Talked about that.
Yeah, we had a meeting with the Healthcare Trust Board. Kalata or Wellmark rep was out talking about different plan options. Uh, one thing I asked to then to look at was a flexible spending account for the employees. And that is where you believe that you have medical expenses for the year. You can load that through payroll process, get those tax-free dollars on your card and then use that for medical expenses throughout the year. So they're going to look at that coming back. And there was going to be an April meeting because point of the conversation was, uh, there was, had to be a decision by July because they anticipated there would be a four percent increase in premiums. And that would be a four percent to the employees and, uh, Carol, it would be four percent to us as well, correct? And so one of the talking points, uh, since I found out that the employees, since initiating the wage scale in January and brought everybody up on the wage scale, I asked if there was step increases budgeted for this fiscal year for the employees. And the answer was no, there are no step increases this year. So I was, I wanted to see what that number and what that cost is to the employees. I was not keen on pushing off a four percent, uh, cost to the employees without knowing what that dollar amount was. And then we're looking at the fund balance and projections to see where we're at. So, um, Cindy, the auditor, went back with some information from Carol and have come up maybe with a couple of other options we can look at. But I believe that our April meeting is being pushed off to May. And so we'll talk about in May whether or not we're going to look at that four percent increase. And one of the comments that I had asked, the reason I wanted to look at what those dollar amounts were, uh, if it's something that the commission could absorb and we made that decision, we could fund that. Uh, but that's a talking point because I'm not keen on no step increases and trying to mitigate any additional cost to the employees. Um, the planning commission was my first planning commission. Yeah, it was pretty benign, went quick. It's when one of the planning board members started questioning Jason about the number of outlets on and outside of a building and what the potential use for that area would be. And, you know, I hit Jason up and I'm like, when somebody builds, do we question how many outlets they're putting on? And he said, no. And I'm like, good answer. Uh, I'm getting the idea as I'm looking at some of this. Not that it's a bad thing, but, uh, you know, there are some that chomp at the bit to regulate. So the, uh, Central States Fair. So, the, uh, Central States Fair had a meeting and then had their annual meeting, and so, they elected new officers there. Uh, three, and the new chairman for the Central States Fair Board is Jim Hunt, who is just getting off from being the president of the American Corduroys Association. It's Jerry Koop's, uh, wife that is one of the new directors, and Jerry passed away last year, past president. Uh, Megan McPherson got on, she's very involved in the community, very involved at the fair. And, uh, um, Nancy Maderd, who's been on the board previously, you know, going back decades, like my relationship with the fair, and she got on, so three of those unopposed, all good individuals. Uh, went to the Elevate Board Meeting, it was very, uh, yeah, very insightful, talking about, uh, a rehash from the legislative session and some of the things and projects business-wise, uh, looking at. And that's why I asked Garth to come here today to give an update because he did a great job at the Elevate Meeting, kind of recapping. You can imagine what that's like, uh, he spent his time in peer, and, uh, it still amazes me that a legislature that meets every year would have five hundred bills. So, so anyway, those are kind of my updates, so...
Thank you. Deb Hadcock, PC Housing.
Thank you, we talked about at Pennington County Housing, um, basically how the federal cuts, if they were going to affect us. Um, we also talked about budget that we, uh, approved, um, and thinking about moving forward if we needed to hire one more FTE uh, for the office or even for project management. Um, let's see, we also, um, if I could have Val come up here for the Wasta Volunteer Fire Department grand opening, just a brief review of what happened for our fire service board in Wasta. I was celebrating my anniversary, so I missed it, so I appreciate, um, you coming up, Val, and kind of briefing us on what happened at the, and how it went for the opening of the Waster Fire Department.
Yeah, so Val Newman, Assistant Fire Administrator, so we have some photos from the event, it went off great. They didn't plan to start serving until five o'clock, but they had a line the entire length of the new station, um, starting about four thirty. And, um, so, on behalf of Chief Shell and the Waster Volunteer Fire Department, they want to first thank you for the donation that you made to make this station possible. They served two hundred and seventy-five steaks in less than an hour.
I can say it looked like everybody from Wasta showed up.
You know, I honestly, I was so excited, we had members from many of our departments show up, um, Sunday night. It wasn't just our Wasta people, it wasn't just our Wall people, we had people from Doty, um, North Haines came. We had, Sheriff came down, Sheriff did an interview, he was greeting everybody, so, um, we had a really great turnout from all over the community come and support, uh, Wasta, and it was an amazing turnout. They served over three hundred steaks, they had burgers and hot dogs for the kids. Um, when I showed up, Chief Shell and I had a really good conversation, he was at first thinking that they were going to have too much food, and then it quickly turned to, I don't know if we're going to have enough food. Um, and they had just enough to serve everybody that showed up, uh, so an amazing turnout. Uh, they have raised over eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, five hundred thousand from the commission, they raised three hundred and twenty, and they've had donations from the community, um, for, um, the appliances that they have in their, their kitchen. And they are now, um, putting that out for the community to utilize, um, and they have an event coming up soon, um, where the community can come in and do, um, they're doing a drive around town event. So, they're offering that for birthday parties and anniversaries, and so they're really making that a hub for, um, the Wasta community and want people to come out and utilize that. So, on behalf of Chief Shell and the Wasta Volunteer Fire Department, they want to say thank you and extend their gratitude for your support with the station.
Thank you, Val, and also, if you haven't noticed, the end-up, uh, what this commission did was, um, gave one-time funding for Wall, Wasta, Scenic, and then Mr. Roskinak, we'll give him credit for Silver City. And what, they're not only fire departments, they're community centers.
Yep.
So, what that does is, it, it means a lot to the community, not just the fire department, of what this commission did. And, um, again, you saw two hundred and seventy-five people, it's not just ten firemen or twenty firemen. They keep using it for other events and stuff too, so that was on behalf of this commission, um, that did that. And like I said, it was one-time funding from COVID that we wanted to put some money towards something that was going to make a difference in, in the community for a long, long term, so... And, uh, again, you got four hundred and seventy volunteer fire departments, those fire, um, buildings are huge for what, um, that commission did. So, uh, very much appreciated and, uh, appreciate everything you do as well, Val, for our fire service.
Thank you, Scenic is done, um, Wasta will be done in the next quarter, they have a couple of things that they need to finish up. Quinn, as Assistant Chief Johnson shared, they are on their way, and so is Silver City, so we'll be sharing that information as we get going to.
Thank you, Ms. Val.
Yep, thank you.
Campus, and do you have anything on care campus?
No, I, I had to work, it was scary, I was altering.
I don't have anything.
That's okay.
Thank you, Jerry, for going to the Planning Commission for me. Appreciate that, and then we had a, the Wasta presentation there.
Yep.
Um, Hill City, I didn't know you did some stuff up there in the fire department, that's cool.
Uh, I got a couple committee reports.
Yeah, I went right over the top of you, didn't I? Because the one that, one that was surprising, I mean, was the old age one.
Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, our last meeting, we agreed to take over the fifty-year mortgage, uh, you know, USDA real development. So, now, we agreed to take that over, that's a Keystone, it's an Apex in Keystone.
Okay.
That is currently run by the Keystone Commission on Elderly, which is kind of a subsidiary of the city council. So, with that, with us agreeing then do that at our last meeting, then Brian and I later that evening, we went to Keystone and went to a, a meeting, Keystone Commission on Elderly, and they agreed to, yeah, take it over, you know, we don't, you guys are much better positioned to do it than us. Now, that, the only rub was that, you know, this was designed for the elderly in Keystone. If the, uh, Pennington County Housing Redevelopment takes that over, we can't sit there and we get, don't have enough demand for elderly, we have the option to bring in other people that qualify for that particular, and they don't have to be from Keystone, it could be somebody from Rapid City, and that's where they want to go, so that's, uh, the only thing they're concerned about. But, uh, we, uh, will officially take over the day.
Wow.
Uh, the contract with, uh, Outfit Out of Sturgis terminated.
You think they have a need, Ron, do you think they're going to fill that with their elderly people, or?
What's that?
Do you think they're going to fill that with their elderly people, or?
I don't, I don't, it doesn't sound like they are. And we don't actually, you know, it takes about ten months before we officially get our name on the mortgage, but, uh, we're in, we officially are taking over the management as of today. And then Pennington County Council of Beijing, what we focus on is, uh, transportation and meals, so we do the dial ride. We support Meals on Wheels, and then Prairie Hills Transit, uh, they service, uh, transportation offices between Hill City, Keystone and Rapid City, and primarily, we're not trying to compete with the retail in Hill City, so the, the transportation would be for services and appointments. Uh, I think that's all I got then.
Thank you, thank everyone of you guys. Gary's happy to debate because we're going to get around to the library.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session from Hadcock?
Personnel annual, annual evaluations, um, interview for personnel. Looks like three personnel, SDCL one twenty-five dash two dash one.
I'll second that motion to have a, uh, a motion by Hadcock, second by Wyfembok to go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, this, we will convene into executive session. Well, you need a motion to come on of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Hadcock and a second from Roskinak to come on of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I believe our HR director has a motion she wants to present.
Carol, this will be it there, go ahead.
Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. So, I'm recommending a motion to approve the appointment of Jordan Neeb to the position of Director of Office of the Commissioners. And there are options for the commission to consider as far as compensation. As we indicated when we approved the position, is that step one, that bi-weekly is how the auditor likes to see this, so I've included this of three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight bi-weekly, or that's ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight annually. I also took into account as far as, uh, some of what we heard earlier in the discussion, that's step eight, which the commission can go to, all the way to step twelve. But step eight would be a hundred and five thousand two hundred and forty-eight annually. There's also another option here that I'd like you to consider, that is that step ten would be a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five and sixty cents annually, and that is my recommendation based on our most recent hire that we have as far as a director level position, that that's very comparable to that position. So, the motion could read as follows. Move to approve the appointment of Jordan Neeb as the Director, Office of the Commissioners, effective April one, twenty twenty-five, at the rating of a P forty-three, step ten, which that would be four thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents bi-weekly. And that, for your information, does equate to that one hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five annually.
That'd be my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew. Mr. Drew.
So, what I'd really like to see us do is to, is to accept your original, uh, proposal, and then, uh, in six months, reevaluate that and ask for a actual evaluation at that point in time too, much like we've done with previous directors, uh, so the commission has that opportunity, uh, if you may, a forced opportunity in six months to sit down with, with the, uh, director and go over where we're at, six months down the road.
Chair.
I'm going to disagree because that's not how we've always done it, actually. Um, we've done it with many departments, as Carol knows, um, we took into consideration, um, their experience, uh, what they could do for, um, and, and this young man has computer experience and other things that other director did not have, and we were paying that director a hundred and five. So, just from what I've seen from the direction and what was put on paper and what I've seen, the work that has been done, um, I think the experience is a lot more than, um, the other director that we had at that point. So, if I could say, I agree with you, Carol, in this sense, because you also have looked at job descriptions, this is what you do for a living, and, um, based on the steps, I think it totally makes sense. So, for me, I think the hundred and eight does make sense, not the ninety-two.
So, if I could answer, Commissioner Drew's, that the commission can consider in the first twelve months of employment to go all the way up to step twelve, so there could be an evaluation for looking at it from that standpoint as well.
Mr. Chair.
So, what was the original, uh, recommendation?
The original recommendation was, uh, ninety-two thousand.
Well...
That was on the job description.
Right, the job description, I was not making a recommendation, that is one of the options that the commission has.
Job description was a step one to a step twelve, step ten, so we're looking at anywhere between one and ten, right? Or whatever the commission feels comfortable with, does that make more sense to you, Mr. Roskinak?
Yeah.
You could actually, just to clarify, you could actually go to step twelve, even if you wanted under policy. So, my recommendation is step ten because that's consistent with what the commission has awarded somebody that is new in their position, but brings good experience.
So, do we, uh, have an example of that?
As far as who we did that with?
Well, somebody in that similar job description that's making it...
Right, our IT Director, Mike Iverson, most recently.
The only person we ever tried that on was Cindy, when we started at ninety-some, when she got elected. And then, at this point, we raised her to a hundred and thirty, and at that time, we never, we have never done it since, I'll just tell you that.
Uh, what, can I speak, Mr.? Yeah, what was, uh, the former, uh, office manager making?
The commission manager, it was, um, somewhat over a hundred thousand, right around a hundred and five.
Okay.
And, related to that, because I, I appreciate where everybody is coming on this, and my question would be, if you were to score a rating on the job description that we had before as commission manager, whatever that was, and I believe we're looking for a higher level of output from the office and more responsibility from this job description, do you see a difference between those?
Yes, uh, the commission manager position scored below this, as far as the rating.
All right. Because what I like to talk about in some of these is not so much about individuals and people, it's just, you know, the position and what the expectation is and what somebody can bring to the table, so... And I'm somewhere in between you and, and Deb.
If you make a motion, Mr. Dur, that would be helpful.
Tell me what the second option is, so it was...
Hundred and five.
The step eight would be a hundred and five thousand two hundred and forty-eight annually.
And your recommendation is a step ten?
Correct, at a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five.
Okay. I would, I would like to meet in the middle, and I would go with the, the number two option at, uh, step eight, I believe it is. Is that at a hundred and five?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be my motion.
So, we have a motion?
I second that motion.
So, can I interject here that the motion for the auditor's purposes with payroll would need to be that move to approve appointment of Jordan Neeb as the Director, Office of the Commissioners, effective April one, twenty twenty-five, at the rating of P forty-three, step eight, of four thousand forty-eight bi-weekly.
That would be my motion.
We got the motion by Dur, and then...
Second.
Second by Roskinak, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'd like to say something.
Okay.
The only issue I have with that is because we've changed from office manager to office director, you wouldn't pay him the same as the office manager. Carol, actually, on our job descriptions, we have went through this for, what, three years, on job description and why people are paid the way they're paid, I agree with your compromise, Mr. Dur, but from my responsibility and what I've seen for, um, this, um, comparison of the data and the things that would, this person would be doing by evidence-based, I'll tell you. Um, I appreciate they're saying a hundred and five, I'll agree with a hundred and five, but I still think it should be a hundred and eight, so...
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock, all opposed?
Miss?
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And my comment, I guess, to a follow-up with that is I agree with Commissioner Drew's as, you know, and again, we'll evaluate, and then we have an opportunity, I believe, with any department head, we could make these adjustments, correct? Based on performance, okay?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Hadcock, second by Dur.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries.